Under here, I got one of these guys here. There we go. All right, good morning. Good morning, good morning, and welcome. It is July 7th, and this is a regular meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. Welcome to your boardroom. And good to see everyone back after a brief break there. And we'll start with our roll call, please. Mr. Palmer.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zerigosa.
Here.
Supervisor Long. Here. All right, and now would you please rise for a pledge of allegiance to the flag? Mr. Foy, would you lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we have our minutes from our meeting of June 15th and 16th for consideration. We have a motion. And a second. Please vote. And those are approved. Thank you. Now we have agenda review. Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Chair Long. Item 16, healthcare agency agreement for fiscal intermediary services with the county of Los Angeles is to be heard as a healthcare agency Ventura County Medical Center, not a healthcare plan. Item 40, resource management agency joint study session regarding the general plan update, a PowerPoint presentation, and a comment letter from Zoe Carlson have been submitted. Item 41, Harbor Department approval to execute a lease agreement for the construction and operation of a replacement hotel complex and restaurant. Exhibit 2 and 28 comment letters have been submitted. And also request to hear this item as a time certain item at 9:30.
And that's item 42?
41.
Was it 9:30? Do we have that? Is that right?
Well, my agenda says 41's at 1:30. Oh, I have a rogue agenda.
Look at that.
Okay, let me find another one that works better. Find one that works. Here, hold on a minute.
Mike, this is 9:30? 9:30 time certain on the harbor item. Whatever number it is. It's the harbor item.
Okay, all right, got it. Got it. Okay, I'm gonna banish this one. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Okay, so that's item 41, harbor at 9:30. And then there's an addendum agenda, item 48, public works agency adoption of a resolution of intention and approval of notice to purchase real property located at 2130 North Ventura Road, Oxnard for the healthcare agency.
And that's a consent 48. Correct?
Yes. And that's it?
Okay. All right, board members, any other changes requested here? On agenda review? All right, we have a motion. Is our motion to approve as modified?
No.
There's a motion? Uh, we have a question, hold on.
Can we just bring up Supervisor Parks, and I just had a question, why that purchase of that property wasn't here to talk about or something on 48? Can we just put a regular agenda or something to talk about?
There's another one on consent as well now.
Which is that? What number?
Number 30.
Okay, so we, Mr. CEO, fix this.
Okay. The proposal is to hear item 48, the addendum agenda item, purchase of property as a regular agenda item instead of consent.
All right.
And then how about 32? Just do both of them because that's same thing.
We could do, we could do. Yeah, item 30 here as a regular as well.
And 48.
And 48.
30 and 48 is regular, okay. Okay, so then that'll pull those up, that'll pull 30 off of the consent. Okay. All right, now as modified?
No.
Motion, second, please vote.
This is a different screen.
All right, and that is now approved.
That's nice.
All right, now, for a moment of inspiration, board members, I had the pleasure of inviting Rebecca Evans, who's the executive director of the Ventura County Lodging Association. And the Lodging Association's been doing great work to brand our county. She's going to speak about Ventura County West. The Lodging Association is comprised of lodging facilities and destination marketing organizations in the California cities of Camarillo, Oxnard, Ventura, and now Port Huonimi, representing over 60 members, our hotels, motels, beds and breakfasts, RV resorts, resort rentals, the Chamber of Commerce for both Camarillo, Oxnard Convention Visitors Bureau, and the Ventura Visitors and Convention Bureau. And this is the heart of our summer. I heard from our harbor director, there were probably over 100,000 people visiting our harbor over the long weekend. So tourism is a large economic engine in our county. Rebecca joined the Lodging Association as the executive director in 2013. She was previously the president and CEO of several chambers of commerce and a business owner. And she's been doing a great job in leading the strategic endeavors with the Lodging Association, very civic-minded, passionate for nonprofit businesses. And she'll share what's going on with our travel and tourism. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. Honorable Chair, Board, and fellow members, and then CEO, Mr. Powers, it's a pleasure to be here, and I really do appreciate it. Supervisor Long did ask me to come and just share a moment of inspiration. And the thing is, is our tagline is inspiring choices, so it really does fit what your thought patterns are. We wanted to just kind of share some of the branding, which is called Ventura County West for the four cities. And as Supervisor Long knows, this concept was born in 2011 by hoteliers who are very passionate, very visionary, and are local-minded. And they came to Supervisor Long, I know, and sat with her and showed her what the concepts could be. And it has surpassed everything that we've brought to the table.
Thank you.
What's so exciting are the opportunities that we've created, but there's more opportunities that are coming our way. So we just kind of wanted to share some of those things. And we wanted to make sure that you, that the, everybody knew the tourism dollars help with the infrastructure and the things that you want to do in this community. So we're excited to be part of that whole concept. I'm just gonna jump over these really quick, but you can get more information if you'd like to on our website. Overall, visitors increased from 1.1 to, in 2011, to 1.2 million in 2014. Occupancy rates, when I first came, they were at about 65 percent, 63 in 2011, and they are now at 72 percent over the board in 2014. And the reason is, is we really do do a lot of marketing. So our T-bid marketing seems to have a positive impact on the spending and local taxes generated. And there's three points that we really point to, advertising awareness, unique visitor website traffic, and then the room demand is just over the top. With this, I'll show you in just a few minutes, our rates have increased over 9 percent over the total. And that's 2.4 percent above the increases in all of our competitors across the California coast, and then statewide. So California statewide, we are hiring. This just kind of shows, based on 70,000 unique visitors to our website, if you look down, I just wanted to say that 3.5 million in local lodging spending is what's happening right now. I go from this way, from the right to the left, which is weird, but 2011, we have gained 1.2 million overnight visitors in just these four cities. That's what we're counting. That equals out about 50,000 room nights. New tax revenues, I know that's important to you, about, I always get messed up with these numbers, so I'll let you just read them there. This is what I was wanting to show you. We've had a increase, we look at SLO, Santa Barbara, and we are 2.4 percent in different, above what they have brought in. And you can see, State of California, we're topping State of California, so that means that what we're doing is really working. I just wanted to put this on, it's a lot of numbers, but look at that bottom there. These are your local tax accommodations, food and beverage, everything that you guys are looking at. It's 25 percent higher since 2011. Overall spending is about 957 million, 67 percent of all travel spending in Ventura County. So we're up from 761 in 2011, so 25 percent there. $200,000 increase in spending in this area, so we're really excited about that. We're really excited also, we've started a Oxnard College Hospitality Education Pathway. It actually launched one class in the spring, and we thought, oh gosh, if we can get 15 students, we're at 25, 29 students already. So our fall semester actually starts with classes in hospitality at Oxnard College. We've had CLU interested in starting one, and then Channel Islands University for a four-year degree as well. We've given grant support for the Oxnard Airport to bring in commercial airlines, the film commission support, and then obviously we stepped up and helped with the career pathways, and then the Dallas Cowboys Training Camp. We wanted to make sure that they came back, and we are buying advertising for bringing them in. In 2015 and 16, what our goal is, we obviously just passed our 10-year T-bid renewal, and we brought in Port Huonimi. So we're excited to bring all those beaches into the, into the mix. We're at 2 percent assessment. And then our international travel marketing, we're gonna start in 2017 and 18. This is an estimated 1.7 million in extra lodging revenue. I just wanted to show you some of our ads. The dog, he actually was swinging at the Ventura Pier, and we took a picture. So that's a poster at the Burbank Airport, which I know you probably have seen. These are new, they're coming out. We are actually looking at selfies, we're doing, picture yourself here in Ventura County, that's our new ad lines. Another one, I mean, we live in an incredible place, so we know that if we share this, there's some, some really cool stuff's gonna be happening. I love this one, introducing the two-day vacation, father and son, vacation on bikes, they left stoked, that kind of a thing. So we want to make sure that people picture themselves here. On our website, venturacountywest.com, this is just one of the videos, I'm not playing it, it's too long, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that they could go there. There's commercials, videos, pictures, all kinds of things that, and events. It were like the hub of the communities now, so you can find out things to do. But I want to say thank you for your passion. Our team is very passionate about what they do, and thank you for what you do on behalf of our communities. Thank you.
Rebecca, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was great to have an update, and appreciate the investment by the hotelers in their vision to see that this would be a great investment, to be able to raise those funds to do the marketing.
Absolutely.
And, and it obviously is already paying off, so.
It is, definitely.
Yes.
I noted that you have international marketing, and it's gonna be coming up in 2017. And I assume Marla's from the Ventura Visitors and Convention, has talked to you about the efforts between Ventura County and Santa Barbara County to try to brand and get ourselves ready to be branded for international and national bike tourism destination, right? So I just hope that you'll combine your efforts in terms of trying to work on that.
We are at the table, absolutely.
Because this is a classic win-win for us. This is economic activity that takes advantage of the fact that we haven't sprawled like the rest of Southern California, rather than economic activity that requires we sprawl like the rest of Southern California. So I really appreciate this is a classic win-win. It's worked very well for Ojai in terms of economic activity, the value of tourism, and I think Ventura County can really benefit from this. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Our pleasure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for coming in, Rebecca. All right. And now we have our consent agenda as modified with the two items that are going to be put together, and we'll hear those separately. So anything else on consent, board members?
Ma'am, for the record?
Yes.
Item number 21, exhibit 2, healthcare agency supply the revised exhibit 2 of the entry of the record.
Thank you. Anything else? Going once? All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent as modified, please And that's approved. All right, thank you. Now we will do public comments, and I know we have a request for public comment. Any public comment? Selena, are you hearing a public comment?
Um, I just thought I'd, there was a big, um, information.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I just thought I'd be here to, if you have any questions about the special Olympics.
Oh, okay. Why don't you come on up and you talk about it? And then, and then, I had put this into my board comments, but Selena's here, and she does a much better job of telling us what's going on and how exciting this is, and I have flyers for the board members, the Special Olympics World Games coming to town.
Yes, thank you very much for the honor of being here before you. I wasn't planning on speaking, but thank you for the opportunity. As you may be aware, Cal State Channel Islands, along with other cities, in this case, we're host town Camarillo, there's host town Seamy Valley, and host town Oxnard, and host town Thousand Oaks. And we're all hosting different Special Olympic athletes from all over the world. And host town Camarillo, we have the pleasure of hosting 100 athletes from Saudi Arabia and New Zealand. The athletes will be arriving on July 21st, and they will be in Ventura County from July 21st through the 24th. The flyer I have provided you has a couple of events that are open to the public, so please feel free to pass this information on, and we would love to get as much of the community engaged. The beauty about this event that I was sharing with Rebecca is that, along with the athletes, you're also gonna have parents from all over the world coming into Ventura County, so that's exciting. So our hotels will be filled as well. But also is that when I took this project on early in the year, it was amazing how the community has stepped up to the plate. People in Ventura County are very excited about this. I'd mentioned to Dr. Rush that I not once have asked anybody, would you sponsor this? Would you sponsor that? I just went out and talked about the Special Olympics, the fact that we have these kids, or these athletes, I should say, from all over the world coming to Ventura County, and people have stepped up to the plate. Chuck Sandley with Roadrunner Shuttle, he is providing the buses for those days, because the whole purpose is to get them to know what, in this case, Ventura County is all about, and get to meet and see different places in the county. And then as, once again, as I kept on going out to the community groups, people said, well, can I sponsor a lunch? Can I sponsor a dinner? So I'd like to report from host town Camarillo that their entire visit with us is completely paid for. Just very, very generous people in our community. But I hope that you all will go to this website here, sign up, it's all free, but we just want to get an idea of how many people to expect. The first celebration that we have is on Tuesday, July 21st, and that is the arrival celebration. That is gonna be held at the university, once on campus, just follow the signs for parking. But that is open to the public. Then on Thursday, we have a basketball exhibition game. When we first initially met with the Special Olympics folks, the delegates from each country, one said to me, I was meeting with New Zealand, they said, could you possibly find a basketball team that we could practice with? And then while Jonathan, my assistant, was meeting with Saudi Arabia, they were asking him the same question. And I said, well, why don't we just do an exhibition game between both of you? So that, that'll be very exciting to get on out.
That will be fun.
And that one's gonna be at the Boys and Girls Club, unless it outgrows the number of people, then we might go on to, to another location. But the reason why we're asking people to register is if we do have to move locations, we can email everybody and let them know the location has been moved. And then on Friday, July 24th, we have a departure celebration, that is open to the public as well. So any questions, my information is on the flyer, but please give me a call.
And Rebecca told me this morning that the hotel owners donated 50 rooms.
Yes, they did. Exactly. Actually, the hotel owners from all over the county have been donating rooms or giving discount rates to the athletes. But there's also, just a good news to bake you back on Rebecca, is that Cal State Channel Islands, we have a national conference coming to Ventura County March of 2016, so we probably have about 500 to 600 people from all over the United States coming out, so.
And this is the first time the World Games have come to Los Angeles.
Yes, they are.
I recall, I was there for the kickoff of this, and it was quite exciting.
Exactly. And there's also a program called Fans in the Stands, and that is, all tickets for the Special Olympics, with the exception of the opening ceremony and the closing ceremony, are free to the public.
Okay.
Manager Selena, any idea how many people are you gonna expect?
Uh, we.
Overall, several thousand people?
Um, and in, we're here in Camarillo?
Yeah.
Well, we have 100 athletes, so you figure, you've got some parents, so you're talking a good 400 people, at least. But all our delegations in Ventura County have a minimum of 100 athletes. We're fortunate, we only have two countries, but I believe Oxnard has five countries, I believe Seamy Valley has three countries, and Thousand Oaks, I believe, have two countries. But each of our groups total about 100 athletes.
The games themselves in LA.
The games themselves in LA, they are 7,000 athletes.
So we're just gonna be hosting the families and so forth?
Exactly, we're just hosting them a couple days.
How many, how many people are they expecting? Several thousand people?
And down in LA?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you figure the athletes themselves are 7,000, so.
7,000, yeah. That's what I meant, yeah. Okay.
It's exciting.
Yes.
Exciting for us to be able to, to open our, our doors and welcome them and celebrate with them, so.
Yes.
We'll put this up, I've asked the CEO if we put it up on our website, so anyone wants to know about the public events that they can participate.
Perfect. And then I also emailed it to each of your staff members, so they have the direct link as well.
Right, great.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, and thank, thank the university and for the leadership and stepping forward to do this, Selena.
Thank you.
That's great. And Brian, her last name is Zacharias. All right. Okay, any other public comments? I don't have any other cards. Board comments, let's start with Supervisor Foy, who went fly fishing somewhere.
Thank you. I hope everybody had a great fourth, it was, it was fun. I was up north, and I was telling Supervisor Parks, I should've stayed south, because it was so hot up there. We were in Washington, it was 110 degrees, I mean, I couldn't believe it. Anyway, I just wanted, a couple things here. I just want to congratulate Shante Morgan of Moore Park, she was, the governor appointed her to the Fair Board. I think you all know who she is, woman Economic Roundtable, want to congratulate her for that. Also, there's a few people I want to, in memory of passing here, we had passing of Jim Meredith, he was a, you know, a passionate, dedicated person on the school board, I mean, the Ranchy, Ranchy, Ranch Seamy Parks District. He had 30 years, I mean, that's a long time for somebody to come in. I mean, he was somebody that was really.
Sure is.
And you saw, well, Seamy has unbelievable parks and everything else, they've done a tremendous job under his leadership, and so it's too bad to see him go. And then I know you also, I knew a little bit about him too, so. Also, another friend of ours, Mary Bibb, she was a, she's a planning commissioner at Seamy Valley, her mother passed away. And then I think probably all the rest of you heard, Mike Sidell's, you know, wife passed away after a long, long fight with cancer.
Yeah, courageous fight.
She had to be one of the toughest women I've ever met. I mean, you'd see her after this, and nothing get her down, just keep positive, and, you know, you saw a guy, and Mike was such an example of a man and a great career, who said, you know what, I'm gonna give that up to go take care of my wife. He was just a real example for all of us, so. Yeah, just sorry to hear that, and I wish him, and his funeral tomorrow, so. All right, those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Parks.
Welcome back, nice to be back again. Good to have a bit of a break for the 4th of July holiday. I note that our, our shelter has a license amnesty for new or expired animal licenses. And I just think about how many great programs they have, but this is a really important one if you have an expired license, and you can avoid some penalties there. I noted, looking just through the star and seeing an advertisement for our shelter, I don't know if they're paid advertisers, it just, it was one of those that just, you're drinking your morning coffee or whatever, and there's a picture of a dog with hippie beads with hearts on them.
Oh, I saw that.
It just, they make the, it just brings a smile to your face, and I just really enjoy that if you're gonna be showing off the dogs throughout the county, it's just a great, great way of doing it, and it's been wonderful to see the success of the work in our shelter to get it to be a no-kill shelter. I also wanted just to thank a lot of staff that came out to our Malibu, Yerba Buena Town Hall we had over the break, Fire Captain Lowell Edgar particularly, and our, our transportation director, Dave Fleisch was there. And I note we just approved getting some grant funds, trying to get some grant funds for guardrails in Yerba Buena, something that has been a longstanding issue, as you get those very narrow windy roads to make them a little bit safer for everyone. We also had Caltrans there, and our, our CHP officer, and even though this particular area unusually is an absolutely no water district, they have problems because the wells that they have there are, are starting to dry up. But Eric Berg from Keyagis came out and at least explained a little bit about the difficulty of being able to get water. It's an unusual situation, we know because of the drought, you know, they're being affected, their wells are drying up, but also because of the mandate, other water districts aren't so desirous of providing new sources, you know, water, because they have to cut back. So they're in a role to hurt up there. I know, looking at the city of Oxnard for at least potentially getting some recycled water for them, so that's a big issue. Also was able to attend the V-COG, the Council of Government Annual Dinner, and I know Mr. Powers was there. I guess the, one of the benefits of it is just there's a lot of folks that you get a chance to socialize with and be able to, like I did, get Mr. Nyhoff in Oxnard, and tell him about our water problem. But it, that's the, I think, the good benefit there. Also went to an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Amen Tanner, nice to see more young men in our county achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And I think, I just want to go ahead and close now in honor of the people on this list, and call out one individual, a very special young girl, very, very sad, 10-year-old in Somas who lost her life at Magic Mountain. You know, that she, she was just such a sparkling young woman, young lady, young, young girl, really. And they, she had a passion and talent for acting, and was chosen to play the lead role in her classroom play two years in a row, and loved to draw, loved her friends, just struck down so young in life. So we definitely want to close in honor of her too. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I have two slides here, one of them is the same thing that Supervisor Parks just mentioned, but I just wanted to put it up there so that we, to try to get as much publicity for it as possible, and that's the license amnesty for the new or expired animal licenses. But this is really a golden opportunity, we have a no-kill shelter, we're sort of the leading animal services agency in the state of California right now. But to keep it going, we have to continue to do things like try to get all the animals licensed, and this amnesty is a good opportunity to be able to do that. So, yeah, to the extent that all the supervisors can go back, we've had, I think, pass on to all the supervisors, because you have representatives from everybody's district, is, cities from everybody's district are there. And there's, there's real enthusiasm amongst the city members, interestingly, after they've gotten these big bills and changes, there's actually more enthusiasm by these members because they feel good about being part of this county system. And so, you know, it's a little bit like, when you get to the top, it's harder to stay there than it is to get there, and to stay no-kill, we have to keep this enthusiasm going, we have to keep the cities committed, because we have to start to do more and more things to decrease the number of people coming in. We've just about maxed out our ability to adopt the animals out, and we have to decrease the number coming in, and things like getting them all licensed, which then makes sure that they all get spayed and neutered, and, and all of that is really valuable. So anyway, just want to suggest that.
Yeah, no.
Before I go, the, the other thing I want to mention is that I did attend a city center event in Ventura, a great event program that has taken an old hotel in Ventura, and they are gradually converting more and more rooms over. They've converted 16 rooms over for families, and there are 16 families in there, and 90 percent of the families that have gone through the program in the last 30 months are, six months after they've left the program, are still housed, so great success rate. But what was really a real pleasure is right before the 4th of July, there were the CB really a real pleasure is right before the Fourth of July, there were the CBs there, and the CBs have taken on the task of taking the other fourteen rooms and converting them also, and these are young guys, you know, and men and women at the CBs, twenty-two, twenty-three years old, they're away from home, and what are they doing on their weekends? They're not going to the bars, they're not partying, they're coming to the city center, and they're working all weekend, and these are going to be fourteen homes that are going to go to homeless veterans, and so the, the veteran community, the military establishment have really stepped forward, so great program, Gibberan is really doing a fantastic job with the city center on Thompson in Ventura. And then the final thing would be my next slide, I just want to, we had the July Fourth Parade in Ojai, and so I was able to march in the parade, next slide please, and I was able to march in the parade and try to do some advertising for our foster children and the fact that we need foster children, so, there we go, you can't see it very well, but it's a wagon, and it says Foster Children Need Foster Parents on there, and I got a little five-year-old in the wagon, and I was able to pull the wagon and got just a tremendous reaction from people in Ojai, as they saw this, this wagon and stuff, just a lot of people nodding their head, so, just every, every place we get the chance to remind people that we need foster parents, I think it really helps.
Oh, you're at the end of the parade?
No, we're right in the middle of the parade, that, that's, I forget what that is behind us, but it was a big, big, yeah, we were number thirty-two out of sixty-seven, so that was, yeah, so it was fun. So thank you very much, and if we can keep advertising on those foster kids, I'd appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Thank you so much, I'd like to adjourn also in memory of the folks on this list, and I'd like to share that I participated at the Juneteenth Celebration over at Oxnard Plaza Park, there was a couple of thousand individuals that attended that, it was great, great event. Additionally, I attended the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards, and Mike and Linda Barber sent it to the seat, we're one of the recipients, you know, as you know, they, they give out thousands of gifts every year, and also scholarships for the kids over at Oxnard College. The PAL program was also one of the recipients, Haas Automation for, for all their good that they do, they give a lot to the community, and Robert Garcia, the world boxing champ and, and coach was there too, you know, he was also one of the recipients. It was a great event. Additionally, I attended the Movement Balance and Health Fall Prevention Workshop in Oxnard, it was in Spanish and English, and I just want to thank Dr. Duncan and Dr. Cervantes and Rigo and Salfa for putting this excellent program together, you know, many, many seniors over sixty-five fall, in fact, they say every, I think, one-third of the seniors fall, and unfortunately, half of those people pass away because of the, because of fall, so that was really a, a great event for our seniors, and of course, you know, that was also sponsored by the AAA and Ventura County Public Health. Additionally, you know, as you mentioned there, Supervisor, I didn't take a picture, but it's on Facebook, also over at the Channel Islands Harbor Fourth of July Parade, and there was really actually thousands of kids marching at the parade over at the Channel Islands Harbor, and I was there with Lynn Krieger and Oxnard Fire Department's Little Red and, and my grandkids, and we just had a great time marching, you know, with, with the kids from, from one end to the other, I think it was something like, probably half-mile parade, you know, so, it was great, we had a great time, and thank you.
All right, thank you. I too have a list to submit to adjourn in memory, I'd like to call out Lamora Magdalino, she worked for the Oxnard School District, but she was the founder and office holder for the Port Winnebago Library, Friends of the Library, a wonderful, wonderful supporter of the Friends, and, so I'll submit this list, and I'd like to also congratulate all of the county family, the CEO, our treasure tax collector, we did receive Standard and Poor's Award, highest award, AAA F-S one-plus rating for our investment portfolio, outstanding, and Ventura's one of six pools in California, and one of the ninety-one nationally AAA-rated U.S. counties awarded, awarded this highest rating, so congratulations, and CEO, and our investment team, and our treasure tax collector. I had the opportunity to attend the Superior Court of California Grand Jury Official Presentation and Installation of the New Grand Jury the other day, and it was nice to be there representing the Board to thank the Grand Jury of fourteen-fifteen and welcome the fifteen-sixteen group, and we had, I think there were about eight holdovers that will continue on for another year in service to the Grand Jury, and thank them for their service, and I had the opportunity to attend the Family Medicine Residency Graduation for our Ventura County Medical Center, and it was, it was great fun celebration, there were fourteen graduates in our, in our residency program, which we know is the top residency program in the nation, and out of the fourteen, nine of them are staying on to work in our system in various, various areas, and it was just really good to hear their, read their stories and see them, and, and their, and their deep and sincere appreciation to the faculty and the awards they handed out to faculty members, and appreciation for a great residency three-year term, and so it was, it was fun, and very proud of our residency program, and it was great, Barry, Barry Fisher was there, and, and of course, our, our administrator for the hospital, and good turnout from our hospital folks, so, that was fun. And I think that wrapped up our comments, any others?
The Grand Jury's swearing-in, are you ready?
Yes, yeah, I was there, yeah, yeah. It's interesting how they have an orientation for those who's interested, then they put their names in a box, so it is, you know, it's random, they just pull names out of the box for the, to fill the seats, and a lot of folks were there, and, and some didn't get picked, and they said they'll be back next year to try again, so, it's very, it's good to see that civic enthusiasm to serve.
And Madam Chair, we have one of the Grand Jury members here too in this today.
And we always appreciate them participating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, CEO comments.
Thank you Chair Long, just a few, our deferred comp program received another award from the National Association of Government-Defined Contribution Administrators, NAGDA, I think is what they call it, but it's for our program's National Save for Retirement Campaign, it's called From Couch Potato to Financial Fitness, so it's one of the top five programs in the nation, so congratulations to Patty Doughty and her team, really getting those employees to save for their retirement. Also wanted to highlight, I had the pleasure of meeting with the billing staff over at the healthcare agency, and we heard during the recent budget presentation, the great work that they've done, fifty or sixty folks, just so dedicated, so many of them have been there for years, you know, twenty-plus years, and just different benchmarks, and one of them, Donka had been there for twenty years, and she remembers when she got there, their cash collections were running about eighty million, well, just as of the day of the meeting last Thursday, they hit two-hundred-and-seven million in cash collections, their highest in history. So it was a great celebration, and I wanted to thank Deputy Director De Pupa and the managers out there, Dale Hawkins, Jason Nguyen, Juan Mendoza, Donka Barak, Alicia Martinez, and Verna Bushin, just fantastic work. And now I'd also like to ask our auditor controller, there's a lot of excitement lately on our financial management system, Go Live, so I'd like to ask Mr. Berg to give an update. Thank you.
Hey.
Chair Long, Board Members, Mike, I just wanted to let you all know that we are in fact live on our VCFS310, we went live the first, we actually had a soft rollout the first, and we opened it up for all the community users yesterday, and I will tell you that yesterday we processed a total of eight hundred transactions, of which roughly six-hundred-and-ninety-nine, we couldn't get seven hundred, but six-hundred-and-ninety-nine of those went to final, which means they went all the way through the process. There's a couple hiccups, we got about twenty open action items, of which a lot of those are just security issues, my password doesn't work, or I can't get into the access, and so we're working on those, and the rest, it's, knock on wood, very smooth, but we are up and running, you know, our fifteen-sixteen budget ran through the upgraded BPS, which is the old brass system, and so we loaded that into the, into the VCFS310, and we're up and running, we've got our, our Go Live Support Center active, and where we have about fifteen not only help desk staff, but some of our project team leaders in there, addressing questions as they come up, so that we can identify the questions and take care of them ASAP, so they don't linger out there for the community of users, and, you know, one of the things, I just real quickly want to stress, why we spent fourteen-point-nine million dollars for this new project, you know, one of, one of the big things driving it was the new chart of accounts, so that we could be a little more transparent, a little more ease of submitting our grant requests and our OSHPOD requirements to the hospital and what have you, and I just have to thank the whole entire county family, mainly the fiscal staff, but across the county, but everyone really came together to get this chart of accounts squared away, so that it's going to be easier in the long-run years going forward. We also have a new cost accounting module that we're going to be using to help us with our cost accounting, new workflows, a lot of them paperless workflows now, so we're getting away from a lot of paper use in the county, real-time data, one of the things with the old system, two-point-two system, was you had to wait weeks to get your live data, whereas now you can go online and get live data immediately, which is wonderful. And also we have, I've talked about this, procurement really stepped up big time, and to get this implemented was our VSS Vendor Self-Service, so a lot of the vendors, we have fourteen thousand currently loaded vendors in the system that can go online to take a look at where their payments are, take a look at their contracts, or if you're an interested member of the community, a business person who wants to do business with the county, you can go online to our Vendor Self-Service site and then sign up to be notified when an RFP is being issued by the county for your type of business, so it's proactive and trying to get more business for the county, and, you know, I, there's a lot of people to think, I'm going to be coming back with a board presentation and PowerPoints and all, there's a lot of people to thank, and, so I'm not going to thank them all right now, but across the county, I want to thank all the directors for allowing their staff to be involved in this, because I've told people from the beginning, this is not the auditor controller's system, this is a county system, and so we took a lot of input from the community of users, see what they wanted, how they wanted it to workflow and what have you, and, and we tried to address their requests and their needs and their wants, and, and I think we have a really good system, and I'm very pleased to announce that we're up and running, and we are live, and we'll keep on going. Thank, thanks, Michael.
It's great.
Thank you, and thank you for your support, Mike, and, and all your board members as well, without you, we wouldn't be able to get it done.
If I could, I mean, these launches, when they go well, everybody takes them for granted, and when they don't, you all, you realize how, how much you appreciate it when they do go well, so congratulations to everybody involved in.
I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of work went into making this Go Live to go well, I mean, we were, staff were here on Fourth of July working, I mean, that was a full workday, Fourth of July.
So while, so although it is, you know, you're just going live and you're, you're buried with that, I, I just want to begin the, you know, make sure that we don't miss any opportunity to try to stretch the value of the system as long as we can, you know, these are expensive systems, fourteen million dollars to, you know, upgrade this system, so I just want, if there are things that we can do early in the first few years that will allow us to get two, three, four more years out of this system before we have to do another big, you know, because it'll be twenty or twenty-five million dollars then, you know, for the next upgrade, I just want to make sure that we keep our eyes open for that and, and purchase some, some small thing, or, or develop some expertise that allows us to stretch the value of this, because it was a long time coming trying to get this, this one going, and I think we don't want to, we don't want to go through these upgrades any more often than we have to, but congratulations.
Great.
Thank you.
I just, what, a great idea to be able to have the vendors being able to check, and then also when we have an RFP or whatever going out, that we can actually do a push, so that there, everyone knows that they have a chance to bid, but also getting that information out, I think trade magazines and all, that you can sign up and you can become a vendor and how you do that, I think it's good for business in the county, as well as outside the county too, but it's also good for the county itself, because we'll have greater competition on some of those requests for proposals, so it's just a great idea, and I think we're all going to benefit from that too, good idea.
Good work.
Thank you.
That's it? That's it? Okay, Board Members, anything else? All right, that wraps up the comments section, we will go now, we have some time, we're going to go to item forty-two.
I also have two property items, thirty, forty.
Yeah, let's do forty-two, and, oh, yeah, we can get through this and get those property items done too before nine-thirty.
Good morning, Chair Long.
Good morning, Ms. Hughes.
Members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Sue Hughes from the CEO's office, and I'm here today for what will be the final grant application for Proposition Eighty-four passed by the voters in two thousand and six, this is the Integrated Regional Water Management Planning Money, and this is the final round, I should note that there is forty million dollars available in this final round, and there are three of us competing for this forty million dollars. The county of Ventura's applicant, or request to apply before you is, in round numbers, about thirteen-and-a-half million dollars, the Upper Santa Clara Group, we understand is asking for sixteen million dollars, and Los Angeles County, as we understand it, is asking for thirty-six-and-a-half million dollars, so when you add those all together, somehow the math doesn't work, that you, everyone will get what they ask for, so, and we've been very fortunate in that, in the past, we've gotten everything that we've asked for. So currently, there are three active Proposition Eighty-four Grants, round one, round two, and the drought round, that total forty-five million dollars. This grant application that's going in, that is due a month from today, we're busy working on it, the team, and it is thirteen-and-a-half million dollars for five projects, there is one county project in that, and it is for Water Works District Number One, Moore Park, for seven million dollars for the Moore Park Disalter, so that is the one county project that is in this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question, obviously, there's more requests that there will be funding, so what, what will occur if they, if they say, okay Ventura, you only get half of this?
So the group has decided, the applicants, all of the project proponents, the five project proponents, when we selected projects, they all agreed that they would incrementally take a deduction of their project, they all said if they got twenty percent less or fifty percent less, they could still move forward with their project, and they were all in to move forward with the grant application, so, you know, as Jeff said, knock on wood, we end up getting what we asked for, so the biggest thing is having the best application that you can possibly have, so, yeah, everybody's decided they can take less.
And we've been very successful in the past in other, you know.
Seventy million dollars.
Seventy million dollars worth.
Yeah, so.
It's great to see the collaboration.
It is.
Good job.
It is that, this is just, since this is the last one, I think the competition's pretty tough, so.
That's right.
Yeah, the next one we can wait for is Proposition One, we were fortunate in that in Proposition Eighty-four, what we compete for was two-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars in Proposition Eighty-four for our region, but in Proposition One, it's a mere, it sounds terrible to say, a mere ninety-eight million dollars for us to compete in, and likely we won't see that money available for a couple, three years, so, so we just wait and see what happens with Proposition One.
On the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, we're also getting Prop One money, and we have to put together a whole set of criteria specific for that, is there an entity that has to put new criteria together, so we have an understanding of what the grant applications will be about?
That for this particular funding, the Integrated Regional Water Management, we don't know yet if the criteria is going to change for that, because the guidelines aren't out, but Lynn Rodriguez is doing a really good job of keeping track for us, because there's so many chapters and so many pots of money, so she's been sending out as things come up, so as new guidelines are written or new PSPs are available, so we're trying to keep everybody out there informed when something new comes up, but for this particular funding, we won't know yet until the program, the funding's available.
I know a lot of our effort is looking at, using a CAL EnviroScreen, looking at the communities that are low-income and also that have some environmental degradation, so that's, that's where our emphasis has been, I don't know if it's the same we'll be looking at too.
Sometimes it's dependent, the Department of Water Resources will use different methods for deciding what a disadvantaged community is, in most cases, we're noticing that they're using CAL EnviroScreen for that, so the areas in Ventura County that hit the red marks on those are segments of Oxnard and Santa Paula, is where we've seen it light up more red than it will in other parts of the county, so we really keep an eye on those parts of the county.
That would be helpful to get a report on CAL EnviroScreen and which parts of the county, I also saw a small segment outside of Camarillo, you know, so I'm just kind of wondering about all the areas, I think that would be good information for us to have.
Sure, we can send you the link to how to manipulate the, you know, how to work their website, for where you can get all that information.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Sue, Lynn.
It's for, for action. It's for, for action. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you for all the great work. It's a lot of work involved with that. We're going to, all right, Mr. Philigar, come on up here. Let's do these, let's do this property, one first, and then we'll go back to that one remaining thing. And, okay, board members, now we're doing item 48 and 30.
Okay.
So whatever, let's do 31st.
Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, the item before you, 30, is adoption of a resolution setting a hearing date for August 11th at 10:30 a.m. to consider the purchase of property at 5851 Theo Street.
Questions?
Yeah, what are we looking to buy? What are we going to do?
The item is a building we use for healthcare agency, but I don't know how much of that we can discuss. It's really just setting the hearing to consider whether or not to purchase it or not.
Okay, all right. Well, as long as we're going to be back again, I guess we discuss it, that's fine.
That's all we're doing right now, is setting the hearing to discuss the matter.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? Okay, action, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. We've taken the action to set that hearing for August 11th. Now we'll go to item 48.
Okay, item 48 is setting a hearing date, again, August 11th at 10:30, of whether or not to purchase the property at 2130 North Ventura Road in Oxnard.
I just really want to compliment staff all around on the expedited effort on this, because this is for the Children's Crisis Residential, correct?
Yes.
And it is something that is very needed. We got a definite gap there in service, so it'd be wonderful to get that up and going and doing it quickly. I don't know how long it'll take to rehab the building. It sounds like it's just the type of building that we need, and really appreciate the, all the different people who came together in support of this, because it's very needed.
Any questions, anything else? We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And this is to set the hearing on this item. Again, that hearing is set for August 11th. And will those be time certain? Probably trying to make them time certain.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. That passes in to do that. And we'll go back now to item 43, which is my item policy matter, to reappoint Scott Braga to the HIV/AIDS Advisory Committee. And that is the action before the board. I'll put a motion forward. He's really demonstrated both advocacy and commitment to the work of the committee. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that's unanimous. Okay, then, why don't we do correspondence real quick, and then we'll get to our 9:30. Correspondence agenda, we have four items on correspondence. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And that, one more vote, Passes. Thank you. All right, so now, we're going to go to our 9:30, that we've set on 9:30 time certain, on item 41, Harbor Department item. Ms. Krieger, good morning.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Lynn Krieger from the Harbor Department. And I have to say, if you hear a little tiredness in my voice, we're coming off a very big weekend in the harbor this weekend. I think on Friday and Saturday, what I heard from the police is we served about 100,000 people. I don't know if you said anything, Supervisor Zergos, I was out in the lobby, but it was a...
It was a great event.
It was a good 50th anniversary party. We had people staking out seats for the concerts at 3:30 by 6:30 in the morning, and...
And I got Lorraine here, she was there too, celebrating.
Yeah, good fireworks. The farmer's market was mobbed by 9:00 in the morning, so we have a tired little crew, but I think it all came off well. No, no, one medical call, that's really all we had the whole weekend. So, but that is not why we're here today. We are here today about the Casa Serena Hotel replacement, but another thing that I think is very exciting, after all of these years of waiting for the market to improve, we are back talking about Brighton Management in this case with a single-purpose corporation, Bright Peninsula Road LLC. Your board entered an exclusive rights agreement with them not quite a year ago, August of 2014, and the agreement was at that time that if Brighton met the requirements of the exclusive rights agreement, the next step was to be an option agreement. The option agreement, that's before you today, gives Brighton both the right and the obligation to prepare a project and to pursue entitlements. That is the next job. The next step in that process is to begin the meetings with the public, which they are getting ready to schedule now. I didn't bring a fancy PowerPoint today, but I did bring this planning flow chart that has been floating around for some time, because I, and I do have copies, if anyone either on the border or in the public wants one. I wanted to point out that we are really just here. There's quite a ways to go. Actually, when we get down to these steps, those are the, those are the longest. But we are here today to talk about the preparation of a project, the public outreach to all of these groups, and then moving forward from there.
So this is just the start of the process?
This is really the start. We are past the qualifying stage now, where the deal terms have essentially been reached, and they are ready to have an option that protects them so that they can spend the money that's needed to get through these next steps. Attached to the option agreement, which has been out since the agenda, there is a timeline, and it requires, now, the effective date of this agreement is likely to be August 1st. We try and go with the nearest 1st of the month, just after the board hearing, because tracking it for financial purposes and records and all of that, Mr. Palmer would understand, having the 7th or the 13th just gets very cumbersome over 50 years. So within 60 days of the effective date, they must have shared their conceptual plans, which, some of which are still in the works, with the public. Within 90 days of the effective date, preliminary plans based on those public meetings will need to be submitted to the Harbor Department, and then schematic plans 90 days after that, and then preparing a legal description within 60 days after that. So it's...
Ms. Krieger?
Yes.
That attachment is part of the...
Option agreement.
Option agreement. Is it at the end of the option agreement?
Yes, it's Exhibit 1 on the option agreement. Would be page 17, if you're scrolling through.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. So what we are asking for today, just to make it very clear, is approval and authority for the Harbor Director, and that would be me, to execute the option agreement, including Exhibit 1, which is the timeline with Bright Peninsula Road. In addition, you are agreeing to, because they are going to be, again, launching to spend a lot of money, you are agreeing to enter a lease agreement, once that lease agreement comes back to you and meets your requirements. You are not obligated to execute something that does not meet your requirements. There is a draft that's out, that's about 95-point, whatever, way of the, of way there. We elected not to fully complete it at this point, because based on what happens with the project, the lease parcel descriptions may change, some of the numbers, you know, for processing and so forth may change, and we wanted to not come back and immediately amend an agreement 60 days after it was signed. So, and there's a little cleanup I think we still need to do in there. And then, third, authorize the Harbor Director, once all that is completed, to submit the project to the California Coastal Commission. I know there was some confusion in the public, this is, we're not, we are asking you to find today that the approval of these actions are exempt from SEQA. We are not saying that the project itself is exempt from SEQA, just the adoption of the option agreement and the eventual adoption of the lease agreement.
The Coastal Commission has their, the procedures that they use in place of SEQA, is that correct?
Yes, the Coastal Commission has a replacement for SEQA, the certified regulatory program, but I want to make it clear that the project ultimately does require some review. What level of review requires?
But this portion is not...
But adoption of a lease and an agreement, we always have a finding of exemption for those. One last clarification, because I heard from some board members, this question came up yesterday. The park, Peninsula Park, is not moving. We had raised the possibility early on that if the hotels needed to be close together, there might be some option for relocation and hopefully improvement of the park. But the current Bright management has elected not to do that, and we are looking at about 200 rooms in the hotel. There are currently 197 in the closed hotel, and about a 5,000 square foot restaurant. So that's where we are. I don't know if there are any questions.
Madam Chair, you know, I'd like to share, I've had quite a few calls and quite a few emails, and I think there was a lot of misunderstanding out in the public. And I talked to some of the members of SECA, and Mercadante, and also to Lorraine, that, excuse me, this is an option agreement between Brighton and the county, and of course, that there's no drawings yet, you know, that we don't have any of those drawings, that we don't have any details yet. And also, one of the important things that they wanted is to take this to the public. And I promised them, and we all have promised them, that we're going to take these renderings to the public, and I think this is extremely important. And it's right on your page 3, the third paragraph, is that the, after the board approval of the lease, you know, that immediately after that, that members of the community will have opportunity to receive feedback and so forth. And I think it's important that we share that with them, because, you know, they're the stakeholders, the lessees, you know, the residents, and some of the homeowners that live there on Peninsula. It's important that they see the renderings and the drawings once we, once we get there, because this is going to replace the old restaurant that we had there, and also the hotel, and the park's going to stay at the same place. So I think that's important, people to understand that. There's a lot of misunderstanding there, that we're not talking to the public, that we're not, we're trying to mislead the public, and that's not my intent, and I don't think that's the board's intent or your intent, to mislead anybody. This is a project for all of us, and I think we've worked really hard to get there, and we need the support of the public to help us out, not only with Peninsula, and ultimately with Fisherman's Wharf.
Are there any questions for the staff at this time? Yes, Supervisor.
I agree with Supervisor Zergos that it's something that the public is not well informed of in terms, so that's partially why they're not understanding. But I was also confused when I read, also on that page 3, it says that "We are requesting your board's authorization for the director to submit the hotel complex and restaurant projects as outlined above to the Coastal Commission and to pursue the project until completion." So you're requesting the board's authorization to take it to the Coastal Commission, that's what it says. And to me, I don't know what the project is. It's kind of hard to say yes, go to the Coastal Commission. I would hope that you're going to come back to the Board of Supervisors and not receive your authority at this meeting. And that's page 3, paragraph 4.
Yeah, well, no, that assumes that the lease is done and that we have come back to you with the project at that point.
Okay.
And that's a good question, that was an assumption.
And I do believe it's in here, that we will be back with the lease for the board.
I didn't see that. And I did see where it, I didn't see anywhere where it's coming back to the board, and I saw that it's going to the Coastal Commission, you know, that you're requesting it go to the Coastal Commission. So I can see where the public could get concerned, you know, and, you know, if you don't read closely, yeah, we're exempting it from SEQA, and we're taking it to the Coastal Commission. And it describes the project as just, you know, being a replacement, reconstruction, same size. And I don't know, you know, if that's the case or not. You know, there's been some word out there that maybe it isn't, you know, that it may be taller. So I'm glad that you're not expecting authorization to go to the Coastal Commission at this time, as the letter states, because I'm not ready for that either.
Yeah, I apologize if it wasn't clear. Yeah, the prior paragraph to what you just read does say, "Some modifications to the form of the lease will be required. The final form of the lease will be brought back to your board in the near future for approval." So...
Well, and I think it, you know, states the obvious. We all know what the process is, and, you know, certainly do anytime we can to do a better job of the communication piece, but, I mean, there's, there's nothing we do in this area that doesn't go to the Coastal Commission, that doesn't come back to this board repeatedly, and, as it should. Supervisor?
And, I'm sorry, and I just want to mention again, and I just want to reiterate that, because I talked to Mercadante and also to Lorraine, we're, this, we're going to give the public a lot of chances to weigh in on this project, and I think it's important that they give us that input, because it's our project, and it's their neighborhood, and we want it to be successful. And I think it's extremely important that we do that.
It's an unfortunately complicated and lengthy process, and even though the information is out there, it's very difficult for people to track, where are we exactly in this? And I, which is partly why I brought the chart this morning, is to keep pointing out, here's where we are. But it is very difficult. We'll try and keep that up.
Other questions? Supervisor?
Yeah, Ms. Krieger, we got, we got a lot of communication from the public in the last couple of days, and, and so my question is this, did anybody in the public contact you to ask, you know, what does this mean? What does this mean it's not going to come to the public? Did you get any communication from Mr. Mercant, Mercanty, or the people that wrote?
No, and unfortunately, I'm not on that email list, but I did write, and I copied Supervisor Zergos and Mr. Powers. I did receive one from a member of the public on Sunday, and Sunday night, wrote him and said, here's all of the information. And he said, oh, it wasn't obvious in the subject line. And he did send out a clarification, but of course, by then, it was late.
So, so there was no, when this agenda item showed up, people just went from the subject line and started blasting away and didn't communicate with you. And now my question is, on the other side, did you, I mean, we know we have a very engaged community out there. Did you reach out to anybody, any of these known players to let them know that this item was coming forward?
In a meeting in, I can't remember if it was late May or early June, just with, with Mr. Mercadante, we did tell him that we hoped to come forward in July, and not later, but that if we didn't make it in July, it might be as late as September. But I did not contact him with this specific...
I, I, I actually, my view is, I think both of us are wrong. I think that the inflammatory emails that went out from Mr. Mercanty without checking the details was inappropriate. But also, we know this happens almost every time, and, you know, a courtesy phone call in advance saying, hey, we're putting this on the agenda, we want you to know it's not a short-circuiting of the public process, you know, it's in there. Because if you read the subject line only, it looks like this is approval. One. Two, there's very few references to the public comment, reaching out to the public. You know, you have an attachment on page 17 of the option agreement. Not very many people in the public are going to get there. And then you have one sentence on page 3 of the board letter. I would encourage us to, if it is something that is, as we said, it's, as you said, it's a complicated process, part of our responsibility is to not waste everybody's political energy. Our political energy responding, their political energy, your political energy on Sunday, trying to, you know, put a fire out. If we, I just think we should do a more thorough job of anticipating where we could have, and it's just, I mean, the courtesy phone call just usually solves an awful lot of problems in these situations.
Supervisor, before you finish, can I add a little bit to that? I contacted Mercadante, and I've given out my phone number, my cell number, my cell number's 24/7, I have that. I get calls at 2:00 in the morning, Sundays, whatever. And I had met with Mercadante and the SECA people at a town hall meeting that they had, several town hall meetings, and gave them my phone number. And unfortunately, he didn't have my phone number. I told him, you don't call me. I was there at the harbor, I was, you know, at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and I would have responded to him immediately. And I gave him that information, my number again last night, and I said, if you need anything, just call me. And it's a miscommunication, again, and, and again, that's unfortunate, because as was mentioned, you know, there was, the agenda item was misunderstood, you know, and now we're clarifying that now.
And we will. I'll take that to heart, Supervisor Bennett. But in the same way, I think Ms. Effers is here, people can vouch for the fact, I do answer emails all weekend. I'm readily available many weekends, not just this one. I do not have a phone number for Mr. Mercadante, but I do have his email, so I wrote him right away.
Well, I would hope you, he's obviously part of a group that's organized, and he's a leader of it. I hope you'd get the phone number so that you can do that. But that's so, but I'm not, I'm saying this is both sides of the street. At the same time, they have a responsibility. And I will say this, I mean, I'm going to say this publicly to them, and I see Lorraine here, I mean, the credibility of the public's input... I mean, the credibility of the public's input is important. If the public comes and they're spouting off all kinds of stuff that's not accurate, their credibility goes down and the value of their input gets compromised. And so, if they want to have real input into the process, they have to make sure that their communication is credible also. And certainly, much of what went out in the 21 emails that I got was stuff that just was so far from the mark that, but it's where things run if we don't manage it. So, we're both, both sides are, I think, need to improve their, our communication in terms of this. So, both sides have a responsibility here. Thank you.
Back to the, another question, clear communication. You know, I did also have trouble, not only in the asks for permission to go to the Coastal Commission, but also it talks about, and I'm still not quite clear, "The final form of the lease will be brought back to your board at the near future for approval. Construction of the new hotel will begin immediately upon lease commencement."
Right.
Now, to me, that, yeah, go ahead.
The lease will be approved, but it is not effective until they complete all the requirements of the option agreement.
Okay, but see, just that threw me, I had to keep reading. Now, why, you know, it's coming to the board in the near future, and then construction begins with lease commencement. It's, to me, I can't see how that could be, you know? If you're going to approve the lease, the board's going to approve the lease in the near future, and then you're going to commence construction, you know, there's a lot of steps in between that. So, I don't think this is the most clear board letter, too. So, I can see where it could have led to some concern from the residents. And I think that's what I'm leading up to, is just, yes, it's always nice to give them a heads up, something's coming before us. I like their idea of making them time certain so that they feel they have the ability to comment. But also, I think, in what we are describing, we need to be more clear.
The time certain, I think, is extremely important. But on page three, real quick, the fourth paragraph, we talk about, it's going to take a couple of years to even do this project. Talk about the first two years and some of the fees that they're going to have to incur if they don't, going into the third and fourth year and to get their entitlements and their leases and so forth. So, there's ample time here for the public to communicate with us and to work with us and so forth. But I like that time certain idea, and I think it's important. And have them put their emails on your email, and we shoot them that information as soon as it comes up. And I think it's important. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Krieger. We'll open up now for public comments. Lorraine Effress. Good morning and welcome.
Madam Chair, before she gets started, I want to point out that additional comments, emails were distributed.
Yes, they were. Yes, they were. Pages. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Long, Supervisors, and Mr. Powers. I'm speaking today on behalf of all of SECA, which stands for Channel Islands Community Association. And I want to say thank you to the three supervisors who basically just preempted most of my comments, and also for accommodating us with the time certain. And I'd also like to start off by saying that we are thrilled about the hotel project. We have been waiting forever to get that hotel online. We know Mr. Fann's reputation is outstanding, and if we could get the hotel there tomorrow, we would do anything that we could to make that happen. So, we do not in any way, shape, or form want to contest this. Our issues are really, and actually, I'm going to throw out my prepared remarks and say, two weeks ago, we were treated to a lot of important Supreme Court decisions. And one of those decisions was on the Affordable Care Act. And in his dissent, Chief Justice Roberts, I mean, in his approval of the, going forward with the wording as it was written in the Supreme, in the Affordable Care Act, he said it was an example of inartful drafting. Well, I believe that we also have some very inartful drafting in this lease option and the agenda item. And the fact that it was not made known to us before a holiday weekend, when most of us were not around or out of town, when we knew the county was closed on Friday and probably half of Thursday, and we did not, I did not know, because I have had emails with Mrs. Krieger, that I could contact her over the weekend, so, and I was given to understand that Supervisors Aragosa was actually out of town. So, we were just at our wits' end about how we could make our feelings known about this. And I actually agree that some of the emails that went out were rather inflammatory, and I apologize for that. I agree with Supervisor Bennett that there is enough blame to go around for both sides here. I think Mrs. Krieger has my phone number, I'm not sure. I will give it to her before I leave today. We'll give her Mr. Mercadante's phone number. We have cell phones, so it doesn't really matter where we are. But I think that in reading through the lease option, some of the comments that Supervisor Parks has made are very accurate. It is really unclear exactly what is being asked for today, what the option allows for, when the lease is going to be signed. And I want to read a sentence from the ERN, which said, on page two, this is the ERN of August 5, 2014, that was approved by this board, "Also during the ERN period, the developers will hold several public meetings to discuss the development concepts with the community and receive feedback." Well, the ERN ran for over 10 months, because it was extended once and it expired the end of April, and never did we ever have any contact with the developers, except that Supervisors Aragosa arranged for us to meet with the other developer, Channel Islands Harbor's partner on Fisherman's Wharf. And we reached out to Brighton, we've had three phone calls with Brighton, and each time, we were told that, yes, we're going to get together a meeting, but in fact, it never came to be. So, you can understand that all of you, all the supervisors, have directed the Harbor Department on multiple occasions to reach out to the public, to hold public meetings, to go to the HOAs and the neighborhood councils and our group, and this rarely has happened. So, we just don't know what to do anymore, because you all agree that the stakeholders should be involved. And we are only asking for that. And yet, in the option agreement, in the fifth section, where the developers' plans are outlined and all the steps, the schematic drawings and this, that, and the other thing are outlined, it seems to be at the sole discretion of the director. Even the board isn't mentioned, other county personnel, the city, for example. I believe this option is poorly written. And I would say to you that maybe you want to amend it, to clarify some of the points that Supervisor Parks has raised, and to write in, to codify in writing, not just in a board letter where we saw that sentence, that immediately upon approval, the developer should reach out. Because this is an early stage, well, what about later on? I mean, we know this developer has a wonderful reputation. I've been in many of his hotels. We're all for him. We want it tomorrow. Tris, we really want this.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
So, please codify this in writing.
Thank you.
Lorraine, my phone number is available whether I'm in town or out of town.
I didn't have your cell phone number, and I was led to believe that you were out of town.
Regardless, if I'm out of town, my, I don't care where I'm at, I'll answer the phone and...
I got that now from Mike, and I will give our numbers to Mrs. Krieger, so she has.
And thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I just ask Ms. Krieger one question? Just while we're on it. So, Ms. Effress brought up the, in the August 2014, it said that the developer was going to have some outreach. Is it your interpretation that that outreach was supposed to take place during the period between August and when we got to now, the ERN?
When, yes, when we came back for the extension of the ERN, we did not make modifications, but we did talk about at the time, that when we deal with a project like a hotel, as it turned out, getting to the drawings and they were meeting with the hotel chain company was extremely expensive. And so, they wanted a little more reassurance before we got to the point of them spending all the money they needed to spend to get that done. Which is why it has appeared here, is in 60 days, you have to have that done or it expires.
But with two things. One, is it your interpretation that in August, this was supposed to happen before they came back? Or is this, was this hearing or having today not anticipated that they were going to come back for this? This was anticipated, correct?
It was anticipated that we would be back at this point, yes.
And was the understanding that the August 2014 reference to having public hearings, that those public hearings were going to take place before this hearing?
It was hoped that they would. It was not guaranteed that they would, because the project was uncertain.
But the references to that were about hearings that should have taken place between now.
Right.
And then, my second question is, this attachment here, it says within, it says, "Completed within 60 days, share conceptual plans with the public."
Right.
Is that a, now a contractual requirement?
Yes.
And what does shared public plans, does that just mean put it on the internet? Does that mean, I mean, is there any definition of what shared means?
Well, in the planning outline that you just saw on the screen, it lists approximately four different places that outreach must happen. So, we're talking about a minimum of four meetings out with the public with drawings.
Okay, thank you.
Town hall meetings and everything.
Again, that, if that was clearer, you know, like, under shared, you know, that might be helpful to say, you know, according to the chart or something. I mean, I didn't make that connection between that and the chart. Okay, so, thank you.
So, perhaps what we can do is bring that up to the front of the document as an action for approval.
That's right. And in the subject line, I would include, you know, be more clear about, you know, the beginning of the public process or whatever.
Okay. Our next public speaker is David Drager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Long, Supervisors. I can remember being here in August, and I can actually remember with Rebecca speaking earlier, I was in your office with a group of hoteliers four years ago as we started the whole T-Bid process, so, it's good to be back. And I am, again, I'm David Drager, and I'm with Brighton Management. The name's been up, and I represent Brighton Management here today. And also, Bright Peninsula, it's hard to say, Bright Peninsula Road LLC, Joseph Fawn and the Brighton team assembled. I think we've got some of them maybe stand up now. We've got a few of them, a few of our Brighton team here today, so that you can kind of get the names, the faces. We're excited. There's, I've heard everything that's gone. We're very, very excited about this project. I understand the public feedback. I was excited to hear Lorraine say she's excited. She's done her research. Joseph in our corporate office in Orange County, he received several phone calls yesterday as well. And I'll get right to that, I didn't have that in my comments, but we plan on the four town hall meetings. We plan on having schematics there. We plan on, it's kind of been the ghost in the room. We are, in talking to the folks at Hyatt today, we are in discussions with Hyatt. We don't have a contract with them, but if you want to go on the internet after the meeting, it's Hyatt House. So, and in the description, you see 200 rooms for the project. Most likely, they would, it would be an all-suite, like extended stay type hotel. So, we're very excited about this project, excited to work with Lynn, the Harbor team that she has, we've been working with them since August. So, we're excited to continue that. Work with Ventura County, the Board of Supervisors. I also need to mention the City of Oxnard, work with them on this project. Again, it will be 200 rooms, all suites. It will also have flexible indoor/outdoor meeting space. So, I hope at some point, two years from now, we can all have a beverage, some kind of beverage on the deck kind of thing. Everybody would be happy. I know Lorraine said she wanted to have a coffee with me. We could have a coffee hopefully on that deck.
As a beverage, or?
Yeah, a beverage, just a beverage, yeah. Okay. And there is going to be restaurant space, you all know the old restaurant that was there. So, the footprint has changed a little bit, as you might imagine, with this. Another thing that was brought up through Lorraine and something we are, and it's in the documents, there will be a public walkway that'll tie into the marina. So, we'll be very, you don't have to have the beverage, you don't have to stay overnight, you could still have access to the facility. And I know there'll be certain gateways for vistas, that kind of stuff, that'll be throughout the project. And we're just, you know, to be on the water, to be on Channel Islands, to have the, I mean, we are so excited, this is going to be a tremendous project. We all know about that Embassy Suites that's down the way there. I think this is going to be, and they've gone through like a $20 million renovation. This project is going to be, really put Ventura County on the map. We're ready, we're ready to get out into the community, we're ready to discuss the project and move forward through coastal and then into construction. Thank you very much for your time.
David?
I can't get away that quick.
That's right. So, can you just put, give us on the record your response in terms of why there weren't public outreach meetings between August of 2014 and today? Even though the original document had been?
Yeah, no, and it's a very good question, and Lorraine had that question when we talked. We were trying to follow, what we at Brighton, we were trying to get to this point today. This is kind of the point where we've got the lease option and we can move forward. And since August, there have been, as you might imagine, with a project of this scope, and if you drive out there today and see the boarded-up old hotel, there are, you know, just working on the parcel and the parking, was three and four meetings, just trying to, you know, get what we need to operate a 200-room hotel. So, and then you know about the, you know, Chair Aragosa knows about the other developer that's there and the potential, and then Fisher, all that tie-in took this much time. We wanted to be here six months, we wanted to be here earlier. But it was our understanding that the public meetings would be after today, and we've always been looking at that checklist with the 60 days. And I'm going to lead a team, including Joseph Fawn, to get out there to those.
So, you simply have a different interpretation? You don't think that they called for public outreach that was in the August 2014 document, called for the meetings to take place before we got to today?
Yeah, I'm kind of the lead on that, and I always had, my understanding was I had to be here today to have this document, and to be honest with you, I came with a check today, then to move into that next phase.
So, the interpretation of Ms. Krieger saying it was anticipated that she'd have them be, just a disagreement in terms of whether that's supposed to be?
Yeah, for us at Brighton Management, we felt we had to be here today to have, to come before the Board of Supervisors and then get our schematics and get out there and do our show and feedback with the company.
Madam Chair, one of the things that I'd like to share, and David does, with the SECA folks, what I think with Tollison and Mullen, the meetings that I set up with them was just to kind of know who they were and kind of share their resume and what they're doing, not the project itself. And this is what I wanted to do with Brighton at the time, was to have them meet with you folks, just to say, "Hey, I'm David," and, "The partners with this company," just to know you, just to make sure that they knew who you were, and later on, the town hall meetings were going to come, you know, as you're sharing now.
Right.
But that was the whole idea, was just to meet with the developers of the hotel and the restaurant, and also the developers of Fisherman's Wharf. But you're right, you know, the, but the whole idea was just to meet, not to talk about the renderings or what the project was going to look like at the time.
Right, and I think it's from our perspective, there's no way you can just meet me and then say, "Well, what are you going to do?"
No, 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 just to know who you were and resume of...
And Lorraine, she got to me. We never spoke about that topic, but yeah.
But thank you anyway. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you being here, and thank you. Steve Kenny?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Powers.
Good morning.
I'm Steve Kenny. I'm here today representing the Friends of Channel Islands Harbor, the group of 15 master lessees who are responsible for all of the commercial and residential development right around the harbor front itself. This group is obviously champing at the bit to see this project move forward and Fisherman's Wharf as soon as possible thereafter, of course, as well. I mean, almost everyone in the, in that Lessees Association has property that is directly in view from the Casas Rina property. Or more to the point, they can see the Casas Rina property from their property. The visual blight that's been slowly creeping along there, you know, it has an effect, and everyone is anxious to see that, see the blight removed and see the, you know, the positive construction signs take place there. Everybody has a direct interest in the details of the project, again, because they're going to see it from their property. They want to have a voice, too, in what ultimately is built there. Many, if not most, of the lessees have themselves been through that same process that Ms. Krieger put up on the walls, and they trust the process to be rigorous, shall I say, exhaustive. But they understand that there's plenty of opportunity for their input, as well as all the other public dimensions of input there, and are just anxious to see the process launched, because they also understand how long the process is. So, this group certainly heartily encourages your approval today and thereafter. Thank you. Thank you.
And Steve, Madam Chair, we need to set up meetings with David and Mullen and Tolleson, we need to set up meetings also with David and Tolleson too, with the masterlesses too.
Absolutely right.
I think it's important that all of us get together and, and work on this project.
I look forward to that.
Thank you.
It will be nice to see the hotel, a new hotel there.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Thank you.
They say a rising tide raises all boats, and in this case, the property values around it will increase too, so it will be good to see and bring some more activity to the harbor. I, I have one other question, because as, as we mentioned in the lease on that page 17, Lynn, it does mention all the schedule of performance, this is just between the Lessie and the county, but you also will be bringing it to the Board of Supervisors, because it's not mentioned in here that they need to do anything with the Board of Supervisors, right?
Yeah, at the end of the option agreement, the only reason, I mean, this is the contractual agreement between the county and the developer, and in order to ensure for your board's review later, that all of the steps have been completed, they are required to submit them to us, make sure it's in conformance with what it is you understand is coming forward, and that they are actually producing those steps. That's the only reason for those requirements, is we don't want to have at the end of the option just a pile of paper coming in.
Right.
It needs to be coming in along the way.
We, obviously, this is all good, you know, to have this coming forward, it's unfortunate that there are communication problem in between, but I also just wanted to say you were accessible on a Sunday, which, you know, is above and beyond, you know, for staff, you shouldn't have to be available on Sundays, so I do appreciate that, and I do look forward to seeing this come to completion and, and hopefully, in a not-too-distant future.
And, and I want to share that Lorraine and the rest of the folks, that this is going to go to the public, we're not going to leave you out. It's extremely important that we get your input, and also that you be involved. Thank you, Lorraine.
Any other questions? Okay. Before the board for action?
So, so move.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
And I would hope the, also, the Lessie has a copy of the flow chart, because I think that's essential. Thank you.
David is saying yes.
Appreciate the public comment and, and the developer, David, for being here to speak to this. I think it's a significant project for the harbor to jumpstart and revitalize the entire harbor, and, and one that has been welcomed and appreciate the, the investment. Look forward to it coming back to us and to the community with the engagement that's needed to make it the best project it can be. Thank you. Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, board members, we have item 35, Supervisor Bennett. I'm going to step away for a minute, but you've certainly started, are they here?
They are.
Okay.
At least my staff indicated that, so, we'll let them, we'll let them walk in, I hope.
How?
They're out there. So we're at the Teach Scholarship Award, so if we could have those people come in, please. While we take a two-minute break while we wait for them to come in. Dr. Floudus, how much time do you have? Linda Bowman, I know, I see John Franklin back in the back, and Vicki, and the great leaders all the way around, so, anyway, thank you to everybody for, for being here for this opportunity to have the board recognize the Teach Award winners, and I'll just come down and pass out the certificates and turn the rest of this program over to you, Mr. Matheny, but you regale us with the accomplishments of these fine young people in front of us.
Yes, you know, I was reflecting on the drive over here this morning, oh, by the way, official greetings to each of you, and Supervisor Long, congratulations on being able to see light at the end of the tunnel. What a great career. Congratulations to you. On the, on the drive over here, I was reflecting on when we started all of this, and as near as I can figure, it was somewhere between 20 and 25 years ago. The way I can most accurately measure it is that I had thick hair and it was dark. But this has been a labor of love, and Supervisor Bennett, you have been such a champion for all of the youth in the foster care system, that I think this represents a wonderful little bit of positive feedback to you for how differences are being made in the lives of young people who are under the protection and authority of the court system. We so often think of, of this as being a population of youth that we just sort of shunt off to the side and forget about them, but this is living proof that there are adults who have been there and have helped to breathe life into these young people and give them a chance. And all of us who have involved with Teach get so much joy out of being a part of this, and I'd like the Teach Committee members who are here to just stand up so you can get an idea of the numbers. And, and really, that's a small slice of, of our pie, they weren't all able to be here. Go figure, people have lives that they are leading, and, and we're just appreciative of all of them. And I also want to thank Colleen Kason with the star, who has been a champion for our kids in print media, and all of the exposure that is given to what this situation is, I think helps everybody. And we also have a special guest star from Casa Pacifica, Vicki Murphy is here, who has been such an important part of the lives of.
Who is this? Aren't you not here?
And I also want to thank, before we get into the treasured moment of handing out these certificates of recognition, the Smith Foundation and the, the amazing partnership that they have been over these last couple of years, and really helping to accelerate the degree of help that we can provide to these kids. So Supervisor Bennett, let me have you enjoy the pleasure of giving these certificates, and as in the past, we will just use the first name of the student out of respect for the laws of the state of California. And so our first recipient, who I believe is here, Anne? Anne? There you are. And Cheyenne, would you come up, please? Christina?
[laughing].
And Kathy? Is Lucy here? If you are here and I didn't call your name, would you let me know, because we have your certificate over in another.
Kelly.
Kelly, okay. Quickly, it's going to be retrieved.
Kelly is the first one here.
We also, this year, we have something that I think is pretty incredible, that really reflects the value of what this scholarship money represents for a young person who really does want to pursue an education and, and position themselves to make a difference in the world. We have two students who completed their master's work this year, and we've had, in the past, we've had one master's student, so to have two in the same year is really remarkable. They don't know that these awards are up here, but I would like to present Teach Achievement Award first to Christina Miranda. And there's a star on here for good reason. This, this second award goes to Raquel Montez. Board members, as always, we invite you to join us over at Marie Callender's, where they will be hosting a pie and coffee reception. I always hold out the dream that you will be able to finish up the agenda and come on over and join us, but for some reason, it appears as though the oppressive business is always there, but please know that you are invited, you are welcome, and we would love to be able to have lemon meringue pie with you, or whatever your flavor of choice is, even you, Mr. Powers. Yes, all right.
Supervisor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank again Larry and the whole Teach Scholarship Committee for pulling this off. Why don't we, scholarship recipients and those of us that benefit from their work, let's give them a big hand. And so, we're going, we're going to take a picture right now, and so we'd like you to come down for the picture, we'll arrange it, and board members, would you please join us for this picture here, right? So I think our numbers are such that we can make it right here, right?
Congratulations to all of you.
Put the recipients in the middle, right? We'll put the adults on the outside, crew, you'll shoot it from back there, right? Is that that, board members? So we'll put you guys right here, let's put Raquel and you with your extra right in the very middle, right here.
Good house.
And then, all of you kind of fill in, if you're a little shorter, she's got high heels on, you definitely be in the front, there you go. There you go. There you go. Come in much tighter, let's put, turn your shoulders, would you, so they're side naked, that's it. And you'll be, you'll stay, you'll stay just like that, right? There we go.
Congratulations on the.
Once you put on that heels, right?
Yeah, a few months probably yet, but yes, it is. Congratulations.
Now, adults, squeeze on in there wherever you can, right? There you go.
Okay. Good, good.
Sharon.
Sharon. Stand up. Turn your shoulders, will we all get in nice and tight? If you can't see the camera, it can't see you. If we can't have pie, we want to at least be in the picture.
And I love lemon meringue pie. You should have brought it over.
Isn't your favorite banana?
Yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Very good job. Kathy.
Congratulations.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board members, thank you Supervisor, that's always, always a wonderful event to do. Yeah, yeah. Great to see those, recognition of those young people. All right, we're going to move on to our item thirty five, six, 36, and this is to recognize Parks and Recreation Month. Woo-hoo! And happy, as always, to see Ron Van Dyke, our Deputy Director of our Parks Department, here to receive this recognition resolution on behalf of the board. And this is, this year's recognition is Parks and Recreation in California Create Community Through People, Parks and Programs. And we recognize our parks because we know they are critical and so valuable to our quality of life for our residents and for all of us to enjoy recreational outdoor experiences that are offered with our parks. Our county parks preserve, protect the natural resources of our county, support more productive workforce, enhance the desirability of location for businesses and families, stimulates tourism, as we heard earlier today, and it really is that total community that creates a wonderful place to live, promoting health wellness and reducing our healthcare costs, because when you're healthy, you don't go to the ER. That's how it works. Parks and Recreation helps with the young people, to have them grow into healthy adults, and helps adults to live longer with healthier lives. And it is hundreds of thousands of children, adults and seniors who annually visit our Ventura County Park facilities and benefit from the wide range of services and facilities, and you'll tell us how the great July 4th weekend was for our park system, right? Valuable service to our public, both in the planning, development, maintenance, management and operations of 26 recreational facilities, and we thank our, our small but mighty Parks Department staff and leadership team that takes care of our parks in our county, and, and also the volunteers, and through our park commissioners and volunteers that really value our parks and know that they're an important part of creating community through people, parks and programs. And Mr. Van Dyke, I'll step down to present this, and please, tell us how our parks are doing.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Powers. For the record, Ron Van Dyke, General Services. I'd like to give you a little snapshot, I typically take this opportunity to give you a snapshot of how we're doing every year from what happened the past year. This year, we're focusing on our volunteers, our park hosts, our commissioners, and other types of volunteer groups that we have. Church of Latter Day Saints gives us a lot of hours typically every year. This past year, unfortunately, we weren't able to fit them into our program in the area that they wanted to work, so we missed that opportunity, unfortunately. But to give you an idea, our park hosts alone provide over 20,000 hours of service to our park system. Between that and using, they release folks from probation, we probably get around anywhere from 12 FTE equivalents in labor a year. So that's 12 bodies, a million dollars' worth of salaries that I don't have to pay, that we're getting basically volunteer work to do, which is huge to our budget, this, you know, it'd almost double the size of our department if we didn't have these volunteers. Hosts aren't technically volunteers, because they're, you know, doing work for board to a certain extent, so we, we share those num, that offset. But for our utilization, and thanks to the board's help and us maintain our facilities and, and go back and fix things that have been unfortunately neglected due to funding, that contribution that you give us, what grant money that we've had over the, over the years that unfortunately we're not able to get right now anymore, that's just not out there, we've been able to reinvest in our parks, which is really important, because that brings the customers back. It's like the old curb appeal thing, if you're in real estate, if you drive up to the curb and don't like what you see, you don't even get out of the car. Parks are the same way, you drive in, don't like what you see, you leave. So we have to have the curb appeal, that's what we drive, and that's our, our almanzo basically for our, our staff is curb appeal, curb appeal. Otherwise, they're not coming back. Our baseline year that we use for these numbers that we're, I'm going to give you right now is 07-08. Prior to that, we did not have records of our utilization, it was all based off of revenue. Our revenue's up, we're doing good, our revenue's down, we're doing bad. That's how we, we measured our success, but now we do it. a certain extent, so we share those, that offset. But for our utilization and thanks to the board's help and us maintain our facilities and go back and fix things that have been unfortunately neglected due to funding, that contribution that you give us, what grant money that we've had over the, over the years that unfortunately we're not able to get right now anymore, that's just not out there, we've been able to reinvest in our parks, which is really important because that brings the customers back. It's like the old curb appeal thing, if you're in real estate, if you drive up to the curb and don't like what you see, you don't even get out of the car. Parks are the same way. You drive in, don't like what you see, you leave. So we have to have the curb appeal. That's what we drive and that's our almo, basically for our staff is curb appeal, curb appeal. Otherwise, they're not coming back. Our baseline year that we use for these numbers that we're, I'm going to give you right now is '07-'08. Prior to that, we did not have records of our utilization. It was all based off of revenue. If our revenue's up, we're doing good. If revenue's down, we're doing bad. That's how we majored our success. But now, we do it with hard numbers. So our baseline year is '07-'08, and since '07-'08, this year, this past fiscal year, we've increased our camping by 48 percent.
Tell us how you did that. What do you have, what do you have?
We've had a little help from Mother Nature, unfortunately, but there's a downside to that, we're in a drought. We've basically been operating full, literally full-tilt year-round, where we usually get a little bit of a break during the winter because of the rains slow down our camping, which is our major source of our revenue to operate, typically slows that down. We haven't had it. So we haven't slowed down during even the offseason when our folks can decompress a little bit, ranges specifically. Maintenance is, they're busy all year round, but it gets busier in the summer for them also because a lot of things are breaking, we got to get them back up for the customers. Restrooms clog, it's an immediate fix. We just can't shut it down and move on. So that's a factor. And then the investment in the parks, as I said, we've put a lot of investment back in to spruce the places up. We do annual maintenance down at the beaches, which was not a program we had in the past. We're down there every year. We shut it down. This year, we shut it down for each park, Hobson and Freya, for two weeks apiece for maintenance. That has a benefit on the backside. We just installed Wi-Fi down at Hobson and Freya, so if you're like the concessionaires down there, you can stay in touch with work because now we have Wi-Fi at both locations, thanks to IT Services' help in getting that installed with us. So that's a big thing. Our overall use has increased about by the same percentage. Our actual attendance numbers that we track for paying customers, not the non-paying, but the paying customers is the only way we can track customer, our customer base, we've increased over 130,000 visitors to the park in that same period. We have non-paying customers that use the trail, for instance. We probably have roughly about 400,000 people that use the Ohio Valley Trail a year, at least. So those don't factor into our actual cost numbers because we can't calculate them, it's a moving target. But we've actually decreased our cost per customer by 29 percent of what we use from a budget standpoint. Again, those are the paying customer. So if I added in all the non-paying numbers that we could come up with, that would probably drop about half that. But just for the paying customer base, it costs us about $10 per customer to operate the park for just paying customers.
Is that because of the volume or?
It's the, it's the, it's the volume. Everything's done on an average basis, so if a camper is actually 2.5, excuse me, three people per camping, and our day-use customers is 2.5 per vehicle. So it's, it's all, it's a rounded-off number, so it's not, we're not actually clicking head counts.
So you increase revenue?
It does give us a baseline from year to year to work off of.
That's good.
So at least we can track and see where we're projecting and going in the right direction.
Fantastic.
So those are our numbers. If you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to try to answer any more.
I want to hear what you have next year. That's good.
We're on track. We, we're having slowed down a bit. In the Fourth of July, to answer your question, we were slammed. We were, we were slammed. It was, it was very busy and the Rincon, as usual, was our biggest headache. But everybody was happy, full, no complaints, no police reports that I was aware of, so it was a successful weekend.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the board to recognize Park and Recreation Month. Thank you, and your staff for all the great work.
I just, I just want, I just, real quick, I just want to take this opportunity to, the degree of professionalism that we're getting out of the Parks Department staff and GSA overall has just been remarkable, and I think every year it seems to improve. It's a challenging job to stretch resources and deal with all the things that you have to deal with, and I just want to say, I have a lot of parks, and I watch you guys in action a lot, and I just really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our staff appreciates that.
Thank you, Ron.
They work really hard.
We have also been noticing that with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and all the parks, they are all growing with lots and lots of people. And it's of note that we don't necessarily expand the amount of parks we have, so it just, they become just greater used and a more valued resource. I imagine also we're doing some cutting back on watering and all trying to meet the demands of the state and be available to reduce the impacts of drought.
Yeah, we're being watched very closely by the water districts are watching us and making sure that our billing is showing us decreasing our water uses. Our golf courses and just more of a public answer to a lot of questions, our golf courses get picked on a lot, and that's common industry-wide, but golf courses have an incentive to use less water because it goes directly against their bottom line. So they have an incentive to turn down the, turn down and get to the minimum that they need to keep the golf course playable.
Ron, are you using recycled water in the golf? In Oxnard?
No, yeah, Oxnard started using, River Ridge did. Hopefully in 2016, Public Works will have their project completed for recycled water down to Rustic Canyon, which right now is taking the hardest hit for potable water use as far as expense. So that line will actually dead-end at Rustic, so we'll be really happy to see when that gets completed.
And that'll help tremendously.
Yeah, it'll help a lot. But there's an incentive to use less water in golf courses. People don't necessarily correlate that, but they try to turn it down as low as they can and tip.
I think that Oxnard's not wanting to fringe us only the greens, I think, what they're doing.
Yeah. Satacory Park, which is closest to us that we keep an eye on, they've been doing that now for years. And management, corporate management has been watching their water bills to make sure that they're not overwatering.
Fantastic.
All right. Thank you. Again, appreciate the work. Yep, good job. All right, item 37, Supervisors Zaragosa.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to thank Tim Hockit and Dr. Flores, everyone who come over. We have, they're from, we have a resolution proclaiming July 17, 2015 as Community Action Day in Ventura County. Before I read this, I just want to share with, I've been over to their place in Richmond, my staff and I have, and they're running a great operation there, so.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the good work that you're doing there, working with the county, working with the city and helping a lot of the folks there too. So I'd like to read this resolution and have you maybe share a couple of words. This is proclaiming July 17, 2015 as Community Action Day in Ventura County, where its community action agencies were created with the Economic Opportunity Act, with the Economic Opportunity Act in 1964, and it was signed into law. And whereas community action agencies have a 50-year history of promoting self-efficiency, sufficiency for struggling families and individuals across America, and whereas community action in Ventura County was incorporated on July 16, 1965, and to this day continues to provide numerous programs within Ventura County to help low-income individuals and families survive and raise above poverty. And whereas community action in Ventura County in partnership with elected officials, private sector, low-income citizens and a larger nonprofit community continue to carry out its mission to identify challenges to the poor and mobilize the community to find action to, to solve poverty. Whereas community action changes people's lives and embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities and makes America a better place to live. Therefore, be resolved that Ventura County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim Friday, July 17, 2015 as Community Action Day in Ventura County in recognition of the hard work and dedication of the community action in Ventura County. And I'm going down.
Thank you so much. Supervisors, good morning. I will start right up front and say, I should have thought of the Marie Callender thing. That was, that was great. I want to thank each of you because you all have a stake in what we do at Community Action in Ventura County in that you appoint board members and your predecessors appointed board members. And we have an outstanding Board of Directors that supports great leadership at community action and also a wonderful staff of about 40 people. We help several thousand families every year to either survive poverty or rise up out of poverty, including folks that have fallen the farthest, namely homeless folks. And it is not glamorous work, but it's very important work. I love Ventura County because it's such a fabulous place, but because it's so fabulous, it's expensive. And that means that people that live in poverty have a longer step to get up to that bottom rung of the middle class. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to lift up people where we can. I'm very proud, again, of our board. I want to invite you to come to our celebration. The actual day that we turn 50 is a week from this Thursday, and then Friday, a week from this, Friday, we're having a celebration over at the Camarillo Ranch. I hope you'll come in the evening, we have a barbecue and so, it's free. And I think that we need to pause for a minute and just celebrate. So thank you so much for recognizing us. Thank you for the great board members that you have appointed to our board, and I hope that the next 50 years is as productive. This is Dr. Ramon Flores, our Board Chair, appointee from, Supervisor Zaragosa. Anything you'd like to share?
I'll just be brief. I just wanted to thank the Supervisor for his appointment. It's been a tremendous time for me. Within less than a year, I was appointed Board Chair, which I thought spoke great of the confidence that the board provided in me. And again, I want to thank you for your appointments. They've been amazing. To be, to be able to be on a board with councilpeople from Moore Park, from Santa Paula, School Board Trustees and elected officials, it's amazing. They bring such capacity for the work that we do. So again, thank you for the appointments. And Zaragosa, thank you for your opportunity.
Let me share something too. You know, when I was out there, you know, there was a young man who was a homeless. He came from, was it Washington?
Yeah.
He came from Washington. This young man was building kayaks, beautiful kayaks. Just unbelievable, that work that he.
I need you to come see us.
My powers is to go out there. Doing an excellent job in the work that they're doing and also the, I think you were fixing the second floor for.
Yeah, we hope to be able to build a shelter. We've got some work to do on that.
You need to go out there and look at that place. It's really, really nice. But I want to thank you so much.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the work.
And see all the people you have here.
It has been nice to see this group grow, hasn't it? And become more pertinent?
Yeah.
Relevant.
Thank you, too, so much. Dr. Flores.
Dr. Flores, thank you. Okay. You do a great job. Thank you. Okay, now, our 10:30 time, certain item 38 is our first item, and it's a second hearing, adoption of an ordinance pertaining to Public Works. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Herb Schwinn with the Public Works Agency Engineering Services Department. And as the Chair said, we're back here for the second hearing regarding the adoption of the ordinance pertaining to Public Works projects, contractor, debarment. Just in review, it's the county's policy that we conduct business only with responsible contractors, and when we find that contractor is other than responsible, the appropriate means to deal with it is through debarment. We coordinated with GSA and County Council to develop the ordinance. It applies to all Public Works projects as defined in the, in the Labor Code, and it would apply to all departments and agencies that your board has delegated capital projects' approval or management authority to. It provides the criteria and the process for pursuing debarment, and I'm just here to answer any questions and recommend that you adopt the ordinance.
Are there any questions?
Remove the recommended action.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the work. All right, board members, we move to item 39, which is a public hearing on resolution proving engineer's report, assessment of Santa Rosa Road. And we have received a yellow card from a constituent here speaking to this item. Mr. Fleisch, you're up.
Good morning, Chair Long, Supervisors, Mr. Powers. For the record, I'm Dave Fleisch with the Public Works Agency Transportation Department. The item before you again is the public hearing for the, to confirm the engineer's report for the Santa Rosa Road Assessment District. This is year 10 of that assessment. Your board approved the draft report on June 9th, and this is the public hearing. If I have any questions.
Okay, are there any questions at this time, Supervisor?
I believe we have a, it's a comment card.
It's a comment card, yes.
An individual doesn't want to speak. I know that the main benefit that the residents of Santa Rosa Valley feel in addition to lower speeds is more particular to the fact that we, because of the synchronized lights, it has allowed for platooning of cars, so people can actually get out onto Santa Rosa Road. That was a big issue, particularly homes that didn't have signals at them, you know, off-streets that didn't have signals. Very dangerous for them to get out and try to turn left and all that. So that's a tremendous benefit there. And then also, having the signals there has allowed for some of those homes to now have a lot safer access onto Santa Rosa. And the county of Ventura has also contributed to this benefit assessment district to pay for what is considered the general benefit to all the county. And then the specific benefit for the residents themselves was analyzed based on where they live and whether they get access to the lights. I just wanted to bring that up because I know the, the one concern that you didn't get a chance to, I don't know if you got to see the card, was raised that there really isn't that benefit that the county should be paying for this. It's paid for with our taxes. I think also the signals themselves would not have been put in without the assessment. There just wouldn't be the signals. And I think they do give an overall benefit to the community, but then also to the region. I don't, I don't know if you had any comments to add to that.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct in all of those comments. The other piece of this is the signals, the synchronization and the installation of the signals is also in an effort, in addition to allowing the traffic, as you, as you said, to be able to get in and out more smoothly. It eliminated from the general plan the need to widen Santa Rosa Road from two lanes, one lane each direction, to four lanes, two lanes in each direction, and that seems to have been working fairly well. As you may be aware, we have a study we're looking at right now, and we're waiting for the final results from a consultant to look at what tweaks, if any, we need to make to the system to, to make it function even better than it currently is, and we expect to have that here in the next month or so.
And I know this item also includes some kind of tweaking to make sure that it is what the voters approved, includes the interest payments, for example, and, but I, I know the MAC unanimously approved this, and, and I appreciate you taking their comments and incorporating that into this too. Unless there's any comment, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. I was, you know, Carter, I do appreciate what you've said there. My name's Joe Hedinger. I'm in, live in the Santa Rosa Valley. In regards to the benefits of the traffic lights, I think that could be said of every single traffic light in every single neighborhood that's in Ventura County, that the people in the neighborhood benefit from it differently than the people that are transgressing through the neighborhood. So we're no different in that regard than anybody else. As far as the reduction of speed or the, the synchronization of the lights, that only occurs during a small portion of time. It's not, they're not continually synchronized. So the, the synchronization and the reduction of speed really is not happening in Santa Rosa Valley. We still have people that are, the, the traffic still flows at 55 to 65 miles an hour through the valley. What we wanted to do was reduce the noise by reducing traffic speed to 45 and also to keep the, the larger trucks and stuff out of the valley. Thank you.
Yeah, and I do encourage you to come to the municipal advisory council meetings and be able to have your input. And then, you know, as I mentioned, Mr. Fleisch has taken the input of the residents, particularly in this item itself. I think that's helpful.
I'm not always able to attend.
And I also know that we put rubberized surface on the street, which also helped to reduce the noise because that is an issue too. And I see your, your T-shirt, so you may be a cyclist, and I know that's been an effort too, to try to see that we can make those bike lanes safer. I know the rubble strips are a bit of a problem. I like to be able to see the streets.
It's a dangerous road you ride by a sickle.
Particularly the sweeping of the streets too in that area, because it is a big connector between the cities of Thousand Oaks, Seamy Valley and Moore Park.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the speeds and the people that travel through there, even cleaning the bike lanes isn't going to make it safe. No one in my club rides that road. I live there, I don't ride the road. I travel someplace else to ride it. It's not safe for bicycles. The rubberized did work while it was new, but it's worn down, so the noise has increased. We do appreciate that effort, but it's diminished now. But thank you. Thank you for listening to me.
And we, the next Santa Rosa MAC meeting is on Thursday, on the 16th of July. I encourage you to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff on this item? Okay, before the board. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, sir. And board, we now have a break until our 1:30 time certain. No closed session. Woo-hoo!
Perfect time.
Do we do what? Yeah. Oh, that worked. Okay, good afternoon and welcome. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting from our lunch recess. And welcome the planning commissioners here to this joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commissioners. Welcome. As you all here, we've got a very full agenda item that we're going to together listen, engage, and have some discussion. And that's a general plan update. And this is a study session for the general plan update. And so, I will, with that, convene this meeting and turn it over to the chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commissioner of the County of Ventura is now called to order. I'd like the clerk to call the roll, please. Or would you prefer the chair do it? The chair can do it. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Calley.
Present.
Commissioner Ansot.
Here.
Commissioner Radukas. Madam Chair, please report for the five commissioners who are present, having no other items on our agenda. We turn it back to you.
Thank you. And our call to order was early this morning at 8:30, but we did get a nice lunch break. So, thank you. Again, good to have you here. So, we're going to move forward with this study session. And I will turn it over to our outstanding staff to introduce this. At first, I'd ask if there's any board members who'd like to make comment. I'd like to just open by saying that I do appreciate so much the Planning Commission in doing this joint study session. And that we're going to hear certainly all of the good work that's been to date by, been done to date by our agency and planning leadership team and the community. And that this is the first step in what will be a very important and valuable process for all of us with the community to go through. And one that will have lots of opportunities for public engagement yet ahead for us and for all of the board members and the commissioners. So, anyone else care to comment? Very important work, and I, good to see you, Kim. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Long, and members of the board, and Chair Westner, and members of the Planning Commission, and Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Kim Pearlhart. I'm the planning director here for the County of Ventura. And we are pleased to be here today to present our work product to date on the program, the General Plan Update Work Program that your board authorized on January 27th of this year. So, since that time, we have retained through the RFP process our consultants, Mentor Harnish. They are here with us today to share the information on this workshop relating to the basics of a general plan, the work program, project overview, and evaluation of our existing general plan, a discussion on general plan best practices and innovations, and a recommendation for the work program, including several options for your board to consider and your planning commission to consider. So, to present this information, I'd like to introduce Jim Harnish, a principal with Mentor Harnish, and a owner of the firm, and Ted Holzum, who's also a principal planner with the firm. Both Jim and Ted have done an admirable job in a very tight and short deadline. And I would like to thank them for all of the work that they've done to engaging the community and to really listening and incorporating all the comments that they've heard from your planning commission, your board, from the community, and from our stakeholders into this comprehensive report that you're about to hear. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce Ted and Jim to make the presentation.
Thank you, Kim.
If I might ask a question to start out. Would you prefer, as you work through this presentation, if there are questions that we should invite them to ask questions at that time, or any of us? Or would you prefer to go through your presentation and then...
Feel free to ask questions at any time.
As you move through it? Okay, thank you.
And since I haven't memorized the PowerPoint, I hope we can get it back up. I was warned about this, the idiosyncrasies of this. And I told Chris that if a problem could be had by one of these, I would have it. So, I'll try to be careful. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for having us here. My name is Jim Harnish. I'm, as Kim said, the principal and owner of Ventura Harnish. I've been a planner for far too long and specialized mostly in general plans as a consultant, although I've been a planning director for several cities. I enjoy, have enjoyed that too. With me is Ted Holzum, our principal planner. Ted has been a planner since about 2000, 12 years. He has worked on more general plans than I have, actually, in that period of time. And has actively involved statewide efforts, both from a planning perspective and working with APA. And he's really a remarkable planner. So, Ted and I are going to share the presentation. We're going to be up and down two or three times. That's the way we divided it up. This will be roughly an hour presentation. If I see somebody going like this, we'll speed it up a little bit. And if it's like slowed down, we'll do that, we can do that. So, great. Get my touch here. There we go. So, the overview of the session, we've just done the introductions. And there are five basic parts of our presentation. I'm going to talk a little bit just about general plan basics, just to kind of set the scene for the general plan. Ted is then going to give an overview of what we're up to on this work. Not the general plan update, but this effort to develop a general plan update program. Third, I'm going to talk about my observation, our observations, about your current general plan and what some of the deficiencies might be that could be corrected through an update, whether the update is comprehensive or technical. And we'll talk about that much later in the options. And then Ted's going to provide you some examples, talk about what is going on in other communities, particularly other counties, talk about best practices to kind of give you an idea and a perspective on the issues that we've raised in terms of possibilities for updating your general plan. And then finally, we'll get to the heart of the reason for this study session, and that is our recommendations for a general plan update work program and budget for you to consider. And we have options in there as well that we can talk about. So, it's a very broad, very somewhat dense discussion, but it's necessary. This is a very big, complicated project, and there are a lot of moving parts. And so, it's important to make sure that you have a good understanding of everything that could go on with the general plan update. So, general plan basics. Every city and county in California has been required to have a general plan since the 1970s. State Office of Planning Research provide, periodically publishes guidelines that provide direction on what the statutes say the general plan should have. Those, incidentally, have been in process of being updated for three or four years now. We're all anxiously awaiting to see how they come out. They will be dealing with some of the contemporary issues that we're talking, we'll be talking about later, but as of yet, they don't, aren't here yet. General plan really is your constitution for growth and resource management in the county. There are some basic general plan requirements. You have to address a certain number of topics that we'll talk about in a minute. Every general plan has to have goals, policies, and implementation programs, has to have a land use and circulation diagram or map, and has to be internally consistent. So, there's some just basic pieces of a general plan. General plans need to be comprehensive and long-term. In other words, you don't want to prepare a general plan like you might prepare a specific plan that has a much shorter timeframe. And then, once the plan's prepared, all of your actions that are relevant to the general plan have to be consistent with the general plan and in the implementation measures as well. This is, Larry Mentor's my favorite description of a general plan. We've been using it for 30 years, talking about the general plan. I like to refer to the general plan as the alpha dog of planning because there isn't anything more important in planning than the general plan. And most everything you do from development and resource preservation flow from the general plan, your goals, your policies, and the implementation programs. In your case, your area plans are really part of your general plan, and we'll talk in more detail about that as well. And then, a master plan, specific plans, all have to be consistent. And then, of course, your zoning subdivision ordinance. So, the importance of having a current general plan, the plan really should represent the current aspirations and views of the community. It should guide your long-term growth and, in cases of counties, resource management and preservation. And you'll hear me say that and Ted say that throughout. The distinctive difference between a city general plan and a county general plan is that the emphasis on city general plans is on development and growth. Emphasis on county general plans is on resource management and preservation. Now, you do accommodate growth, but that's not necessarily the primary focus of county general plans. And then, the general plan should be...
Excuse me, I'm just going to ask you to repeat that. So, the focus of city general plans is more on growth, county general plans is more on preservation of resources?
Preservation of resources. That's right. There are development and growth elements of a general plan, but it's secondary to the preservation and management. And then, of course, the general plan should address contemporary issues that are important to the community. So, every general plan has to address seven specific topics, land use, circulation, conservation, open space, housing, noise, and safety. But you can address them in any fashion that you want. And many, many communities have taken those seven topics and organized them in a way that best suits that community, and that's what you've done here. And so, those seven topics are addressed under your four categories of resources, hazards, land use, and public facilities and services. So, your goals, policies, and implementation documented is organized that way, as is your technical appendices, which provides the background information and support. And in some cases, the technical information that's required by the general plan, general plan law. And then, the third part of your general plan are your 10 area plans. They are a part of, not just consistent with, but part of your general plan. That's the way you've adopted them. And just a note, I'm sure you all know, but this is maybe more for the audience, that the county general plan only addresses land use and growth in incorporated areas. It doesn't address growth, change, zoning, or anything else within the 10 incorporated cities. And this is just a map of your...
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So, there are seven elements of a general plan that you have to have state law. And we have four, but we've incorporated those seven in those four. Could you tell me how we've done that? For example, where's the noise element?
The noise element's in the hazards, in the hazards chapter, it would be.
And the housing is in...
I think it's organized under land use, but I'm not sure.
And circulation and open space? I just...
Resources. In the resources.
Circulation's in the land use one? Sorry?
No, that's in public facilities and services.
It's in public facilities. Okay. It's a little different than what I'm used to seeing, so...
It's not unusual. I mean, most of the plans we work on, we recommend following that, the guidelines format. We think it's cleaner, and frankly, we're just used to it. But there are good reasons in some communities to reorganize it under categories that may be more traditional issue areas that the jurisdiction feels like you want to address those in that grouping.
So, Jim, can I follow up with that?
Sure.
So, you have, for example, in our general plan, we have number three, land use. And then, in existing land uses. In our plan, we only have seven, five compared to seven? Is that because they're integrated within some of those?
Yes.
Ah, okay. So, we're not missing anything, we're just combining?
No, the general plan guidelines say, here's the, kind of the approach that the state law has outlined. But the state law doesn't require you to have those seven elements. It says you have to address all of the things under each, listed under each of those elements. But you have the flexibility of addressing them however you choose, just so long as they're all addressed.
So, we're not missing anything because we show five? Okay.
No, no, you're good that way. So, why update the general plan? Some might consider it a simple question, but I'm going to go through our thoughts. Your plan was last comprehensively updated almost 30 years ago. In 10 years ago, you did a technical update. And we're going to talk about this later, so I'll just explain what we see as the difference between comprehensive and technical update. The comprehensive update is when you, there is an element of community outreach, where you spend time talking to the community and getting input on what the issues and opportunities and assets are in the community. And at periods of time, go back to the community with, say, draft goals or a vision and get their input before you make a decision, the planning commission make a recommendation, board make a decision about that particular aspect of the general plan. So, there's a big outreach component. And then also, there is our components, the visioning component I mentioned. And then, we'll talk about land use alternative evaluation as well. So, you didn't do any of those things in your technical update of '05. But what you did do is cover all the bases, so that you covered all of the requirements in state law. State law doesn't say you have to have a citizens advisory committee or a big outreach program. It does say that the planning commission and the city council, or Board of Supervisors have to hold public hearings and enable the public to come and testify on the plan. But you don't have to make any special effort beyond that. So, that's a technical update. Oh, and then the housing element was, your housing element was adopted in 2013, consistent with the state law. It's been certified before this. If you decide to go through with the general plan update, in all likelihood, that update will come back again for the housing element. So, we think, in our practice and experience, most general plans include a vision for the future. There's a step in the process early on where the community first, and you eventually, talk about what's the overarching vision for the county. And this provides kind of an umbrella for the remaining part of the general plan. It's a, kind of sounding board for the goals and policies that are developed. Are these achieving our vision? Are they consistent with the vision? And so, that happens throughout the process. And it's a really important part of the planning process, in our view. And then, secondly, you need a plan that really is long-range for the next 20 or 25 years. Right now, your plan is out to 2020. So, as you did in '05, you did extend the horizon year for the plan. Again, that was a technical extension. A lot of this happened since then, and you may want to consider a longer timeframe. We've seen some general plans go out 30 or 40 years. So, it is a topic to be discussed once the plan gets going. There've been a lot of state laws passed. You've addressed most of them in your technical update. Some that have come up since then are, would be addressed, especially the SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, has a component of requiring... Groundwater Management Act, has a component of requiring coordination with the general plan and sustainable groundwater management plans. There are other, a number of other laws that don't have specific general plan requirements, but really do affect general plans indirectly, and in some cases, even directly. AB 32, greenhouse gas emission reduction, the sustainable communities planning effort that has gone on throughout the SCAG region and every other metropolitan region in the state, all have influences on general plans. And while the law says, in SB 375, you don't have to change your general plan, most places are to match up with the regional planning efforts. So, that's an issue. Then, a lot of new ideas. Ted will talk a little bit later about the outreach that we did as a part of this program earlier in April. And in our discussions with you and other stakeholders, it's clear that there are a lot of issues floating out there that are commonly addressed as a part of a general plan update. Contemporary planning issues, you've already passed a healthy communities resolution. There is great opportunity to address healthy communities in general plans. Many have healthy community elements that Ted will talk about later. Then, the whole issues of sustainability and resiliency, coming, dealing with the effects of climate change, coming out of the recession, there are all these contemporary topics that the general plan would be a great vehicle for you to address in a comprehensive way, rather than individual pieces. You can bring this all together. And this is a, we just kind of developed a list of what things we observed in our short time here, activities, issues, or initiatives that are going on here, all on kind of separate tracks. Well, a general plan update could be a great forum for bringing a lot of these issues into one place where the, you have consistent, compatible policies that address this really broad range of issues. So, another reason to update the plan. And then, finally, we have a lot of new tools and technology that we can use as a part of a general plan update to make the plan more user-friendly, more accessible, more understandable, more useful. We'll talk about graphics and illustrations in the plan to make, to help people understand the implications of some of the policies or the land uses. We recommend in our work program, and most general plan updates have a general plan website, that is a great communication tool, where it houses all of the work that's been done, all of the meeting notices, so that people can go to one place and find out about the general plan, what's going on. And then, we also talk about web-based general plan at the end of the project, which is a fully searchable general plan, a digital general plan, that is much more flexible and doesn't have to require paper. So, that's just a really quick overview, I think it was quick, of general plan law and the reasons why you would update the general plan. Now, Ted's going to talk a little bit about what we're actually up to in this work program.
Thanks, Jim. Good afternoon. As Jim said, I'm just going to give a quick overview of what this program's about. I'm sure everyone in front of me is aware of it, and you have been reading about it for the past week, if not longer, so maybe more for the audience. We can just explain what it is that we're here to do today and get out of this process that we're undertaking right now. So, what is the work program project? Well, it's first a process to evaluate the existing general plan, and that's been done. Jim and I and our consulting team, as well as county staff, looked through the existing document and compared it to what state law requires, what is being done in contemporary planning practices with other general plans in other counties throughout the state, and critiqued the document. And we included that as an appendix to our report that is being presented today. It's also an exercise to take an initial step in reaching out to the community and to stakeholders within the county, to ask them, what are the issues facing Ventura County right now? What are the opportunities that the county could capitalize on in the future? And what type of assets should the county be focusing on preserving or enhancing as it moves forward into the future? And again, the summary of those outreach efforts are included in the packet of materials. And then, finally, and most importantly, to develop a work program of options that the county could use to conduct a general plan update. And that's really the focus of what we're here to talk about today. What the program is not, is this isn't a general plan update. That's going to come after we complete this initial phase of this effort. So, it's not an update. We're not changing any policies as part of this. We're talking about potential changes to policies or issues to address, but this won't result in any changes to the existing general plan. And it won't change anything dealing with land use or resource protection in the county. So, this is really just an opportunity for us to work out the details of the type of general plan update program that would be best suited to address the issues facing Ventura County. And one other note is related to the local coastal program. The focus of this is, of this work program will be the general plan for the entire county, except for the areas addressed by the local coastal program. That's a separate effort that's been ongoing and will continue, and the focus of the general plan update program itself will focus on everything inland outside of that coastal zone, because the local coastal program is already addressing that separately. So, what types of products have we produced? I mentioned some of those. We have the summary of community priorities. We conducted stakeholder interviews for over four days with over two dozen individuals. We also conducted community workshops in three locations in the county in April. And what we were asking the community members and the stakeholders is, what are the assets that should be preserved? How should we be addressing the issues? And what are those issues? And then, what opportunities are out in the county that we could be capitalizing on through the general plan update? We also produced the options report. And again, this is dealing with, you know, what types of tasks and phases and work products could be produced as part of a general plan update? What specific topics could the general plan include and address? Water is a big issue now. Agriculture is a big issue that's not specifically called out as a separate element in the existing general plan. Sustainability and resiliency, dealing with climate change is a new issue that's emerged since the general plan was last updated. These are all topics or elements that could be incorporated into the existing general plan, and that would be made a part of this work program. And then, finally, what are the roles and responsibilities that county staff will take or that the county will need to hire technical consulting services to assist them in the general plan update program? And what are the associated costs with that? And then, most importantly, the general plan is a visionary document. It also involves a lot of community outreach, and there's lots of different options available to the county for how it engages the community in the update process. And the work program options provide an overview of those different options, and they're based on our experience in working with counties and what's most effective in engaging stakeholders and residents within unincorporated areas of counties, as well as the cities as partners to the county. So, this is a diagram of our schedule that we're currently using for this work program project. As you can see, we've done quite a bit. The dash line box there at the bottom identifies where we are here today, conducting this joint study session. I won't go through all of the specific details of where we've been, but a lot of that dealt with working with staff to evaluate the plan, conduct community outreach, develop the draft options report, and bring it before you here today. Moving forward, we'll be refining the work program based on the direction we received today or at a subsequent meeting, and then, bringing that back to the Board of Supervisors for confirmation before moving forward with a general plan update, if that's the direction of the board. So, that's my brief overview of our work program project. Hopefully, Jim's had a chance to catch his breath because he's back up again.
Were there any questions about what we're doing and what our objectives are?
One question. So, you said the LCP is not part of the general plan?
Pardon?
The LCP is not part of-
That's correct.
Okay. How do you incorporate that, or what happens? Is that just a separate document?
Yeah, most places leave it, most communities leave it a separate document. In our experience, most of the coastal commissions really don't like integrated LCPs with the general plan.
With the general plan.
And it can be more challenging. I have limited experience with it, but in general, it's typical that it's kept as a separate document.
Just a different document?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, the, one of the first things we did when we started this project is took a really close look at your general plan, and I've kind of summarized this already. Adopted in '88, initially, updated 2005, has three basic components. And we read through the entire general plan, and then selective, selectively read through in detail some of the area plans, and then skimmed all the rest. So, our focus, though, is on the goals, policies, and implementation programs, because the technical appendices are what they are. I read them. There's not a lot of discussion of them, but I can tell you that 10 years old, there are a lot of things that are out of date, and whether you do a technical update or a comprehensive update, it is time to go back and look at the technical aspects of the general plan. So, there are, I think, we've raised eight or nine points about your general plan. It is technically consistent with state law. You've, your staff has made sure that it is on the earlier updates and the technical update to the address of state law that was required to address at the time. There are a lot of laws, I mentioned earlier, a couple, that really directly affect general plan updates. So, when you get ready to do the general plan update, it's going to be really difficult to avoid dealing with AB 32 and SB 375. And AB 32 comes to the general plan through the SECO analysis. And essentially, the EIR will look at the general plan to determine how it contributes to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And if it doesn't do a good enough job, then the EIR will recommend additional policies or programs to get those emissions down. Our view is, if you're going to do the general plan, you might as well take that issue on directly and deal with it upfront on the policy development. In SB 375, there are really advantages to communities to have their plans consistent with the sustainable communities strategy. I haven't looked enough at that as a part of this work to tell you whether or not your plan is consistent with it or not. That would take a little bit different effort, but it would be a logical result of any general plan update. Your current plan doesn't address any of these contemporary planning issues that we've been talking about. It's not a surprise, because many of them have really come to the forefront in the last 10 years. A few not so much, but sustainable, sustainability, healthy communities, adaptation and sea level rise, dealing with those issues. It's not required by state law, but you really ought to do it if you're going to update your general plan, because it is key to your long-range growth and resource preservation.
Also, when you were talking about SB 375, and that's to reduce greenhouse gas emissions using land use and transportation, right?
That's correct.
And the slide where you talk about contemporary planning issues, a big one right now is active transportation? You know, looking at cycling, looking at pedestrian, just ways to get people into non-motorized active transportation, and that goes back to the healthy communities and all that. So, I think that would be another one of those planning issues. You look at the Southern California Association of Governments, and they have, you know, considerable grant funds for that. Proposition 1's got all the grant funds for active transportation, so to me, that's something else that we should be looking at, too.
Active transportation, complete streets is an important component of that, too. So, yeah, that's a very good point. So, contemporary planning issues. I've talked, mentioned the vision, a visioning process wasn't part of your original general plan update, that I could tell, in '88, and it was not part of your technical update. And this is, this will be a part, a discussion that you'll want to have today about the level of visioning that you want to do in this update, if any. But it does, that's kind of the focus for getting the plan started and developing the big ideas and the guiding policies for the general plan that carry through. If you do an alternatives analysis, typically, alternatives all have to be consistent with guiding principles and vision. So, you don't do, you don't come up with an alternative that falls outside what your broad expectations are for the community.
If I may, sorry, but to me, we do have a major vision of Ventura County. It's unlike all the other counties of the state of California, really, which is you build in the cities and you leave the unincorporated area and develop, you know, the whole guidelines for orderly development. Wouldn't that be considered the visions and the, that's how I see it.
The guidelines for orderly development could be considered a vision. It isn't necessarily the, kind of the lead-in for the general plan that guides all of the, at the beginning of the plan and kind of, is an organizing principle for the policies. At least, it's not obviously that way.
Thanks.
From an outsider. Yeah, that, and that's, I'll get to this in a minute. The plan is fairly dense and fairly technical, and so, it doesn't present itself well. It's hard to read. It was hard for me, who I read a lot of general plans, to get through the details. So, individuals are interested in looking for something and trying to make sense of the county's policies will have to work really hard to find what they're looking for in the plan. When that plan was produced initially in 1988, it was just like, really similar to plans that Laurie and I were producing back in the 80s, because we didn't have color copiers there then. There wasn't really much use of color. Frankly, it looked like the plans that I'd worked on 25 or 30 years ago. So, it's not that it was a bad plan. It just hasn't kept up with what our technology and our abilities to communicate better. We've got a lot better communication tools now to make the ideas and policies and principles clearer and understandable, so.
Excuse me?
Yes.
If we go with a paperless general plan, would we be able legally to keep adjusting that to new formats as technology changes?
Adjusting it to new formats in terms of-
Color, graphics, I don't know. Maybe they're going to become three-dimensional general plans. I don't know, but, you know, over 25 or 30 years. Are you legally allowed to do that? It would be one of the advantages of going with a paperless general plan.
Well, it's slightly new territory, and I don't have an absolute clear answer for that. The, I think in all likelihood, you'll still have to have a few paper copies laying around in the library or at your front counter, because state law requires that you have plans available to folks, and if they don't have access to a computer, then you may be required to have an unlimited number of paper copies. That's my guess, and that would be my advice right now. And then, another couple of comments. We, and I'll show you an example of a user guide. More and more, the plans are really focused on helping people guide their way through the general plan and understand the inner workings of the plan. This is just a comparative example of a page out of the Ventura County plan, and then, a page out of a more contemporary plan. Uses some color, takes labels, gives titles to all the policies. So, you can scan down, and you can see what the topic of the policy is without reading it. Has a uniform numbering system. And then, we haven't really gone into much detail about this, but the, most plans now have an implementation method for each policy, not necessarily a program. You don't have to have a program to implement each policy, but a method. And they, this, these letters say RDR, that's, it's the Development Review Process. So, some policies that you have are implemented through the review of development applications. Well, the plans that we do tag every policy, so that it's clear what the expectation is for implementation. I talked about a reader's guide that kind of points out what the different pieces of goal and policy introduction is, and what the intent of that is. We have, oftentimes, we'll use several different kinds of reader guides, illustrations, pictures better than at least 10 or 15 words. And then, this is getting a little bit into the planner weeds on the general plan, but as I mentioned before, some of the technical appendices are out of date. In many cases, there's no link between a policy and a program, and typically, the hierarchy in a general plan is you have a goal, you have several policies that implement that goal, and then, under the- that goal, and then under the policies, you have programs that implement some of the policies. And my read of the general plan is that there is many times, some really good, some good policies and some good programs, but there isn't the link between the two. They're kind of separate. And you may want to just take a look back, I think I, in the general plan evaluation, we described some of that, but you may want to look at that yourself to get a feel for it. And then, from a technical writing standpoint, we and most of our colleagues make an effort to clearly write, when we're writing a policy, it's policy language and program, it's program language. And in many cases, it switches back and forth in, in your plan. So, just a drafting, approach to drafting. Implementation programs, there are plenty of implementation programs in there, but, but most of them don't describe the responsible agency or department for, who's responsible for implementing it, doesn't describe the timing for it, doesn't describe the funding source, how are you going to pay for that implementation? And in some cases, implementation is a responsibility of an outside agency like the ACD, APCD, Air Pollution Control District, and your county plan can't tell them what to do. You can coordinate with them, but you can't give them assignments from the general plan. And then, in the area plans, what, what we discovered is there are, there's way too many goals and policies in there. Our approach to the area plans is you have goals and policies for that area only and don't have county-wide policies, but there are a lot of those in your area plans, and they should be stripped out. Right now, there is different language, so there is like a county-wide policy addressing inequality in one community plan, but the general plan states that policy differently. So, there's some subtle inconsistencies there, but that's a, really a cleanup item. Here's an example of an implementation program, has the implementation measure, what policies it implements, what the responsible departments are, what the supporting departments are, and then a timing on when that should be implemented. And this gets connected to your annual report that Kim provides you, that gives a progress on what you're, what you're doing. This is a, set up properly, this is a great tool for your annual report. So, summarizing, why update the general plan? It's an aging plan, there are new state laws that really it should address, changing challenges, new contemporary issues, and county-wide initiatives and priorities, all are really good reasons to take a look at the general plan now. It's a really good timing. So, with that, Ted's going to talk a little bit about best practices and give you some examples of plans that we've worked on and other folks have worked on to kind of talk about what the range of possibilities are. Unless you have any questions about the general plan, unless you have any questions about the general plan evaluation? Okay.
Seems to me like we need a lot of work. It's really, we need a comprehensive.
I think so.
After all, the presentation. So, they're not consistent, you know, and the policies in the general plan and so forth.
Well, that consistency issue is fairly minor. I mean, it's not, it's not endemic throughout all of them. I just was, as reading through, I had noticed that there was, and you know, and you have to be precise with the general plan, and if you're using one word and one policy and a different word that's supposedly the same policy in the general plan, then you do have an inconsistency.
Yeah.
So, it's just, it's a lot, that's a lot of cleanup. Your area plans really are a lot of cleanup, and we do, we'll talk about a comprehensive update, but at the minimum, you probably need to just do a housekeeping with them. The SADCOY plan that you're just finishing up is a great example of.
The SADCOY plan, yeah.
A good area plan, they have stripped out those non-community-specific policies, so it's, it really falls in line with what we think are really good.
So, the SADCOY plan's a good model for that?
Pardon?
The SADCOY plan's a good model for?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to spend that much money on your community plans, it's.
Yeah. What was it, six hundred thousand or so?
So, I'm just going to review some of the optional elements and topics that we suggest that the county consider as part of its general plan update. Talk a little bit about the options available for organizing the general plan, the structure of the, the elements and the various components of the plan, including the community plans, provide some examples of best practices that are being used in general plans today, and then talk about some of our best practices for the general plan update process from a community engagement standpoint, as well as the other management and process-related aspects of the general plan update. So, as Jim mentioned, there are seven elements of the general plan that have to be addressed. The county has its discretion in how it addresses those topics. It can include as many or as few elements as it desires, but it does have to address those specific topics. But there are a whole number of different types of optional elements and topics that general plans include. And every few years, the California Office of Planning and Research conducts a survey of cities and counties throughout the state. The last one was done in twenty-twelve, and I just went to that document and pulled out some of the statistics related to optional elements. And if you take all the cities and counties in California and those that responded to the survey, there's over forty different types of topics or elements included in general plans that aren't the seven mandated elements. So, these are elements that these cities and counties have identified as being important to them, to the point that they feel that it's necessary to raise them to the level of highlighting them in their general plan as a specific topic or element within the So, when we looked at the county's general plan and we got a feeling for what the key issues were here based on the stakeholder outreach and the community outreach that we conducted, we identified a few topics that we felt the county should consider as optional elements or topics addressed in the general plan, depending on how the document gets organized. The first was agriculture. Obviously, agriculture is a major part of the unincorporated county as well as the incorporated areas. Agriculture is really part of the identity of Ventura County. So, we felt that this was a worthy topic or element for the county to consider as part of its general plan update. You can see here that over half the counties in California do have agriculture elements within their general plans. Ventura County doesn't have a specific element called out. Agriculture is addressed in the resources and the land use chapters, but we feel that it is an important topic to include and highlight specifically. So, what type of topics would be addressed in this? Well, in addition to all the background and existing conditions data that would be gathered related to agriculture, both as a resource, as an economic driver, and other types of factors, these are the kind of goal statements or policy issue areas that would typically be addressed in an agricultural element. And these are based on, we've produced agricultural elements in other communities, most recently in Merced County, and this reflects some of the topics that we addressed in, in that element.
Could I ask a question?
Of course.
Currently, our general plan, I mean, one of, two of the elements that our state required are open space and conservation. As I understand, open space and conservation are in the resources portion of the general plan. So, currently, is that where agriculture is also? Policies, programs related to agriculture, is that where you would find them?
In the resources chapter?
Right.
And, yes, and it would also be addressed in land use from a, a land use standpoint of development and what occurs on agricultural lands. For example, the land use designations on the land use diagram, agricultural areas that are designated throughout the county.
The map.
Right.
The map.
In the land use element.
But also, I'm just wondering if that's where we currently have issues regarding conservation of agriculture, conservation of open space? Okay, that's where it is.
Right, yes.
So, you're suggesting pull it out of there and make it its own element?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another topic that we would suggest you consider as a optional element in the general plan is a water element. Water is obviously an extremely important issue throughout the state right now with the ongoing drought. But more recently, with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and the county's reliance in a lot of cases on groundwater and the use of groundwater in the county, we believe that this is an issue that should be brought up to a higher level and highlighted in the county's general plan. Topics for addressing water are listed here, obviously, they deal with where water's coming from and how reliable those sources are for serving not only urban uses, but also agricultural and open space or habitat users of water, reuse and conservation of water by the end users, the quality of water, wastewater and its effect on groundwater resources and surface water resources, watershed management, coordinating with other agencies, special districts in particular, and how water is being used and conserved and maintained quality. And then, public education and awareness is becoming more and more important as we deal with the drought and working with community members and businesses and farmers to help conserve water and use water more efficiently.
So, Ted, you think that ultimately, that seventy-four is going to be much higher once we, people start working on their elements because of the drought?
I'm sorry?
You think that seventy-four is going to be higher as time progresses?
I, I think so, yeah. And again, this, this was done in twenty-twelve, the survey, so.
We have plenty of water then?
Well, yeah, yes and no. I think that these issues, I think in the last three years, though, as general plan updates have been prepared, there's probably been some additional water elements included in those, so that's probably a little bit higher.
Probably less than or increase, the yeses are probably going to increase.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so. One of the important aspects of this, though, is the level of analysis that goes into evaluating what the water issues are. The approach that we've put forward here isn't the, isn't the most robust approach to dealing with this. It would include all of the analysis based on research that's been conducted so far and research that would be ongoing along with the general plan update by other agencies, the water districts, as they implement the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. But it would address and incorporate all the goals and policies, provide the direction for the county to move forward with how it addresses water across this range of issues. So, it's, it's not intended to be a extremely detailed assessment of, for example, the groundwater table in the county. The county, we aren't suggesting that the county do that as part of this. There'll be a lot of other ongoing efforts that we would coordinate with, or the county would coordinate with as part of the update process to inform what goes into this element. Third topic is healthy communities. The first two elements, agriculture and water, we're suggesting that be highlighted as a specific element of the general plan. Healthy communities is a topic that we would recommend being addressed and included in the general plan, but more from a thematic standpoint. The issues addressed that you see here, active lifestyles, access to affordable foods, exposure to pollution, these are all topics that get covered in all of the other types of elements that are typically included in a general plan, the other seven mandated elements. Active lifestyles, that's a land use issue, where people are located and proximity to services. What type of transportation infrastructure, which is covered in the circulation element, are provided to individuals to help them ride their bike more, walk more, promote an active lifestyle? Access to open space, parks, things of that nature to promote an active lifestyle. All of these are already covered in the topics that are within what, the seven mandated elements. And so, from a organizational standpoint, we feel that it's an important topic to address, but we think that it's best addressed across the elements that would be included in the general plan, the seven mandated elements. So, there are several ongoing efforts already here in the county, and we just highlighted a few of those graphically there. So, this is an issue that is important to, to folks here in the county, and we've found that in the most recent general plan updates that we're doing in cities and counties, this is an issue that is being addressed. And so, it's, it's becoming more and more important. And from a planner standpoint, in trying to convey to residents and communities about what planning is and how this affects their life, health is one of the most easy ways for us to communicate to them, how land use can affect their day-to-day life, how living near services, having access to parks, having access to facilities that help them exercise more and be more active. Those are ways that we can help communicate good planning practices, and one of the best ways to do that is through healthy, healthy communities planning efforts.
I'd also throw in like farm-to-fort kind of things, with the fact that we do have local agriculture right at our doorstep.
The next topic is sustainability and resiliency. This is basically dealing with climate change, addressing greenhouse gas reductions, climate change adaptation. This is another element that we would suggest be addressed in the general plan across the various elements versus a standalone element. When we think about the different ways that we reduce greenhouse gas emissions, those often deal with smart growth, reducing vehicle miles traveled, those are things that are addressed in the land use element and the transportation element, energy efficiency, that's dealt with in the conservation element, water conservation, conservation element, or in this case, it could be within the water element, and waste reduction and recycling, again, that's a conservation element issue. So, there are a lot of different ways to promote sustainability and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, as well as adapt to climate change, which would be within the safety element primarily and the land use element. Again, it's much easier to address these within the existing seven-element framework of a general plan versus having a standalone element, which could cause redundancy among those other elements. And again, these topics that we've been talking about, there's a lot of crossover with healthy communities as well. And so, having them addressed in that existing structure makes a lot of sense.
And Ted, although this is probably more part of the LCP discussion and coastal impacts from the Coastal Commission, the sea level rise document that's just been released for draft and for comment will be a piece of information that may, may be integrated in some of this.
Yes. And the, in twenty-twelve, I thought it was really interesting that, you know, over, roughly eighty percent of the jurisdictions in California were addressing climate change in some fashion, whether it was through their general plan or a climate action plan or other type of sustainability action plan. Within that statistic of the eighty percent, over half of them were addressing it in their general plan. And so, the general plan is being used as a venue to address climate change. Now, how that's done is, it's done in different ways, depending on the community you go to. One of the things that, one of the approaches that we've been recommending and using in our recent general plan updates is to use the general plan as the community's or jurisdiction's climate action plan. And when they updated the CQ guidelines a couple of years ago to address climate change, they provided provisions for how a city or county could do this, how they could create what's called a qualified plan for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And some of the benefits that come along with this are CQ streamlining for subsequent projects that are consistent with that plan. So, in our minds, it was logical to use the general plan, which is a development review document, and consistencies and findings are made for projects when they come before you for a decision. If the general plan is the climate action plan, then that consistency finding would cover both, and you would have, you would have streamlining benefits for that project. It saves costs and it saves times, not only for the applicant, but also for the county staff who have to review the document. So, how does this get done? There's a lot of detail up here, but essentially, what this shows is the way that we're doing this in general plans. There's a lot of background information and analysis that goes into a climate action plan. Typically, that would be included in the existing setting section of a general plan or the background report. There's measures and actions that are included in a climate action plan, those are converted into goals, policies, and implementation programs. There's a monitoring aspect of a climate action plan to check back on progress. The general plan, law requires that the county review and report on implementation of the general plan annually. So, there's a correspondence there that makes the general plan a perfect vehicle for addressing climate change and using the general plan as the action plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. One of the other aspects of this is adaptation to the impacts of climate change. One of the core reasons that we have planning is to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. And one of the, one of the most critical issues that we'll be facing in the, in the future, and especially the longer-term future, is health impacts, safety impacts that are caused by climate change. And so, in my mind, it makes perfect sense that the general plan be a vehicle to provide some long-term solutions or strategies to help start addressing some of those implications. Again, that's typically part of a climate action plan, and it fits well within the framework of the general plan. of the general plan. So the last optional element that we suggested the county consider is an economic development element. There's a lot more cities that have economic development elements compared to counties, but there are counties that do have them. Nearly half of the counties in California have an economic development element. We would suggest this be included as a standalone topic or element within the general plan. It doesn't really fit within those seven required elements. There's definitely flavors of land use when we start talking about promoting jobs and providing locations for jobs. But really, economic development is its own issue or its own topic that is typically dealt with as a standalone topic. Here's the typical types of issues or policy areas that economic development elements include for counties. We included this because during the outreach effort, there were some key issues that were brought up as being really important to residents and stakeholders, and it dealt with providing more jobs to the community, providing living wages, supporting local businesses, and making sure that there are sufficient revenues coming in to the public agencies that are providing services, which is typically a component of economic development and economic growth. One of the other things that we saw as being important in all of this is the issue of the jobs housing balance here or imbalance that occurs where you have such a large out commute of residents to work in other regions. If there were additional jobs here, that could help address part of that issue. Those are the types of issues that are typically dealt with in an economic development element, how it can be a vehicle to address some of those issues.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes.
I very much appreciate, those are the kinds of things that are dealt with in an economic development, part of a general plan. But of the counties, you say less than half the counties have economic development as part of their general plans. And do you know how many of those counties have policies similar to the Guidelines for Orderly Development also, where they're trying to, where they specifically say they want urban development to take place in existing urban areas? Do those counties have economic development plans also?
Some of them do. San Joaquin County, where we're completing a general plan update right now, they have a longstanding policy to direct all urban growth to the incorporated cities, and they've done that. They now have an economic development element. But I'll tell you through that process, there, we found that there was this conflict between protecting agricultural land and open space lands and promoting economic development and providing places for jobs. There's definitely a balance that has to be found if those are both our priorities for a county, because you can't protect all the ag land and provide places for jobs without giving up something along the lines. And where that occurs is one of the most important decisions that gets made.
And economic development consistent with, I mean, consistent with the Guidelines for Orderly Development, that say that kind of urban development should take place in cities and not out in the unincorporated area?
And that could very well be the direction that this takes. I mean, that is a solution.
If it takes that direction, then is there a role for an economic development element?
Maybe. I couldn't give you a yes or no right now.
Great. Thank you.
So those are the, before I move on to the structure, are there any other questions about some of those optional elements or other ideas for other topics that you think maybe we didn't include that could be considered as part of the update? Just wanted to... Okay? So general plan structure typically from a paper document format of a general plan, there's two ways that we see general plans organized. One is as a single document. Yours is sort of organized that way in that it has the goals, policies, and programs, and then appendices, if you think of that as being one document. But it's kind of in between the second, the first option, the second, which is a two-part general plan, where you have all of the background report information. So all the existing settings information, all the data that's collected as part of the update program in one volume. And in a second volume, you have all of the goals, policies, and implementation programs of the general plan. We recommend the two-part structure. It's what we use in most, nearly all of our general plan updates unless it's desired to do it another way. And we have a couple of reasons why we like that. First is that we think it's really efficient to keep all of that existing setting information separate from the goals and policies. After two, three, four, five years, that existing conditions information starts to get dated. And if you're a planner at the counter or you're someone interested in what's in the general plan policy related to a certain topic, and you're looking for a policy, sifting through all of that background information can be tedious and time-consuming. Having them separate provides a lot of efficiencies. It can also, during the process, double, the background report itself can double as the existing setting section of the environmental impact report. So as we go through the general plan, or as a general plan update process proceeds, one of the first steps is to create this background report and conduct all of that background research. By doing that, a lot of the issues, a lot of the environmental issues start to rise to the surface early on in the process. And then as the process proceeds, we can start to develop policies and programs to address those issues. So that by the time you get to the environmental review process, the general plan can already include most of the goals and policies because you've done all of that existing settings research. And then when the EIR is prepared, you don't have to go back through the whole process of gathering all that background information again. So we think that it's a very efficient way to conduct the update process, and it has a lot of other benefits as the general plan is implemented over time. So how could we apply this to the county's general plan? I just threw together this graphic. This is just one way that I thought we could talk about this organizational structure. We thought of the county's general plan as a single document, and it had two volumes. One was the policy document, the second the background report. In the policy document, all that would include are the introduction and possibly the vision for the general plan, all the goals and policies structured within the elemental structure that was selected by the county, and then an implementation program that included all of the actions the county would take to implement the plan. Now, within both of those, we have these area plans, the ten area plans, and we don't know exactly how that would be addressed. They could find their way within the background report and the general plan as a part of those, or they could be freestanding documents. The important thing, though, is that they are all still part of the general plan. It's just a matter of how they're formatted and which volumes are where on the shelf when you put the whole thing together. And again, having the background report double as the existing setting section of the environmental impact report is another way to gather, take advantage of some efficiencies for the update process.
I really like the idea of making it user-friendly and easy to understand and well-organized and all that. Do you think that we should revisit the, how we have the elements combined so we, people know how to find stuff about the noise element, for example?
Yes. Yeah. I think, as Jim said, we would recommend a structure that's more in line with what's recommended in state law of having the seven elements or some variation of that. We typically include a land use element and transportation or what we're calling now a mobility element because we're not just talking about cars and trucks. We're talking about people on bikes and transit and walking. Housing, obviously. Open space and conservation, we've often combined into just a single resources element.
Which could be agriculture, too.
Yeah, and that could include agriculture and water. Then safety, hazards and safety is typically, and we combine that with noise. Oftentimes, or in a lot of cases, we include a public facilities and services element because of the issues around provision of infrastructure, especially so for cities. So I think through your, but I think through the general plan update process and working with staff, you would be able to define what those topics are. And I think that's an important part of the process. It's important to define what those issues are and then to develop what that outline for the general plan is and how you're going to put all the different goals and policies into that structure.
So potentially then, resources could be open space, conservation, which you have to have, and then you could add agriculture and water, and that all be...
It could be, yeah.
Resource management.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Could be.
One quick question for you. Is the two-part general plan structure a more efficient structure in terms of actually doing the work? In other words, can you do things in parallel better with this structure in terms of saving time and...
Yeah, I think it provides a logical order for the update process because you start with that background report right at the beginning, and then you understand what all the issues are. You understand the regulatory framework within which you're working, and then, right. And so when we talk about different types of structural options, we've already, questions have been asked about a web-based general plan. This is the new frontier of planning documents and conveying the general plan to the public, presenting it to the public, and also to maintaining the document and making it user-friendly. This is the Hayward general plan update that we just completed, and this is a draft version of their web-based general plan that we're currently working on. It's not available for public consumption quite yet. It'll be available in the next couple of months, but we have the basic framework put together, and you can see that here. What we found and what we're suggesting to most of our clients is that they think about converting their general plan into a web-based plan after the document is adopted. There was a question asked about whether we need to have a paper document, if you have to have one, and as Jim said, yes, we do have to have a paper document available. That's state law. But that can just be a printout of the general plan from the website, or it can just be a very basic Word document that covers all of the pieces that are within the general plan on the website, but that could be printed and turned over to someone if they requested it. But some of the reasons that we promote the use of a website for the general plan, one is for its accessibility. Almost everyone has access to the internet. Most people are comfortable with it and use it frequently. It's a lot easier to go onto a website and navigate through it to get familiar with something or find what you're looking for versus a hard copy document or a PDF that's posted online that you have to download and flip through.
And Jim, that's the future anyway, right?
It is, yeah.
We're going to be going that direction, so...
Yes.
Because the younger population probably won't know how to look into a book anyway.
I stopped reading books three years ago. Everything's on my iPad now. The second is that it's searchable. We think that from a, both a resident's standpoint, a developer or an applicant's standpoint, or staff's standpoint, having the document online, finding things quickly through keyword searches, topical searches, and various other types of search functions is a very effective way to organize the document and makes it very user-friendly. It's also trackable. One of the key features of the Hayward plan, and I'll talk of this in a little more detail, is that staff is going to be using it as a mechanism to track responsibilities for implementing all the programs and for reporting out where they are in the implementation process. And it's all publicly available, so if there's ever a question about the status of any given implementation program, it's posted there on the website. And then finally, from a maintenance standpoint, having the document online makes it very simple and easy to update. As general plan amendments occur, as things happen within the county, one of the features in this general plan is that when you go to a policy, if a project has occurred within the city of Hayward that is associated with implementing that policy, they'll be able to link a picture of that to the policy so that people can see what they intended to have happen as a result of implementing the general plan. So it has a lot of possibilities for conveying information and maintaining the document, and we think it is the way of the future for planning documents. And we highly recommend that the county consider this as part of the update process. So I'm just going to go through some examples and features of some general plans that have been prepared recently. Are there any questions about the structure before I move on? So I have three or four examples. The first is Merced County. This is a plan that we prepared, was adopted a couple of years ago. This was a plan that used that two-part general plan approach. It was not put online, so it is a hard copy document, but it includes a background report and a policy document. There were community plans within Merced County. Those were maintained, but we created a structure or a framework so that those documents, while they're not physically within the general plan, have a place and they're called out so that they're very easy to reference if any questions come up about properties within those community plan boundaries. If someone was looking at the general plan, they would quickly know to go to that community plan to find more direction. And this element, this general plan did include the optional elements for agriculture and water. And those outlines that I included or reviewed a few slides ago, those are some of the same topics that were addressed in these two elements from Merced.
Are those the only two optional elements they included? Agriculture and water?
It also included economic development.
So they had three in their plan. Thank you. Let me ask you a quick question here.
You keep talking about different things. We talked about land use. Where do you have petroleum, since we're a large petroleum producer? How do you put that in as part of that economic piece?
Petroleum?
Yeah, oil.
That would probably find its way into the land use element from where the locations of where those are occurring and the types of uses that would be allowed near those types of facilities or near those types of resources, as well as in the conservation element because it is an energy resource. And so it would probably be dealt with there from a resource conservation issue area. The next element is the Sacramento general plan. This is another plan that we prepared. One of the unique features of this that may or may not work for the county, this might be something that's more appropriate for the community plans, is the combination of urban form with land use. So in general, in the Sacramento general plan, rather than just thinking of land use on a horizontal landscape, so just colors on a map flat, we thought about what the buildings would look like and provided direction for how many stories different buildings should be, how far away from the streets they should be, really getting at the architecture and urban form of the community as a whole. And we incorporated that into the general plan. It had never really been done before, but it's worked out very successfully, and a lot of investment has occurred within the city because it has this direction and flexibility when it comes to how development occurs related to urban form. This is a plan that actually incorporated the existing community plans. So this, I think, is more applicable to how Ventura could consider updating its general plan. Sacramento had 10 existing community plans. We went through a process of reviewing those, cleaning out all of the policies that were redundant with citywide issues, and incorporating them physically into the general plan. So the Sacramento general plan has an introduction, and it has a separate background report, but the policies has introduction, goals and policies across 10 different elements, community plans, and then the implementation program. And so the whole package, the whole general plan is within one document. The Marin County general plan, this, okay, sorry, I thought I heard a question. Marin County general plan really set the stage for how sustainability and climate change would be addressed in general plans. This was one of the first general plans to address greenhouse gas emissions back in 2007. It's based on the idea of sustainability. One of the other unique features of this is that it does only include three elements. Those are natural systems, the built environment, and socioeconomics. So Marin County chose to address the seven required elements and a lot of other issues that were important within only three elements of their general plan. One of the other unique features of this plan that you may want to consider is the use of benchmarks or indicators as a tracking mechanism for general plan implementation. This is essentially an indicators report. We already read a report that was produced recently on countywide indicators that was focused more on economic development. We thought it was really great here for Ventura County, but that's the type of idea that was incorporated in here, very innovative. But it does require a lot of work to track and monitor all of those different indicators over time. So there's, it has a cost to including that type of feature within the general I mentioned the Hayward general plan, and I talked about their web-based plan. One of the other key features of this that I've already talked about is the Integrated Climate Action Plan. So Hayward's general plan is their climate action plan. They had an existing climate action plan that we incorporated in, and so now everything is housed within the framework of the general plan, and it is their qualified plan for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. So this is an example or best practice of how to address climate change. The City of Ontario's general plan, this is a completely paperless plan. It's all online, and so it was one of the first general plans in the state to do this. One of the other interesting features of this is that it's really used as the guiding document for how the city runs itself. So it's used, and this was, one of the city manager's goals was to have the general plan be the tool that all the different departments within the city use to manage how they conduct their business. And so as part of that, every year as they're doing their budgeting process, they're using the general plan as a tool to do that. And so they've tied this... And so they've tied this into how they run their local government. Very unique and innovative feature to include for a general plan update. The Sunnyvale's general plan was very similar to that, they approached their update to be, to have the general plan be central to how the city conducts its business, and as part of that, one of the implementation features was to create what's called a mid-range strategic plan, basically tied how they conduct their business over the short term with these longer-term goals that are included in the general plan. Similar to the Marin County plan, it included a lot of indicators across different types of topics, one being community indicators, so things that occur outside the community that the city can't control but are useful in informing how the city is doing and implementing its general plan, and then also service-based indicators that are a reflection or looking back on how the city is conducting its own business. So again, using these indicators as a tool to monitor and track implementation progress was a very important part of their update, and it's a key feature here that we thought was a useful consideration. So finally, some best practices for the general plan update process itself. When it comes to staffing, we have several best practices that we've identified over the years and we think are useful to provide for an efficient general plan update. One of the key things is making sure that the leadership here at the county, both from the board's level but also from the executive officer's office, is involved in the update and supportive of the update. And that goes down one level to having staff dedicated to the process, having a staff person acting as a project manager. The general plan update is very involved for staff, whether you have consultants or not as part of the update process, it really does require a full-time position to help keep track of everything, keep all the parts moving, work with the public and all the other types of.
Ted, will that personnel also take care of the website?
At the very end? Possibly, but I don't know if they'd have those skills.
Okay.
I don't even have all the technical skills to do that. But then also hiring consultants is important as well, and there's certain parts of a general plan update that are really so specialized that technical experts are needed, so it's important to identify what those needs are and budget for them and have the right folks involved in the update to help support staff. Another really important part of this is involving all the departments. In a lot of local agencies, the general plan is just viewed as a planning document that doesn't affect other departments and what other departments do. I don't think that's the case here, but it's really important to have a framework set up in the process to have representatives from every department involved in every step of the general plan update process to make sure that all of the issues that need to be addressed are being addressed, and that the people with the most experience here at the county have an opportunity to provide their feedback and input into the process as well as to produce the general plan itself. And then finally, building staff redundancy. You never know what can happen over time, and having folks who can be replaced is very important, or having redundancy in your staff is important to making sure that if something happens and you have to shift folks around within departments, that there's someone there to fill in and carry on, and there's not a big learning curve for a new person to come in. Won't spend a lot of time on the work program because that's what we're here talking about today, and by the time we finish this initial process, you'll have a work program completed for the general plan update that you need along with the schedule. And so preparing a detailed work program at the outset of a general plan update is very important, but we already have that covered here. As far as the schedule goes, keeping the schedule for a general plan update is probably one of the most difficult things to do, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of people involved, and there's a lot of unforeseen issues and conflicts that can come up that require time to address and deal with as part of the general plan update. What we recommend is that the board be involved in the process and the schedule for the general plan update, and that means agreeing to a schedule early on in the process, making sure that there's key points throughout that process for check-ins and produce production of key milestone documents, and then providing regular status updates to the boards so that if there are things happening that are gonna require more time, you're aware of it and that you're on board with providing more time in the process to deal with those issues. But most importantly is, like I said, there will be things that come up in your general plan update, so you have to be flexible with this.
If you want to stay on schedule, can you oftentimes, I know it won't be all the time, but can you oftentimes just make sure you have more resources to be able to stay on schedule?
Yes, that is one of the, one of the easiest ways to stay on schedule is to put more resources into something, either from the staff level or consulting.
So you can do things concurrently, or you run into a problem, you can go after those problems.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, I, we gathered together just a few timeframes for general plan updates, what they were supposed to be and what, how much time it actually took here, unless you had another question.
Oh, that, go ahead.
Okay.
That should be part of that.
Okay. So the Sacramento general plan, that was initiated in 2004, and it didn't get finished until 2009, so five years. It was supposed to only be a three-year program. It took two extra years. Merced County, 2007 to 2013, it was supposed to be done in 2010. So again, it took a few more years. Sandwaking County started in 2008, it's ongoing, there've been a lot of issues that have delayed the schedule. Hayward was started in 2012, and it was supposed to be done in July of 2014, and it was done in July of 2014. It got done on time. The reason for that is that there was very strong direction from the city council that it needed to get done on time. They put the resources towards the project, the city manager was on board, helping to push the project forward, and it got done within the timeframe that it was set. But it took a lot of effort on staff's part, and they had to put off some other projects to focus on the general plan update to get it done on time. So it's a great example of a project getting done on time and also the types of resources that it takes to do that.
Well, now, I'll ask this question, I didn't know more on that.
Oh, yeah.
So is the, is the plan that we have in front of us, this two-part, particularly if we go with the two-part approach, et cetera, is three years a reasonable length of time for a general plan update?
From the timing standpoint, what we've included in the options are a technical update, which would only focus on updating background information and updating policies, that's three years. The larger expanded approach that includes a lot more community involvement, visioning work, issues identification, dealing with alternatives, that's a five-year timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
So the recommended is the longer timeframe, but it could be done in a shorter timeframe if desired, but it would include less, fewer components.
So Ted, for each milestone that you have, is there a budgeted amount per milestone?
Amount of time.
For example, if we have a three-year, a five-year, then you have a budgeted amount, and then you look at it and say, to make sure we're on time and the funding's there to, to take care of it?
Yeah, that, it can be set up that way, yeah.
Okay, so that way you can measure the output or the milestones on it?
And then from a community outreach standpoint, there's several best management practices that we've developed in conducting these programs. One is making sure that the outreach program has many facets to it, and we generally organize these into an inclusive program, so including as many people as possible, being instructive, having an educational program for the community, and making sure it's validating so that people, as they provide input, they see that it's making a difference, that they're being heard, and that it's being reflected in the general plan update. Using both traditional and technological advances in how things are distributed is very important. Not everyone uses the internet or accesses websites for information. Some people feel more comfortable coming to a community workshop to talk about what the issues are, but others aren't comfortable doing that or they don't have time to do that. So providing a means for them to do it online can help ensure that they have an opportunity to participate in the general plan update. So having a good mix of these types of options is important.
I don't see a survey up there, and I, the city of Thousand Oaks, for example, surveys a quarter of their residents every few years, and to me, that's a really good way to get out and get information, give good options there, and hear from the community in a pretty succinct way instead of having to have, you know, workshops all over the place. And I'm just wondering if that might be one of the options. I think the city of Pasadena did that with their successful general plan update, and just got, you know, thousands of responses that way, and I believe that would help us really find that there is a, you know, a message out there that there, that the public is giving us, and we can use that to incorporate our changes.
Yeah, and we've, we've used surveys, we have one being presented in the town of Windsor up in Sonoma County in a couple of weeks for that general plan update.
Is it a mailed survey?
No, it's telephone.
By telephone?
Yeah, it was assigned, yeah, a validated survey.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing about that, but I was thinking more of a, one that, you know, you can take the time and read and have a return envelope and all that so you can get that information, but telephone's another way of doing it, I guess.
Sure.
They incorporated it online also, people could go online, but also the select households also got mailed ones.
Just a few more best practices. One is making sure the general plan update maintains its visibility, so keeping information going out, even if it's just updates on what's been going on, sometimes if there's nothing really going on, just going back to some of the information that was collected and making it interesting to people, just so that it's, people are kept aware. A five-year process or even a three-year process is a long time to keep people interested, and so having mechanisms to keep it in front of people's faces is important. And that gets with outreach in early and often, but this is more important to those, and tying them in with those milestones, making sure that the public has an opportunity, as things are produced during the update, to weigh in on them and to review them and provide feedback is very important, and making sure that's done early in the process helps to address any issues with people not being kept informed of what's going on with the update. And then diversity and engaging specifically non-English speaking communities as part of a general plan update is important, especially when we think about issues like healthy communities and ensuring that there aren't, there's, aren't any communities or groups left out of the update process. Having that information conveyed across various types of languages, important in different mediums. But what we found most effective is working with the groups who already work with those groups, whether it's churches or social organizations, those are the best ways to outreach to those traditionally, those groups who are traditionally not participating in planning processes and things of that nature. So my last slide, last one? Oh, one more after that, the fun one. The last slide on best practices is just a few other things. One is conducting concurrent planning processes. In a lot of general plan updates, we do side projects that are linked to the general plan, although they're not part of it. One is, and a good example is a zoning ordinance update. A zoning ordinance has to be consistent with the general plan, so typically if the general plan gets updated, there's a lot of different things in the zoning that need to be updated as well. You can save a lot of time by overlapping those processes, as well as some costs associated with the environmental review of those different planning processes if you have them both within the framework of the EIR that's prepared for the general plan. Another is to not reinvent the wheel. General plan updates are ongoing all over the state, and in fact, all over the country, and so there's a lot of good ideas that get generated and used in other places, and they're perfect to apply to a general plan update here or in any other place. And then finally, make sure that you're considering the potential for a legal challenge to your general plan update, and this usually occurs around the environmental document. But one of the most effective way to avoid that is to have, having a good outreach program, keeping everyone informed and engaged in the process, listening to people, addressing their issues. It won't do away with the potential for a lawsuit, but it goes a long way in being aware of what those issues are and what potential is out there. And we always recommend that your county council review draft documents, specifically the general plan itself and the environmental document before it goes out, to make sure that everything is meeting the letter of the law and the county is comfortable with publishing those documents. So my final slide deals with costs, and Jim will talk a little more about this as, when he gets to the end of the work program options, but, you know, general plan updates, they aren't cheap, they're probably the most expensive thing from a planning standpoint that a city or county can undertake. Here's just a range of costs for a lot, for several cities and counties that we were able to gather this information from. As you can see, they range from a million dollars from a smaller city of, you know, $50,000 to $100,000, all the way upwards of $5 million for El Dorado County. That went through several iterations, and there was a lawsuit in that, so it's kind of an outlier. But as a whole, just taking this sample, on average, and again, these are just consulting costs except for a couple of those with the asterisk, cities and counties paid, on average, $2.1 million for a general plan update, just in consulting costs, that's not including their staff costs. The counties alone, the average there is $2.7 million in consulting costs. So it's not an inexpensive process to go through, and this just gives you an idea of what the costs other jurisdictions have been paying in recent years.
So if you take the cities out of your mix, you're saying if you just look at counties, counties are $2.7 million?
Yeah, of just this sample, so just these.
And that's, some of those are quite, a number of years ago.
Yeah, and obviously El Dorado drives that average up quite high. So if there aren't any other questions, I can turn it back over to Jim.
Thanks, Ted. So we're at the final part of our presentation, we're gonna talk about our recommendations for your, to you for our work program, for the general plan update and some options, and then the costs of those. And just going back to the previous slide Ted had, we didn't have on there Monterey County, which is at $10 million in counting, but they've been through at least two lawsuits, and they have a, people just at each other's throats for years and years and have sworn, Larry and I did some work for them many years ago on one side, and they swore they'd never, never reach agreement with the other side. So it's been true, and it's been really expensive for everybody, and that's just the public costs, so. So just to summarize what we've, I talked about before, our key conclusions are that the, about the general plan lacking the vision and guiding principles, being technically deficient, poorly organized, and doesn't really meet contemporary planning standards. And based on the workshops and our stakeholder interviews with you and others, and our reading, also in research of what's going on in the county, there's clear support for a broad range of consideration of non-mandatory issues to be addressed in the general plan. That's kind of our broad conclusions, and that's in part what our recommendation to you is based on in terms of the scope and content of the general plan update. So our recommendation is that you conduct a general plan update, a comprehensive general plan update, with a full update of the background report, a visioning process, it includes the development of vision and guiding principles, a alternatives analysis, identifying vision, excuse me, issues, assets and opportunities leading into the vision, an alternatives analysis, and this has some open-ended parts to it, this, and we can talk about that later if you want, but probably evaluating some type of growth alternatives or policy alternatives, and addressing some other current county issues that we've mentioned. Then prepare a community, a really user-friendly general plan and address the area plans by updating them and making them consistent with the general plan, and then preparing a program, EIR. The technical update is a pared-down version of that, and essentially it strips out the vision and guiding principles, the public, the robust public outreach effort, and it has a more, no alternatives analysis, and really has a, addresses the area plans in a minimal way just to make them consistent, internally consistent with the general plan. You would still prepare a program, EIR, on that, that effort as well. So Ted has already summarized in detail some optional topics, but there are others that you could address as well that we point out, additional traffic modeling and analysis. Property and land use change requests, this is a very interesting one. We've been through this a couple of times, and I'm not a strong supporter of it, and we can talk about that a little bit if you want, and then we talked about you can. about economic development. Urban design guidelines for some of the communities is another possibility. And then Ted talked about all of these optional elements. I think, as Ted pointed out, some of these seem to be more relevant to you and probably more appropriate to be included in the plan than others, but this is clearly a policy decision on the board's part with advice from the planning commission about really how broad a range of issues you want to deal with and how you want to deal with them. And I should point out that the, in my view, in most cases, creating an optional element is a way of emphasizing that topic that might otherwise be addressed in the general plan throughout some of the other elements, but is not emphasized the way it is and singling it out as a separate element. So for example, on water issues, whether you have a water element or not, your general plan will deal with the full range of water issues in terms of water resources and water supply in different areas of the general plan. Singling it out as a separate element, you would deal with those issues, but you may expand on those and have a greater emphasis in certain areas that you might otherwise not have if they're spread out. So this is a consideration for a separate element for a topic that will be addressed. And in contrast, economic development, typically there are very limited areas where that would show up in the general plan without it being a separate element, a little bit in land use probably, maybe a little bit in facilities and services. So that's one that if you don't pick that as a separate element, probably not going to find much of its way into the general plan. So there are some considerations that we can talk about there as well. Public engagement options.
Before you go to public engagement, just if I could.
Say again?
Before you go to public engagement, I just want to try, I actually want to go back to a couple of things. On this slide, how critical is it that in this very first phase where you're trying to come up with a work plan and the cost and all that, that we identify all of the optional elements? You know, how flexible can we stay for how long in terms of what optional elements we identify? Or another way to ask a question is, how much do these optional elements add to cost and workload? Can you just kind of help me with that a little bit? It's, you know, there's an awful lot for us to bite off here in terms of kinds of policies to set. So, but I want, I want to be able to have us get going, but do we have to, you know, from your perspective, do you say, hey, you have to know exactly which optional elements you're going to do now, or can that be something that can be decided in a month, in two months, in terms of optional elements?
Well, it's a good question, and the short answer is, you probably don't have to decide right now about these elements. As I mentioned earlier, some of the topics, let's just, we begin a general plan project with doing the background report, existing conditions. And some of those topics get addressed, whether you choose to have it called out as a separate element or not.
Water.
Doesn't matter. Even some economic-related issues, demographics and population are addressed in the background report, and water. And some elements of climate change are addressed in terms of doing the emissions inventory. So you don't have to make a call on having a separate element there as you're doing the background report. There may be a few topics that you want to include in there just to preserve your options for later on. You also, as I understand, that you'll be budgeting this project over several fiscal years. So you don't necessarily have to budget for an element that's going to be developed three years from now in the first year of the project.
Okay.
So having said that, I'll go back and look at it from a practitioner's perspective, and you're going to ask, in all likelihood, you're going to ask for some help from consultants, and you're going to put an RFP out that says, here's the work we want you to do, give us a bid on it. And you could have a section in there that says, oh, here's some things we're thinking about, optional elements. Tell us how much you'd charge us for those. We're not going to budget for that right now, but let's get you on the record for what that would cost. And so you could have a reserve cost over there that you could reflect on as the project went down. And then, then a year or two down the road, as you're getting through the issues and opportunities and starting the vision, then maybe it emerges that your structure is more clear to you and what you need to do, so.
And so, now if you could go back, I think it's three slides to your comprehensive approach. It's two slides right there, right? That's your recommended general plan. The, with this comprehensive approach, you know, basically, I think you're asking us to decide whether to go with a comprehensive approach or go with a technical approach. And my question is, is there something in between those two? And, for example, develop the countywide vision and guiding principles, evaluate growth alternatives. If we are a county, and as you said, most of the time county general plans focus on preservation of resources and city general plans focus more on growth, where we have consistently heard from our citizens, there have been any number of surveys, there have been visioning, there have been multiple visioning programs in Ventura County, and they come up with the same vision over and over again, you know, preserve the agricultural land in the open space, keep the city separate, you know, those kinds of, you know, things from the visioning standpoint. Is there a way to, to, for the board with input from the planning commission to say, hey, these are, these are visions that we know are there, are core principles of the citizens. Let's not spend a lot of time on that. Let's make sure we take input. Is there something else that we're missing? Are there modifications of that that we can go with? And the same thing in terms of evaluating growth alternatives. In other words, is there something that's in between this and technical that's just not, doesn't have to be as comprehensive in terms of, for example, the time you take on countywide visioning and guiding principles that could be requested and met with?
Sure, there is. We're doing the general plan right now for a small community with a 20-year-old general plan that they said, hey, we still like the vision here, so we don't want to go through a visioning process. Just confirm the vision for us. And so when we got to that step in the process, we worked with staff to kind of clean it up a little bit, just tinker with it. And we ended up spending two full study sessions with the planning commission and town council on that project and completely rewrote the vision. It took a lot more time than what we had anticipated, but we didn't go through any community workshops doing it. It just was done in-house. So it kind of morphed into something larger than people expected once we got to looking at it, but it wasn't as robust as an effort like that. So in that case, or in this case, if there is a vision that comes from an existing strategic plan, the board's vision for the county, that you're happy with, that we just confirm it through a study session and maybe some wordsmithing, sure, we can get rid of that. Alternatives. Merced County, we didn't do any land use alternatives because we didn't change a single acre of land use in the county. That was at the beginning of the process, the decision was, we don't want to do anything with our existing unincorporated urban communities. We have plans for all of those. They're like specific plans. And so we're not going to, the general plan's not going to change any land use there, and we don't want to change the rest, which is all ag land. And so we had no land use alternatives in that process, but we did do, go through an exercise of looking at policy alternatives, which ended up being almost as robust an effort as the land use alternatives, far less technical, much more subjective, because it was, you know, looking at different ways to skin a cat, basically. So, sure, it could, those could be reduced, and as a result, your outreach program can be reduced because you don't have as much need to take something out to the community and ask their input and come back with it.
When I have attended these visioning processes, it's remarkable how much unanimity there is on preserving, you know, on this basic land use concept, you know. It's like, so that's what I've experienced. I would attend thinking, hey, this is going to be interesting to see who falls out where, but you don't, you know, you see very marginal differences between people as they get to that.
Well, it's interesting. There was a visioning process that was done a couple of years ago by a nonprofit here, right? I can't remember the name of it, but I did read the report. And the, we have a guy that we work with that works for a lot of developers on sustainable greenfield projects. He's very, works all over the world, big ULI guru. And we get him on his, our general plans because he has this other perspective that I think is really helpful. And every time I go through the visioning process, he says, well, I've heard that at the next community up the road. He said, you have to do something unique. And the vision that I read that came out of that process is very similar to the visions that we're doing other places. So, you know, the cynical side of me as a planner would say there are, there are common themes amongst visions for most of the communities that we work in. Certainly customized here and there, depending on the circumstances, but if you've done visioning, whether it's the county itself or through a countywide effort that you are happy with, there's no reason to go through the whole process. As Ted said, no reason to reinvent the wheel, just confirm it and refine it, so.
Thank you.
Everything being normal, what's the cost-wise between the comprehensive and the technical? If you're, you know, in the normal type, is there lots of difference, a couple of million bucks?
We don't do anything that's normal.
Well, let's assume, you know, that is not, you know, extravagant.
So, here's the two cost comparisons, counting both our, you know, I want to talk a little bit about how we got to these numbers for consultant costs, county staff costs. The recommended work program is 3.7 million. The technical update is 2 million. So, just about half.
About half, okay.
Yeah. Still a lot of heavy lifting to do, because counties take, there are so many more topics to address in the county in the technical background report than you have in cities and small places. So you have a, really, a large area, a range of topics. So there is just a lot to deal with even on the technical.
But in our case, because we haven't done it since 1988, a comprehensive would be the recommended, Ted?
It would be our recommendation, based on what we've heard through all of the outreach program and the issues that people wanted to address. That's our recommendation. We could probably get at many of those issues with something in between, with reducing some of these efforts, and still have a forum, a public forum, for your constituents to talk about what they wanted, what they saw as the future, what the issues and assets were, and how we address those and develop new policies and programs.
Okay.
So.
Jim, if I could just, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I want to go with the Phase 6, which is the environmental review, which is, to me, as a planning commissioner.
Page.
What you just had, you just had up there? Phase 6?
Phase 6.
Right, that's your program environmental impact review?
Mm-hmm.
All right, how much of that would bring forward some of these other elements that would help us determine whether they're necessary or not, such as an ag element, water element, based on the requirements that will come out of the environmental review?
The, all of those elements would have to have been prepared before we do the EIR, because they're really part of the project description. They're part of the general plan. So it would be a done deal by that point. Now, what might happen with the EIR, and what actually does happen pretty regularly, is that the EIR will look at the policies and the programs and, not recommend, require revisions to policies or new policies and programs to increase environmental protection or increase the mitigation. If the EIR analysis determines that the policies and programs aren't strong enough to fully mitigate or mitigate as feasible all of the potential impacts, and a lot of this centers around GSG emission reduction, we're finding, the EIR will recommend additional measures in that way.
So the EIR really is the background even once we start. So you'd be looking at that document as far as doing all the other analysis.
The EIR?
Right.
The EIR comes at the end of the, just about at the end of the process.
But my point is, is if we know that's what's necessary at Phase 6, the analysis one through five should be looking at, because that's going to be a requirement.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And what we try to do is involve the folks that are doing the SECO analysis in the policy development. So we're at the, before the EIR gets started, they're getting their first crack at the policies and programs, saying, you need to strengthen this, or else you're going to find us over here in the EIR suggesting changes to it. And, you know, it all ends up being the same in the end. The problem is that you end up looking at a policy document that then has the EIR recommending a lot of changes to it, whereas if they're closer, closely matched, then it's a truer, it's going to be a truer document that is what represents the end product, so.
And the State Assembly will have a proper SECO act force in the next 24 months?
Maybe we can get an exemption.
Oh, I'll leave that to the Board of Supervisors.
So if we stuck to the same land use that we have now, there'll be less environmental impact, but it won't be any changes, except, you know, that we need to adhere to the new greenhouse gas emissions mandates. So in looking at alternatives and all that, you know, if we're just basically sticking with the same land use.
Yeah, land use doesn't drive all of those impacts, but you're right. I mean, if you change your land use, then there would be additional impacts that we would have to address in the SECO document. But if you keep the same land use that you do now, then you still have issues to evaluate relative to your new policies and programs. And there's new information today that wasn't there the last time you did the update.
Well, also, you didn't really go into any detail about the inconsistencies of our zoning and our general plan, but those would all be things that we would be taking care of also. For example, areas around Oak Park have a zoning that doesn't exist, or Amundson Ranch is zoned for a city of, you know, 10,000 people, and it's, and it's an open space park, you know. So just kind of fixing those inconsistencies would be necessary, but at least in those two, in cases, it wouldn't be changing the land, you know, the actual use of the land. It was just making it consistent with the zoning and the general plan.
That's right. Yeah, that wouldn't be an environmental impact. You may be making it consistent.
Right.
Yep. Well, should I go back? I can't remember which slide I'm asking.
You're on 69.
69, okay. Oh, public engagement. So we've given you a, pretty much a laundry list of the possibilities for engaging the public throughout the general plan update process. The items with the asks or asterisks on that list are included in our recommended work program. Some are essential. I would say you shouldn't start a general plan without having some kind of communication tools, even if it's a technical update. But the e-blast, the press releases, newsletters, all pretty simple things to do. Public engagement can be a really expensive part of the general plan update process, and it really depends on how many meetings you have, how many community meetings. It's sort of the largest sin it boils down to. These other things, youth engagement, means of planning directors, events and festival booth, fairly minor. But going, having a series of community meetings, and in our recommended work program, we recommended meeting three times with each of the seven max, which is 21 meetings. The, so that, and those would occur at key points in the process. That might be reduced based, if you took some of the, these phases out, if you took the visioning out, that might reduce one, one round down to 14. You don't have to do any of those. The, some, some communities, smaller communities, we've held a workshop that everybody comes to. But then typically in the counties, we have gone to, tried to go throughout the county to the different unincorporated communities, key areas. to the different unincorporated communities, key areas. In Merced County, we had 60 of those meetings. In Samuel King County, we had 44, 45, 44 meetings. It gets horribly expensive.
You know, it is great that we can capitalize on the work of the Civic Alliance. I see Sandy Smith here, they had a tremendous outreach, people sat around big maps, and they all basically had the same overall result, which was the vision that we all share. We also have the joint land use, joint land use study with the naval base, and that has also come up with the same conclusion of keeping the SOAR boundaries and is part of their effort. And that, again, is, you know, that same vision. So, it's good that we have these organizations that have gone out there, gotten public input for us, and I know SCAG just did one also. So, it's just good that we can use that information that's available.
Sure, yeah. Especially if they're fairly current, not 20 years old like this town we're working, but relatively current, you can just go through a simple process of, of confirming that, so.
So, Jim, in the, in the 45 meetings you had, was it Spanish and English or town hall meeting type or?
Well, the, in, in those counties, we've, Ted had mentioned relying on existing groups that are already working with non-English speaking communities. In Merced County, we worked with a group that worked with both the Hmong and the Latino communities. And so, we trained their staff to conduct the workshops.
To work with.
Foreign language, and then just reported us back the, the results. The, we've had some workshops where we do real-time translations, and we'll have Spanish speakers sit collectively at a table and the translator can translate the information to them and get the feedback.
With earphones and so forth.
With earphones. We've, the most successful outreach to predominantly what we work with is Latino communities is working through other groups and who already have trust in the community. So, there's a variety of ways to do it. Most of the workshop materials we do are printed in English and Spanish. Like you, if you saw the materials that we did for your three workshops, we had translator at one workshop. We just don't, we don't experience that many Spanish speakers showing up at the planning workshops. We did, and we had a great time in Gilwar.
But if you announce it, they'll attend.
Announce it on the Spanish-speaking radio and television.
We've had, we've had healthcare agency meetings and MAC meetings and so forth, and they work.
Part of it depends on the history, the local history and how you've done, you do it. So, in every community we go into, there may be a different, more successful, most successful effort. And so, it has to be customized to, to your history and experience. So, outreach is kind of a really open-ended thing for you, and it's something that you just need to think about based on your experience in the past with how, what you, you have found most successful in engaging your constituents on issues of interest as to what might work best. One of the things I've liked that's worked well in a couple of communities is the, an event booth, where you just set up a booth and a table, and you have your information boards and handouts and a survey, and it might be the farmer's market or Thursday night concert, concert series, and you just bring your information out to wherever people are. It's, there are just any number of ways you can get information out, but the, the, most of the time, the idea is to drive people to your community workshops, to get people to not so much fill out a survey, but come and participate in the large participatory activities that you have. So, those are all possibilities, and you can.
And what is your background with surveys?
With surveys?
I don't see surveys listed up here, but what's your background with using surveys to, to, to say, these are the three top issues that people identified, or this is the response we got to questions about whether this should be part of the planning?
I've had sketchy variable results with doing surveys and general plans. We don't do them very often. The one that Ted mentioned that we just did recently was a scientific polling survey. It cost less than $25,000. They polled, made 9,000 calls, polled 300 people, and 300, if you've been involved in polling, is a really good reliable number for a sample of community, and it seemed, it seems to be really successful. I haven't heard, it's being presented next week to the town council.
My question is less, do you think they're effective than, my question is, how much experience do you have with them? And you said.
I don't have much experience, and my experience has not been good.
All right, okay, thank you.
So, I'm probably not the best person to ask about doing surveys.
Right, okay.
So, we talked about updating the area plans. There are, and I think Ted covered this, there are three, three options, reformatting, integrating, or comprehensive update like you've done on the Satcoy plan, which is obviously the, by far, the most costly. Integrate, we like the integrating option, we think that's the most efficient. But it can, that can get real resistance from the communities who have ownership of their community plans and don't want them to disappear into the general plan. So, in Sacramento, it was a very controversial issue.
And I'd like staff to follow up. I'd like to have perhaps, I'd like to have a report on where do all of the area plans stand as far as their age, how old are the plans, when's the last time they're updated? We have 10 of them, Satcoy being the most recent, so just might give more information on the answer to that question.
Yeah, I think there's even an Amundson Ranch area plan.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, and then the additional related topics, we talked about zoning code update to make the zoning consistent with the plan. That has to be done anyway. The concurrent housing element update, you've just gotten a certified housing element, but by the time you get towards the end of this process, it'll come up again, and that'll need to be done. And then the question is on the wildlife corridor connectivity protection overlay zone, that, as I understand it, has been authorized, and then the question is whether or not it gets, if it somehow is attached to the, some point in the general plan update or proceeds on its own. So, back to this slide, costs. We, we asked, we, we base the consultant costs on our experience with estimating general plan costs. We, we do this a lot. There are differences every place, though. There's not a standard formula that we can use, so we did our best to capture what we think are probably the, the range of costs and what assumptions we made. County staff costs, I have to tell you, I've never had to do that before, which is to estimate what the, the public agency staff costs are to manage and participate in the general plan. And this is not taking responsibility for preparing parts of the general plan, this is just responding, this assumes, those costs assume, the consultants do 100% of the general plan. And the staff costs are based on managing the consultant team, providing information when, in the, for the technical report, reviewing the reports. When we prepare a background report, a dozen of your departments will be involved in reviewing and commenting on the background report to make sure that we properly characterize their topic. Typically, and we would suggest that for this project, that what we call a technical advisory committee be formed, which is just department representatives, and they would meet periodically to provide input and feedback at, at key points in the time. They would do this the same with the policy document. And then, of course, all the planning staff time in terms of just, we have, typically we would have project management calls every other week. There's a lot of back and forth of information. So, this just is our effort, certainly in coordinating with Chris and Kim, to come up with a reasonable cost for the staff side. Now, the next step is what, what, what parts of the general plan the staff are actually going to, to do on the, on the first column? What, what, what are they going to take the lead in or take a more active role in and use the consultants as a, a technical consultant as opposed to the lead consultant? And so, there's, there's still that, that decision to be made. I don't know when that will be made. It's not particularly relevant to the cost issue because I think that whether the staff does it or consultants do it, having seen your, your, your staff costs and kind of looking at our range of consultant costs, it's kind of generally the same, but this is a preliminary estimate, so it'd have to be refined once, once you got, got those decisions made. I know we, this Hayward general plan that we're just finishing up, the web-based general plan, the staff took a very active role in that, was the face of the project, ran all the public meetings. Ted and I never went to a planning commission meeting or a city council meeting. Staff did all of the, the presentation, but I don't know what their costs were. I never had to estimate their costs. That, our costs still were $1.4 million.
And Hayward was the city that came in on time?
Yeah.
So, their, their staff was very involved, and partially because they were under direction to make sure this thing came in on time, right?
There are a couple of parts where we had divided up the labor, and it turned out that there was just too much for them, and so we took back a couple, like a couple of sections of the background report and a couple of sections of the policy document. So, there was some back and forth like that. We participated a little bit more in the public workshops than they anticipated us. So, we had to make some adjustments along the way because they really were understaffed, but boy, they worked hard and really ended up, it's a great product, great process. I highly recommend it. It's one of my favorite projects that I worked on, so. And we did, one thing that we did do that I think really helped was that we, it had been here harnessed a few years ago during the recession when we weren't getting any work, trying to figure out how we could find more work, developed a, a program called Do It Yourself General Plan, where we would, it's a three-day training session where we would go into cities, we did it just for city staffs, and train them how to do their own general plans and give them templates and examples and help them put together their own plan. Well, we took a variation of that on the Hayward plan, and upfront, before each phase started, we did a half-day or day training session with the staff, sometimes the, not just the planning staff, but the whole staff, walking through, what's the purpose of a background report, what's going to be in it, what's the template for it, just all the gory details about production. And I think that really helped speed things up, too. So, anyway, it was a, a great effort or a great experience. So, the technical update, preliminary costs, you can see that we've basically dropped out a few of the key pieces that were in, in the recommended work program. Still, a relatively costly effort. You've got to do the EIR on it, the, which is a big chunk. You can see that the EIR is a third of the cost. Always galls me as a planner that the SEQA is so expensive.
Sorry, evaluating alternatives, that was, you drop out 300, 350,000 roughly cost.
Yeah.
From, so it depends on how many alternatives or how many changes we make that require alternative evaluations will, could influence us.
That's correct. It's a big ticket item. It gets very technical. You know, lots of effort goes into alternatives analysis. And if, you know, frankly, if you have very few options for change, you're, I mean, it's hard enough to develop distinctive options that still fit under these guiding principles if we have those, and if we have a much narrower range of possibilities, it ends up being kind of a, not much, really not very effective.
An academic exercise.
Yeah, academic, I guess would be the good example. And then we've, we've just taken a stab based on our experience with how, how much some of these other optional tasks would cost. The, it seemed to staff, and it probably seemed to you that the cost of these additional elements seems to be pretty low, but the reality is that all we're doing is taking, when you're writing the element, is taking policies and programs that might be other places, bringing them together, expanding that effort or that, that content. It doesn't require a lot more research, and as Ted pointed out, it doesn't do all the really heavy lifting technical, and I'll say for the water element, we're going to, for our background report and for this work, we're going to depend on all the other work that's being done or has been done on water. The Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, any urban water management plans that cities have done, the groundwater management plans, that, that wouldn't be done as part of the general plan. All of that information comes from the, from other sources. So, when you pull that together, actually writing the goals and policies and programs is, is not, is not a huge effort, so. And then you can see on the updating the area plans, we tried to give you a rough estimate of updating the full comprehensive updates, which would be the most expensive. We kind of took the Satcoy plan as an example, but if you think about it, so that's 600, $660,000, but then it may include SEQA as well. That, that may be so robust that you couldn't, like the other two options, bring it in under the umbrella of the, the general plan EIR. If those are out doing different, developing different land uses and going through an update like Satcoy did, then you're going to end up probably doing at least, probably a supplement to the general plan EIR, no likelihood. So, it's going to be, so those are, that's an expensive effort for some of the plans. Not all of the plans would necessarily require that robust an update. So, again, I underscore preliminary up here, based on, once we get your, your preliminary direction, then we'd have to come back and really do some more noodling on some of these cost estimates.
I appreciate you pointing that out, a question for you, but, so potentially doing a comprehensive update of each of the area plans with, with us having 10 area plans, you're talking about $5 million to update the area plans?
Yeah, subtracting Satcoy, so.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Well, I don't think all of them would cost that much, but yeah, yeah, potentially, yeah.
And that's, that's if we did them separate, or if we do them as part of this general plan update, would we, would there be significant economies of scale in doing it as part of the general plan update?
I don't think so, because if you think about it, you're going to do individual outreach to each one of those communities, they're going to do revisioning. You think about what went on in Satcoy in terms of the, the outreach and the visioning, you're going to end up doing that separately in each one of those communities, and that's what really bumps up the cost.
So, it's the outreach, you say, that bumps up the cost significantly?
Yeah, and you're not going to do a community plan without a lot of outreach in that community, I suspect.
Uh-huh, right, okay.
And when I think about Oak Park, I have the Oak Park MAC, and it's a great forum for being able to have that, and different communities that already have their area plans that have municipal advisory councils, too, so we could probably utilize some of the resources we have out there in terms of regular meetings.
Oh, yeah, for, for sure. And, and in fact, that was kind of our thinking in general on the general plan update, you know, the outreach had focused on, on the MACs because it's, it's an established community organization representative of the community. Nevertheless, updating, I, I don't know how many meetings were held out in Satcoy, but I would, I would guess it had to be 10 or 20. Is that, that be right? Anyway, it'd be a lot, because you, you really get, on the, my experience with community plans is you get a lot of, there's a lot more detailed interest in what's going on in the neighborhood than you get on the general plan update that's much more, less, less well-defined.
I think with the Satcoy area plan, it started from scratch. The others already exist, and it's refining, so I would think it'd be significantly different.
It could be, yeah. We'd have, we'd have to.
Just kind of taking out the old and dusting it off, I would think.
Yeah. We'd have to investigate that a little bit more, but, okay. And then these are just our estimates for the, the three additional general plan-related cost items. And then schedule, Ted, I think had mentioned the schedule, but this is a real broad schedule showing roughly a five-year work program for the, a five-year schedule for the recommended work program, and then. work program, and then, a three-year schedule for the technical update. And that's it. How much time did that take?
You exhausted every minute.
Holy moly. I'm sure glad we didn't ride the train. Because it leaves in a half hour.
Just for the public's information, the paper just handed out was that last amendment date of area plans that was provided to, that must have had readily available, right there, Exhibit 1, Attachment 2. And it generally shows that all of the area plans were done in the 90s and '89. So, there are some aged area plans.
Well, I swear, it would have been done in an hour had you not asked me and Ted questions.
All right, so.
Sorry it took so long.
I have one other question for the gentleman.
Okay, please.
And, and nevertheless, I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate being able to ask questions as we go along. So, if I can be clear, so like in Hayward, you didn't get as involved in the community outreach. Staff did that in Hayward?
We produced all of the materials for the community outreach, all of the posters, all the boards. We worked with staff to structure what the work exercises would be.
Right, but-
And we showed up to help facilitate, but the staff ran the meetings.
Right, okay. And in Hayward, was that the primary community outreach was, I mean, was that the primary public communication was outreach at these meetings?
There were two or three other approaches. The, they had, they had the general plan advisory committee that met every month, and they used those, those committee members as community ambassadors. And so, we prepared outreach toolkits for them that they could take into their neighborhoods, that had surveys, that had kind of pared-down versions of the exercises that we would do at the workshops. And they took those into homes and their organizations. The staff did other community group presentations, Kiwanis, Lions Club, that kind of thing. And I think we had a community information booth that was set up.
And do you, do you see community meetings as primarily a place to receive input from those that show up or as a place to educate people?
Both.
Okay. Thank you. That, all right, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? We do have some public speaking requests. Are there any other questions of this lengthy presentation? And you'll see on the backside of the last page, we have questions and direction for final scope development for the, for us to have further discussion on. But first, I'll open up for public comments. And we have, how many cards submitted, Mr. Palmer?
And counting.
And counting. Seven, did you say?
Seven.
I'm going to ask that we, the speakers, and I know you've been here full-time also, but if you can keep your comments to three minutes, I would appreciate it. And where do I have a screen that I have names or, how about giving me the cards?
Sure.
Whatever works for you, Brian.
Would you like to poll her in square?
No.
No.
I like to do that. I don't know where that goes. Oh, no, that goes, that's, yeah. All right. And I'll try to read the handwriting here. Oh, well, okay. Yeah, now, I wish I gave it back to you, right? All right, Lynn Rodriguez, from the Watershed Coalition.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the planning commission, Mike Powers. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly address you today about this, I think, very important topic that you're talking about today, the update to the general plan, which I can't say enough what, how important I think this is as a blueprint document for everything that we do in the county. So, I appreciate all the information about how comprehensive the consultants are recommending it be. I also wanted to emphasize the watersheds. My name is Lynn Rodriguez with the Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County, sorry. And I wanted to provide the support of the Watersheds Coalition for providing a more, an updated and very robust data-driven background document as well as the policies and programs for the general plan update. We have completed in the last year our Integrated Regional Water Management Plan update, which was updating the 2006 plan. The Board of Supervisors and many other local entities have adopted this plan. And while the plan isn't, isn't policy-driven, it's very focused on addressing resource management in the county in the future, in the next 20 years, and I think is very complimentary with the work that would be done in an update to the general plan, as well as to the development of the sustainable groundwater management plans that are underway or that will be starting in the next few years. Wanted to provide, I wanted to offer the support of the Watersheds Coalition, which is a very inclusive and diverse stakeholder group, as part of the effort as the plan goes forward, that we would like to be very involved in, in working with the planning staff and consultants to make sure that there's good integration between the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, which the consultant mentioned is one of those documents that would be instructive in moving forward with the development of the general plan update. The investment that has gone into the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan is significant. We received grant funding for that, preparing that plan, as well as local funds that have been contributed. We got grant money and a total of $1.25 million have been invested in developing the IRWM plan. And I think it's important that we make sure that we do the best we can to integrate those, those things. And I think the timing is perfect for the general plan update because the IRWM probably won't be, it's very fresh and recently adopted. You receive, your board received two support letters from two of our watershed committees. The Watersheds Coalition of Ventura County is made up of three watershed committees. Two of them provided a comment letter to you with some support for going forward with close integration between the IRWM process and the general plan update. So, thank you.
Thank you. Certainly agree with you that the coalition work has been valuable for us. Thank you. Laura Gullifson.
Gullifson.
I was gonna Gullifson, sorry.
That's fine. Good afternoon. My name is Laura Gullifson. And a special thanks to the Ventura County planners who have been so helpful in our efforts to finally achieve library justice. Ever since the City of Ventura and the Ventura County Library Service Director unjustly and illegally closed the Wright Library five years early, over 70,000 citizens in the East End not only lost our library, but we lost access to multiple community services. So, the other day, I was shocked when I learned at a neighborhood council meeting that a new library in Satacoy that was going to serve 1,000 citizens was opening this summer, and that there's gonna be, might be, a small kiosk in the Ventura County Center. And that's all well and fine, but our taxes of $1.2 million, the, those of us in the East End, the 70,000, goes to the Ventura County Library Services, and we might get a kiosk? I just can't figure the justice of this for sure. So, how did we get into this situation in the first place? Well, in 2006, a perfect storm was brewing. Jackie Griffin was fired as the director of libraries in Berkeley. She sued that library system. The library system settled and the lawsuit, settled the lawsuit instead of going to court. Supervisor Long and our former mayor, Bill Fulton, went to Berkeley and they recruited her. They offered her more money, a larger car, and housing allowance, and that was in November 2006. Mike Powers, the current CEO, also came in 2006 to Ventura, and the Moore Park City Library left the Ventura County Library Services in 2007. One of Mrs. Griffin's first actions was to fire Alan Longville, who had been the deputy director of library services for 26 years.
Mrs. Gullifson, your time is up. So, is your, your key point is you want the general plan discussion to include a more robust library services discussion?
Because our library services are dependent on the county.
Thank you very much.
Gosh, I did my, I did this over and over on my kitchen timer, and I sure got a lot further than this in three minutes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
I had two minutes?
You had three.
Three, yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Jean Boyer?
Oh, she fired the director?
Well, I would like to, I would like to ask that we really stay focused on the general plan and the, and the need for services under the general plan as opposed to personalities and, and the history on that. I really would prefer-
How can we be fair if we, all those planners, Mrs. Long, didn't know anything about the history? They were really surprised that the 70,000 of us-
Mrs., I'm sorry.
...have gone without library services.
Mrs. Boyer, would you like to speak to the need for library services? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll just finish up what she said. Mistakes were made at closing the Wright Library. A solution is at hand. Mary Ann Coffey of Friends of Library has suggested the city and the county could join, jointly purchase the former Fresh and Easy Market at Telegraph and Day Roads. There are many benefits to the location which could be further explored. There's ample parking. The library could partner with one of the local coffee shops, bring in students from nearby Ventura College and Foothill High School, and raise additional money. It's never too late to do the right thing.
Good afternoon. I hope you don't mind if I dispense with the hellos. I don't have a lot of time. This is in relationship to, to the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. We have, we are the groundwater sustainability agency for that, that area. We've been approved by the Department of Water Resources. Here are some suggestions for the County RMA Planning Department as it relates to groundwater sustainability planning agencies. GSPs, or groundwater sustainability plans, have authority over spacing requirements of well placement and groundwater extraction. And because of that authority, we think that RMA should provide a checkbox on the permit application for all ministerial discretionary projects so that we can comment on those issues. The OBGMA should be recognized, and really, all groundwater sustainability agencies should be recognized as a responsible agency in regards to well placement and groundwater extraction. The OBGMA should be recognized as a commenting agency for anything related to groundwater quantity, quality, availability, recharge area, and wellhead protection areas. The planning should include comments and recognition in the initial study assessment guidelines about the responsibility of OBG GMA and the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. There should be a rewrite to the goals, policies, and programs related to resources to include mention of groundwater sustainability agencies and their implementation goals, measurable objectives, and regulatory authority, blah, blah, blah. I have provided a memo to the chair of both the planning commission and the, and the Board of Supervisors, as well as Kim. The rest of the memo deals with government code sections and water code sections and the coordination that needs to take place between our agencies. If I may take off my OBGMA hat for a second, I'd like to throw out some issues if I, oh, I don't have time. Try to deal with, develop goals, policies, and programs for Quagga mussels and the threat that they provide to the Santa Clara River watershed, please. Area plans can be different, and they should be different. They're developed by the local agency. Programs that are not funded and implemented really represent a failed general plan, and it just doesn't work. If you don't give them the money to staff to implement the policy, you don't really have a general plan. And if you don't have a general plan that's consistent with itself because of those policies, you cannot have a zoning ordinance that's consistent with the general plan. It's gotta be done as, as a whole. I have a lot more. I'm sorry. I'm way over my time.
No, thank you, Mr. Baggerley, and to all. This is the first of what will be opportunities to speak on elements and components of the general plan as you heard over what will be years of work, so.
Since I was here in 88 and I was here in 2005, we're back doing the same thing all over again. You'll hear from me again. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Greetings and respect to all. Water. The fundamental issue of sustainability in Ventura County is water. Agriculture must have a secure source of water that is provided at a reasonable price if we want to retain our rural assets. Throughout Ventura County, planning commissions and their legislative bodies are at odds over whether there is sufficient water for new development. In Oxnard, we rely on an urban water management plan from 2010 that does not account for the ongoing drought and the statewide reductions or the curtailment of conservation credits for groundwater pumping by the GMA. Our current water shortage and delivery systems are insufficient to carry us into the future. The numerous entities responsible for providing our water have not found a way to work together to ensure regional water supplies or protection of stressed water basins. Now, there's been mention of an integrated management plan going on. I haven't looked at that too much. I just know, looking at the individual pieces, things are a mess. Fox Canyon GMA claims to be ahead of the curve, but the truth is the aquifer has never been depleted at a faster rate. Seawater intrusion is accelerating. The GMA still allows self-reporting. A new replenishment fee is in place to at least attempt to bring the basins back into some sort of sustainable yield. United is facing unprecedented federal regulatory restrictions on what it can discharge from Lake Piru, the Quagga Mussel, and the Endangered Species Act present major problems. United has no new surface storage in the planning or development stages. To the best of my knowledge, I apologize if they do indeed have plans. Cayega's, Cayega's ability to supply state water hangs by a thread that a seismic event could snap at any time, resulting in a levee or canal being breached with a loss of water deliveries up to six months or longer. The job has simply gotten too big for any one agency, district, or purveyor to handle. This is why the county must find a way to bring all of the players together and find a workable solution, starting with its general plan update. If we value our quality of life, we must plan for our water future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Marland Hale?
Madam Chair, supervisors, commissioners, my name is Marland Hale. I'm an independent acoustical consultant from Simi Valley. For the past 20 years or so, I've worked in and for the County of Ventura and some of the communities in regards with noise issues throughout the county. And I'm here just to bring everyone's awareness, I know planning knows about this, there is a technical flaw in the current general plan under noise, having to do with noise generators and the position of noise monitoring equipment relative to sensitive receptors. In the existing plan, which carried through from the previous general plan, much to our surprise, many consultants has brought this to the attention of the county. I'm told it's gonna be fixed this go-around, but since it made it through in 10 years ago, I'd like to make sure that everybody's aware of it. ago, I'd like to make sure that everybody's aware of it. It calls out for the measurement instrument, a sound level meter, to be placed at the surface of the sensitive receptor building. Nobody in acoustics would ever make a measurement like that. It doubles the acoustic energy at the building and gives you incorrect information. You make a search in Google search on this subject, and you'll find that consistently, a standoff distance of three feet to ten feet is called for, both in federal, state, and county and municipal codes. And so Ventura is the only one I'm aware of that says, stick your meter right up against the wall. So that's all I wanted to do, is just make you aware of it. It passed through the last revision. I'd sure hate to see it pass through this one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bruce Smith.
Staff, I assume you got that comment?
Right. What can you possibly know about general plan?
I have no idea. I'm Bruce Smith. I'm former manager of the Plans, Ordinances, and Regional Planning Section of the County Planning Division. And all the criticisms of the nineteen eighty-eight general plan, right here. But in the way of background, it took us one year, no consultants, EIR included, and we made the timeframe. And what motivated us to do that was we were on a quarter order to do that under stipulated agreement because we were being challenged for the legal adequacy of our general plan. It was a phenomenal effort at the time, but it is correct. There's a lot of suggestions for improvement, which are very good suggestions, for clarity, et cetera, and especially in terms of providing the background information to the reader, the context in which the goals, policies, and programs would appear. I take issue, however, with the consultants' almost cookie-cutter approach of saying, well, perhaps we should go back to seven elements. That's really, really old thinking. The reason elements were created, they were created at different points in time, and every single new issue that came along, a new element was required. And in fact, I was part of the Californian American Planning Association recommendation for rewriting general plan law, and we came up with a recommendation of five chapters: resources, hazards, land use, public facilities and services, and then this other amorphous category, which was kind of like other. They really work as a structure, and we found that when you have separate elements, you really, they're kind of standalone documents, and it's really hard to see how it all fits together. It's a daunting task because it covers so many subjects anyway, but I would suggest you not simply go to the separate elements. I would suggest you, you make them chapters or sections within generally the framework. If you have to add a new chapter dealing with other topical issues, that's great. That'd be my suggestion. Technology is great. We didn't have it. We had cool pens and napacuses in nineteen eighty-eight, and absolutely using the technology to, to improve the appearance and readability of the plans. I also take issue with the statement that the area plans are inconsistent, or many of the area plans, goals, policies, and programs are inconsistent with county general plan. County general plan says an area plan can be more specific and restrictive than the county general plan. They are not, and they cannot be inconsistent with the county general plan. That's a, the entire general plan, including area plans, have to be internally consistent. They don't have to be identical. Also, I take issue with, lastly, the programs. They're, they're setting that the programs should only be those which implement the policies. Our programs go beyond that. They implement the goals where they may not be specifically related to a policy that guides the day-to-day operations. And the reason for that is because there's many different programs out there that may, in the future, result in changes, and it's an informational aspect to that. So if you truncate it down only to the implementation of the policies, a lot of the programs will simply vanish and disappear. But the other criticism of funding of those programs is a valid point. So with that, I thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Lynn Gray Jensen. Those are all three names there, Lynn.
Thank you. I know it's late, so I'm gonna try to be brief here. I'm Lynn Jensen with Ventura County Colab, and I'm kind of speaking off the cuff because I haven't heard a lot of this before, so it's very interesting. When you come to the County of Ventura, the one thing that stands out to you is the agricultural land that's in production. And I think for us, we really want to encourage, as part of the vision, that these working landscapes that contribute to our economy stay viable. And rather than focusing on trying to convert private land to public land, which takes land out of production, we think it's important to keep our county tax base here while supporting local products for the community to enjoy and also the contribution to other states in the world of our healthy fruits and vegetables, which I think we're very proud of here. We support this separate economic development element. That seems like something that's really missing in our general plan, is talking about the economics and the sustainability, and it should address the agricultural industry, oil production, mining, and tourism, all of which are out in the unincorporated areas. It's completely separate from the idea of the Guidelines for Orderly Development, which discourages urban sprawl. This really, this, this economic development element should be considering businesses, important businesses, that are functioning out in the unincorporated areas. And we do agree that the Guidelines for Orderly Development discourage urban sprawl, and that's a good thing, but we need to look at these businesses and their contribution to the job housing numbers and the economic sustainability of the county, and also opportunities for our younger generation to have jobs here. The ag element sounds interesting, but we believe that the ag land cannot just be preserved by a land use designation. Again, ag must be economically viable. Otherwise, these green belts that we talk about a lot will become brown belts. And I think part of that, we need to explore agricultural processing and distribution needs for the ag industry. Absolutely, water infrastructure is gonna be very important down the road, and of course, farmworker housing, of which is probably gonna have to be in the unincorporated areas as well, in places. And as far as the outreach, we need to make sure that there is public input that's encouraged in the process, and that includes the very busy business community to participate. I think sometimes they're too busy to show up, and if we are considering an agricultural element, we'd like to see some kind of a workshop with the agricultural communities particularly invited to talk about the agricultural considerations. So that's all I have today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Sandy Smith.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, Sandy Smith, appreciate the nod to the civic alliance, and I'm sure over the next five years of the play-out of this plan, the alliance will play a role in providing data to, to this process. And I'm, I'm hoping that I won't be here speaking to you five years from now on this issue, and that I'll be retired and put to bed. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Ventura County Economic Development Association, and my role as Chair of that. I did not compare notes with Ms. Jensen coming up here, but I'm gonna read quickly a couple of things, only in that I urge the Board to include the economic development element or chapter, or whatever you choose to separate that and focus upon it within the document, as well as the ag element. And I would actually say all of the elements that have been recommended by your consultants for addition into the plan, given the price of these, and particularly the price of the economic element and the impact that that has on the economy. That's a great investment. Specifically making that recommendation because we have the Guidelines for Orderly Development, and we have the land use plans that we have in this county and those policies, and the need, again, to the nod to the alliance for a balance of social equity, the economy, and the environment as we move forward on the adoption of this plan. So again, I, I would ask for that inclusion. And then again, maybe putting my alliance hat on briefly in my work there with the Center for Public Dialogue, support greatly the need for an inclusive public process to make sure that the public has and the stakeholders have adequate say into the formation of this document. I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Kevin Cannon.
Hello, Kevin Cannon. And I just wanted to touch on the thing he just said about the public outreach. I've been to the previous workshop, and I've come here today, and these consultants are real professionals in their approach. They have this way of bringing people together personally to, to sort of have touchy-feely session, I'll call it. I would urge the Board to go the other route and have it be more frequent drafts that are published online, and then garner the public input through electronic way so that we don't have to take our time to show up at these meetings, because a lot of times, you could get a lot more input from a lot more people if you just didn't only have meetings where the public could come and speak for two minutes. So that's my one point that I wanted to make today. I really urge you to, like, cut the costs of the public workshops and have it more electronic feedback, with more frequent drafts for more transparency of every work product that's produced. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the input. Deborah Pendry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Deborah Pendry, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And I just wanted to make a couple of observations. I did sit in on the Casita Springs workshop, and they had an exercise where they gave us, so, six to ten dots. And they had the sheets up with the new and, new and changing challenges, transportation, parks, things of that nature, and climate change was one of them. It seemed like a trick question. I put all my dots under climate change, right? It would appear that that should be the driving force behind the general plan. And I would submit to you, if we don't address climate change at the top priority, transportation, noise, land use, whatever the case may be, is kind of a moot point. It doesn't mean squat if we don't address climate change. The images we saw of sea level, you know, that's not obscure. That's real. We've lost whole island nations around that. And so we would suggest that climate change, and I saw in a graph that, where they obviously analyzed all the dots, that climate change was dead last. That broke my heart, but that's okay, because what I think we need to think about is, in the presentation, we saw those key words constantly: sustainability, resiliency, greenhouse gases, climate change. I think the outreach is gonna be really important to reconcile the community to this disconnect, for climate change to be dead last in that, in that analysis. So going comprehensive seems valuable. If we go technical, that's kind of feels like a Band-Aid, kind of being reactive rather than proactive. It's kind of like, okay, sea level, okay, sea level's coming up, twenty thirty, we gotta think about that. Let's give everybody a snorkeling mask. No, that, you know, that can't really work. We have to look forty years out, maybe more than, say, even twenty-five years. So I just wanted to make the, those couple of comments and suggest that we're in it for as many bake sales as necessary to do this, and I'd like to donate the first twenty dollars to the fund, and let's do this right. Let's be comprehensive. It's worth it, you know? We, we can't have the conversation about, how much is this gonna cost, really? How much is it gonna cost if we don't do this? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, please don't. Yeah, yeah, you will. You have to report it, you know, all kinds of, yeah. Yeah, too much red tape. Thank you, though, Deborah. Very generous. Thank you.
It would cost him three hundred dollars to take that twenty dollars.
Okay, no further cards. Anyone else sitting out there with a burning desire to speak at this time? Again, there will be other opportunities. This is the very first step. Okay, we'll bring it back then for...
Of course, I always ask my other commissioners if they have any input, not hearing any. I got the look from Commissioner Onside. No, we look forward to the, the process, particularly at the Planning Commission. We get a lot of this information. I look forward to a lot of these people again, and we look forward to the direction from the Board of Supervisors and the four million dollar funding. Well, I'm looking for five. Look, I got six, I got seven. That's all, Madam Chair.
Board members, I, I know on this back sheet, we had a list of proposed discussion points for direction, and whether or not the Board wishes to tackle that now, have further discussion, yes.
Just some thoughts on this?
Schedule another?
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay. Having a background in planning, this kind of stuff really gets me going. I think there are two major reasons why we need to do this update. One is we have deficiencies, particularly in zoning that isn't consistent with the general plan. That definitely has to be fixed. And then also, we need to meet new mandates, integrate the Climate Action Plan into the whole document, I think is a great idea, as well as integrating the healthy communities throughout where we can. But I think the other main reason we need to update this is explained right here by these gentlemen who didn't know that our vision is the guideline of orderly development. You build in the cities, you leave the unincorporated land as, as it is with agriculture and open space. And I think we really need to enunciate that, and we need to have that go throughout our, our general plan. That is our vision. It has been, and I don't think the community wants that to change from all the outreach sessions that I've attended, and it's, it's pretty unanimous out there. Also, I like the idea of that resource management section, having, right now, it has open space and conservation. I think it's a good idea to put water and agriculture in there, too, and how they are all related, too, you know? When you think about it, all those are very much related. But I, I like the idea of a resource management section and putting those resources in there. So I would go with that suggestion. Also, in terms of the suggestion of the consultants, instead of just a circulation element, having a mobility element, I think that's great. And so when you're talking mobility, you're not just talking roads, which is all our circulation element is right now, but mobility would also be bike lanes, and there would be pedestrian orientation and even transit, you know, our transit vision. So I just think having that mobility section is, is a great idea also. In terms of reaching out to the community, I do like the idea of doing a survey. I think what Mr. Cannon was pointing out, that we could do this kind of thing electronically, and it could be very successful, having people be able to give us their input electronically. We have the technology. And then also looking in terms of a horizon, I like the idea of 2050. That's what SOAR is looking at right now, too, and I just think it's a, what most, I would think, a lot of the updates now are going to that horizon. So I think that's a good idea. I'd also like the idea of finishing while I'm still here. So in that, in that timeframe, I'd like to do it within my terms, so that's kind of where I'd look at it. It does seem like there are things in here we don't need to have. There, there are some good bells and whistles there that, but I would focus just on the ones that I mentioned, which was the mobility, that resource management one that has agriculture in it and water. That'd be the only two additions that I'd, I'd be looking at, as well as doing the mobility to be more comprehensive in our circulation element. So those are my thoughts, and I appreciate the information and the good suggestions from the public. We have a lot of new things to look at, you know? Water's a huge one. And I think if we can get that going in our, in our general plan and help, that will be very, help be comprehensive, and also, it's a blueprint for development. If you don't have water, it's really hard to develop anyway, too.
Supervisor, anything to add here at the moment, right now, later?
You know, just looking at some of the questions to ask, have we captured the essence and understand them? I think we need a lot of help. Our general plan, as was mentioned by our consultants, that we really need to upgrade our general plan. And I think, looking at it, that we should go the comprehensive way. You know, that's extremely important because if we're going to do it, I think one of the speakers said it well, we might as do it now. Do it now or else, you know, we're going to be sorry later. And also, on the options, I think that Bruce Smith mentioned something I think that might be important, he says, instead of having those options be part of the general plan, maybe that'd be chapters. I'm not sure if we had a look at that, you know, as opposed to being part of that, some of them anyway. And as a public engagement, I think we have the MACs, we have the Internet, we have quite a few other venues that we can use. For example, we have a Spanish-speaking newspaper, Vida, that can help us out, you know? And we have town hall meetings, and I think we can do that. And of course, you know, I think the staff ought to work with the consultant and I think they ought to know the general plan because, as was mentioned, we have, if individuals leave, we have other people that can take over and not start over again. If we rely on the contractor and the consultant, once they leave, you know, they take all the knowledge with them. And I think that our staff should be involving that. And of course, there's other issues. The other thing that I have a question is, the funding, where's the funding going to come from? Is it budgeted in this year? And other elements, too, that go with that, you know? Where's the funding going to come from? But I think it was a good report and I think we had a lot of good input from the community and comprehensive, I think, is the way to go.
Thank you. Supervisor?
Thank you. First thing I'd like to say is that we've had one discussion so far at the board level about this, and it was a discussion that's very specific to the Planning Commission and for the Planning Commissioners here. And that was, you know, do we set up a general plan advisory committee like lots of places do? Or do we use the planning processes that we have in place? And we were very clear from a board standpoint. We've got a great Planning Commission. We have MACs. They're active. And we really believe that they give us the best chance of having the broadest range of input in a manner that empowers the Planning Commission and empowers the MACs, which is, you know, you sit around, you've been on your MAC for, you know, 10 years or you've been on the planning, and here we are doing the biggest planning thing around and we create another committee. That's, you know, that just didn't feel right at all. So I just want the Planning Commission, you know, and the MACs, you know, to say it publicly, we welcome the fact that we have good people there. We really want to trust them to be people that are going to try to synthesize what they're hearing in their communities and passing that on to us. And I welcome input, you know, individually, I welcome input, you know, from the Planning Commission. And we don't, you know, always have to meet. I just think it'd be, for me, it'd be just as efficient for you to handle, for you to have a discussion at your Planning Commission hearing and for us to watch it, you know? We just watch your Planning Commission hearing, you know, in terms of being able to. So that's the first thing I want to say. Second thing that I want to say is I'm intrigued by the Hayward example. I think it is important that we put a deadline down and talk about best practices, come up with a timeline and do it. You can, I mean, after sitting on things like Fox Canyon, I can tell you, you can kick the can down the road on anything for as long as you want, you know? And, you know, there will be some hard decisions that'll have to be made here. And we should just set a timeline and then do the work, devote the resources, and get this thing done. So I'm sitting there trying to figure out what the timeline is. Bruce Smith's saying they did it in a year. Pretty interesting, right? But this is not realistic out there. But we do, we are a county that has one-time money come available almost regularly each year. And that one-time money, this is a one-time project, and I think that we are a county that fortunately, because of the things we've done, this is one of the most important things we'll do for the next 25 or 30 years. We should devote the resources, get the thing done, and get it done in an efficient period of time, you know, as we go forward. So I don't know what Supervisor Parks was referring to when she says before she leaves because I don't know when she's talking about leaving. If she's talking about leaving in two years or three years, you know, I mean, if that's 2018, that's really moving, right? In terms of trying to get that done. But I would welcome that and, you know, if that's the case. If you're saying five years for a comprehensive plan, five years from July of 2015 is July of 2020, right? So with that, I think you're saying that's too long. You mean in this, you mean within this term, right? Now, whether it can be done, so I'd like to hear from the professionals about this. But certainly a timeframe that is robust in terms of the work effort and getting things done. One of the questions that I have is, do we, how much of those things on the list can we do concurrently? Because for me, for the benefit of the Planning Commissioners, we have about 15 items that we've given to the Planning Department over the last 10 years. And they say, when we get the time and the resources, we will do that. I find it fairly illogical if we do a general plan update and we still have those 15 items out there undone because basically those are things we said needed to be improvements. That's a devotion of some other resources that may be done, again, concurrently, you know, separate from this and may, you know, dramatically increase the, you know, sort of the staff that we have to have and the management, et cetera. So I'm not ready to identify which of those things, and I realize it probably not all 15, but I'd like to consider those. I'd like to consider the optional items that are out there. So that being said, how do we move fast and be comprehensive, you know, as we go forward? And part of it is, I think that the idea of modifying some of these things and creating a hybrid in some places where I just don't think we need to bog down makes sense. I sat there with, you know, multiple times with different organizations doing a visioning statement for months and months and years and years. And you know, you ended up where you started, you know? But you fought a lot about, you know, a few words and all of that other stuff. I just want us to try to avoid that, number one. So I will go through, now with that background, I'll go through some of the answers to these questions here, right? Have we captured the issues as you understand them, I think, to the best that we could in this period of day? Should we prepare a comprehensive or a technical update? I think it's some hybrid in between those two that allows us to use our resources efficiently. I don't want us to be hasty and feel like we didn't, but I also don't want us to bog down and waste time. So I want staff to be just like in Hayward. I like that idea that staff felt empowered to say, you got to get this done. Tell us what has to happen to get this process moving and to meet those milestones. What optional elements, if any, should be included? I think you've given us a decent list of things for us to include. On the economic one, I just want to be upfront on that one. I appreciate your comments when you said, if you're trying to preserve your ag land and open space, you're going to run into tension when you're also trying to do your economic, you know? You know, what do you do for economic development? Because if you're committing to saying you don't want to convert that land over, how do you do that? I don't want us to get caught in that kind of trap or do an academic exercise like sometimes you did with alternatives, go through an academic exercise on economics. One possibility I'd like us to consider is maybe we do ag economics. In other words, in the agriculture element, can we talk about the profitability of agriculture, right? But I don't think that you're going to find a lot of people saying we ought to be trying to figure out how much of the ag land we're going to convert to industrial uses, you know? That doesn't feel like where we're going to go with Ventura County. I don't know. I don't know how much we want to do. So that one I don't have solved yet. But in terms of the optional things, yes, water. And by the way, a place where we can get bogged down is water. And I, my input at the early process is, we have to trust that there are a bunch of other agencies, as Mr. Bagley pointed out, that have specific authority on water. And what we should have is a document that is a vision and is a guiding principle, but we can't get too embedded in it, but we should have something that's consistent, that really expresses our vision, that we want to be sustainable and watershed-wise as much as possible. That's my sense in terms of where we should go with water. What level of alternative should be done? Only when it's meaningful and not academic. So I don't want us to spend, I don't want us to make changes that are going to cause a high level of alternative analysis when they aren't changes that get us much benefit for that or that are going to cause a significant amount of time with that. But if it's meaningful, certainly I want to have it. But to the extent that, as the gentleman talked about, in some places, if you don't really make significant change and yet you sit there and try to, you know, it's such a narrow field that you have, I don't want to go through academic alternatives and just recognize that. Should the area plans be updated? I think as much as we possibly can and still make it in this timeframe, the area plans should be updated. What's the preferred public engagement outreach effort? This is what I want to, and I'm sorry to take so much time, but this is an important thing. This is what I really hope we can do better. And that is, I don't by any means want to minimize or decrease public input, but I don't want to rely on just one form of public input that seems to hear from the same voices or the loudest voices or the most determined voices. And if we only rely on meetings, you're going to get basically the loudest voices and the most determined voices because those are the people that are going to show up at the meeting. And you can make a fair statement, well, you didn't come to the meeting, you don't have any input. That's not what's going to give us the input that I think is most valuable, which is the broad input and input that recognizes the core values. So yes, I do want to have some community meetings. Do I want to have 60 community meetings? I'm not so sure that 60 is better than 15 or 20. And then, as Mr. Cannon talked about, you know, let's get input online. Let's get it all recorded. Let's get it documented. Let's make sure that anything major, we give people an opportunity. Tell us what we should know about this so that we don't get to the end and somebody says, you know, you didn't, what about this? And we say, well, at least if we know that was recorded, we all heard it, it was recognized, we publicly recognized that we heard that. So I'm looking for some combination of surveys, of finding out from the public, of this kind of online documentation. I know that in the city of Ventura, they did a number of things that gave them, oh, I liked the statement by the water person saying, I want it to be data-driven. So the data is scientific data, but it is also input data. If you can say, hey, 70% of the people on a professional survey that, you know, professional poll that we did says, say this, and this represents a broad sample of the citizens of Ventura County, that's meaningful. And regardless of what we might be hearing from a small segment of people that show up at a hearing, we say, hey, you've got 70% of the people saying this, that's something that we should look at. So that's important to me for you to try to do that. And to the extent that the consultants say our background is just in doing meetings and it's not in doing these other things, I'd like to hear, how do we complement that? No criticism, just trying to suggest that. Cost estimates? Sure, I have questions about cost estimates, but we have one-time resources and I want staff to do the best they can to try to make this efficient. But that's not the biggest question in my mind right now. Role of staff versus consultants? I want to, through our CEO, empower our staff to say, we've got a schedule, we want to stay on it. We want this to be the most important thing that our Planning Department is focused on and empower them to try to keep thinking and bring the proactive steps to us that we need to be able to do this well and try to stay on schedule. Should a wildlife corridor overlay zone be developed as part of this update? So far, from what I've seen from public input, it was the number one thing. Now, that was just one data point, but it was the number one thing on the list there, right, in terms of that? So right now, yes, I want to continue to, you know, continue to see that. So is it, I really want to hear, and the final thing that I would say is, this is going to come back to us August 11th. August 11th is our last board meeting before we go dark. If we have questions or concerns or things that have to be tweaked, we now have to wait until September before we can go. If what we're trying to do is move fast, fast enough for Supervisor Park's schedule, as really fast, we can't afford to lose those four weeks. So what I would like to request, and I'll make this in the motion when we finally get to that, is that we have a preliminary report August 4th, still scheduled to have this also August 11th. So we can ask any questions or get any tweaks so that when you get to August 11th, we're really there. And it might just be staff saying, this is what we've been able to do up to August 4th and this is what we still have to do to be able to come to you August 11th. And it might be that you don't have an advance, you know, you don't have an advance, you don't have something that goes out on Wednesday before the August 4th, you just come August 4th. But it gives us an opportunity to talk, gives us an opportunity to say, we spent more time now, these are the options we want to consider, but we're going to have to visit this a few times to package this properly so you get a proper launch. So I'll be including some of that in the motions. I don't want to cut anybody off, but I'd love to hear if Planning Commissioners have any thoughts about that now after hearing from us.
Madam Chair. I totally concur with what the Supervisor said. The issue, I can, I think I can speak for the others. We're the ones that deal with those technical inconsistencies. And that creates problems not only for staff but ourselves in making decisions, to recommend back to you. So these elements, I think the Commissioners would like to discuss. We have two more meetings set before the 4th of August. If we can have staff include maybe a little workshop. I know Satacoy's pretty bundled up on the 16th. I don't know about the 30th. To come back and give you recommendations at that point, to at least give you some guidelines what we feel are appropriate as far as what we see. I mean, I've already got some opinions about combining some of the elements, like you talked about, the hybrid. Agriculture is the biggest water user. I mean, it's going to be there. It's also one of our biggest economic drivers. It's going to be there. It's also an issue as far as housing. It's going to be there. So I agree with the Supervisor on the hybrid concept. So I don't know if the other Commissioners have anything, Madam Chair.
The only thing I would add is, I would echo, I think, Mr. Cannon's comments. The county has a tremendous tool here in the technology it uses and makes available to the public. I think we could really maximize any input we would get from the public, taking advantage of that opportunity we have.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bennett had a lot of things he talked about there, and I think where there's some good stuff. But to me, the key is going to be a timeframe because this drags on. And I think we should make commitment. But the key to that commitment is funding. We can look at Kim and Steve and the staff down there and say, we can already use a whole bunch more funding and Mr. Powers gave them more funding to help out, but we've got all these other projects out there. People are struggling to get stuff through. You guys are, you know, working as hard as you can to do it. So I don't know, we haven't made that commitment here where that funding's going to come from. And you look at, have to look at Mr. Powers and, you know, Mr. Carroll out there and say, okay, guys, we're talking three, couple million, are we going to put a million dollars a year up to do this? Because they're going to be busy on their own rigor stuff. We've got to get that commitment. Otherwise, this is going to blow them up and the rest of the work that needs to be done is going to be a real problem for us. So I think that has to be a deal. And again, that's important. And I think also what you were saying here, Mike, is this economic piece, and going back to what you said, Steve, there, it's difficult under our SOAR thing. We're not going to take, I don't think we're going to take land out and put warehousing. But we may look at this economic piece to bring together. Do we need a new packing plant out in the ag for the ag? Are we going to do that? It's an ag-related piece of business, you know, that doesn't take lots of land, it's not a big, huge parking, those kind of things, something you might see at, like Lehman Air. One of those things that adds the economics, it makes it easier to do farming and if we're going to have, want to have that land farmed and productive. So I think that we should do that. And then also, are we going to put, allow that housing to go in on ag land if there's going to be some of that house we talked about before that? So I think that kind of thing could be put together in this general plan, that we're going to do those kind of things to booster our business, ag business that we do as part of our economic issues that we have. But, so to me, I'd like to look at a comprehensive. I want to do this once and really look at most of what we can. But at the end of the day, timeframe, don't drag it on, and we're going to fund the money. We're going to come up with the money. Like you said, it's probably one time.
During your term.
Huh? During my term, our term, right? We can get it done. We've got three and a half years to get it done. These guys have talked about people doing early. So maybe we'll set a record for a county.
Let's hire Bruce and do it in a year.
Yeah. That's right.
For half the price.
Half that, for half the price, yeah. But anyway, at the end of the day, we know it's going to cost money. We just have to be focused on that. And, you know, and planning's got to figure out where they're going to get the people to do it. They've got to start, if we're going to make that commitment, we're going to hire, we're going to do what we're going to do there. So anyway.
Madam Chair, I just want to echo what the Supervisor mentioned, that we have an excellent Planning Commission, you know, and they can take the time and work on the elements, you know, and work on it and fine-tune it and continue working on it. And I think it's important that we do that than as opposed to setting up another commission and, again, give the FTEs to the Planning Commission to finish it in three and a half years, right, Supervisor Parks?
I also want to point out, while the area plans are bold when they
I also want to point out, while the area plans are old when they started, they, a lot of them have been amended, so that's, may not, all of them need to be changed.
Quick aside if I could, and that is, I, I, I think using the Saticoy as the example of the area plan is not, is not what I would be looking for. I mean, I just think realistically, we can't do a half a million dollars for each area plan update, and I don't think, I mean, some of these are, you know, small areas that don't need, you know, there, again, you're not starting from scratch like you were in Saticoy, and we're not going to have 25 meetings in the North Ventura Avenue area just for the area plan update, I wouldn't think, right? So you do have input, you know, but we have to find some other more efficient ways to do that. As he said, the most expensive thing is having those outreach meetings and stuff, so we have to keep those down.
Mr. Moneybags? Talking to you.
Tarn it. Yeah, that's right, what happened to it? That's right, skinny moneybags, I think now. No, to your, your question about funding and so forth, so based on, it depends on the number, if we're looking at roughly $4 million, I do believe through your board's management, we have a one-time fund set aside, so we could afford that.
Right, right, thank you. And we did, we did touch on that a little bit during our budget discussions, knowing that this was coming to us. First, I'd like to thank all of you for being here, the public members who spoke, the planning commission, thank you for being here to, to hear all of the good work that's been undertaken by our planning staff and the consultants, and I think that you did capture the issues. I appreciate the numerous focus, one-on-ones and groups that you met with to really start to draw the key components of this together and the structure for us today. I, I think that I, I, I think we, there's no question, if we're going to do this, let's do it, and let's do it thoroughly, let's make it stand the test of time, and it should have a long horizon, whether it's 2050, 2040, certainly something beyond 2020. Exactly, that's when it expires, so, and comprehensively to do so. And I, I, I think that, I think a hybrid of, of both the, the, what the model may be, but also how, how we're going to reach agreement on what components and elements of it. I, I personally think that water runs through all of this. You know, the, the agricultural industry is an economic engine, is a business in this county, water runs through, obviously whether they succeed, continue to succeed in this county, and I think that it is an important component to, to be included and as a, an element, more than an element, but something called out specifically is important in the general plan. I, I think we're, we're fortunate that we do have the great work of the watershed committees, the coalition, over these last few years, and successfully has demonstrated by the grants and dollars we've received to bring into this county to move needed projects forward. So I, and we have that, and we have the Economic Development Collaborative, which just completed a SEDS work and is undertaking now consultant work that's going to focus on what the ag, what would it take to continue to keep ag a strong industry, and, and looking at the processing side, the support systems for agriculture, that that's important to, to look at that work that has already been commissioned and underway. I noted, I raised the issue of the sea level rise, although it's a LCP coastal county issue it still has, will have some important information for us. So I think we have, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we have a lot of studies and things to draw on to advance the general plan. I think the, the ag industry, the tourism, the filming, the other pieces of what goes on in the unincorporated area are worthy of keeping in, in the discussion and, and the work that comes out of it, so. And of course, I brought forward the health and all policies, that runs through everything that we've talked about here. Healthy communities are, have transit-oriented mobility components, healthy communities have balance of, of both ag and urban and a good interface, and healthy communities have a good mix of housing and opportunities for recreation and outdoor, outdoor activities. When it comes to outreach, I, I, I think we need to certainly do what, what is done in the way of meetings because we have a, a planning commission that, that we, our public members, seasoned and informed, public members, right, willing to do some work with us. We have MACs in most of the communities, and, and I think we need to go to perhaps some of our non-traditional outreach, that being, and I don't know, for example, I wouldn't say VACIT is non-traditional, but when you talk about the business community having some input on this, let's ask VACIT to sponsor an evening session. Let's look at, you know, something that we can do with our chambers that, that are in those off-work hours where there can really be true input, and think about others in the nonprofit world that, that have intersections in the general plan and see where you have groups to reach out to. I like the idea of surveys, I, I think that crafted well, that gives people an opportunity to, you know, to, to have their voice heard or, right? And, and, and that's an art in itself, I understand that. Timing, let me see, 17 months from now, I'll be, but I, I don't, I don't think we want to drag this out for years, I certainly don't, certainly, and end up in a case where it was Monterey where you've got, that's, that's horrifying. So that you don't want to do. So I, I, I think between a mix of, of additional resources dedicated just to this work for the planning excellent team to administer and manage and oversee in the way of, of FTEs, but also fully engage talented, skilled consultants and experts who can help us move this forward, I think it'll take both in order to really keep a timeline and a, and a budget and a focus that's as strong as it can be. And we knew it was going to cost money going in, and, and the point made that we, the plate's already full in planning, so we can't expect all of that to be set aside to do this, that's not fair to those who are in the mix for projects or whatever. And so we should not do that. So we know it's going to take additional resources, and we have had some discussion on that and need to continue doing so. So as far as other elements, I think we can have some more discussion as that, as it comes back to us for further input, but health and all policies, a focus on ag, ag that has a, a strong focus on water, mobility, outreach, I'll end there. Okay, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I try my hand at a motion?
Sure.
All right, just, just, just to get, just to get us started here in terms of that, and that is that, that we accept staff's recommendations in terms of funding and things that, that staff has talked about, but basically, so we, we accept staff's recommendations, but using this as our guide here, that we look at some hybrid between a technical and comprehensive plan that captures to the best of staff's ability what they believe they're hearing from us in, in terms of, I'm not hearing any objection, I think, I think we're talking about some kind of hybrid there. The, in terms of what optional elements should be included, if staff would, it's already, you've already identified tentative costs, if staff would prepare for us the options to be able to choose what options we want to have, and if staff would also, I know they've done it once, but review our list of the other items that we have there so we can have another conversation about which of those items we want to try to do here, what kind of resources would it take? In terms of level of alternative analysis that should be done, I'm not going to try to put that into this motion, I think we made, we made some comments, but, but yes, this work plan should include updating the area plans that are out there in a cost-efficient manner, and what is the preferred public engagement outreach effort? This is specific both to the area plans and to the other, and that is that we use a hybrid more, I mean, something that's going to give us more broad input than just community meetings, where only the people that care enough to, or have the ability to show up can, can do that. So it's a hybrid, and it's a hybrid where we work through our planning commission and our MACs to really use their meetings and their, their connections to try to have this outreach. And we also, where, we also work through the supervisors for those particular districts. I mean, I can't imagine if you're, if you're going to be doing outreach in Lake Sherwood, you're, you're going to work with Supervisor Parks to sort of design that. So you work with the supervisors in each of the districts because we may be able to significantly reduce what, you know, say, hey, this is the most efficient way to get everybody to feel like they had good input. I feel like I could do that in the Ojai Valley, for example, or in Lake Sherwood. The supervisors are going to be able to help with that. And, and that staff approach this from the standpoint of strong direction for staff to really take charge of this process, to make it a priority, and to deliver it at the deadline, but to give us staff's honest feedback soon in terms of what are realistic deadlines to, to do this, in, in terms of trying to, to lay this out. And that would be my motion, right? I think that includes, but you know, what's nice about technology is you can go back and listen to it over and over again and.
I think you should ask, you should ask them though, was that, I mean, was there some things that you understood what he was asking today? I mean, seriously.
Yeah, and that's a fair question.
Because I mean, you said a lot.
Yeah, exactly.
And what you were saying, did they understand what you were trying to ask?
Yeah, totally.
But there's still a couple more bullet points too.
Hang on, let's see if she understands what I did.
Can you work with what I've said? That's.
I can work with what you said. I, I've heard what you've said, and, and you know, we were, you know, talking with the consultants. What I would want to do, you know, I want to understand the date, you want us to come back, and I want to make sure that they're available and that, and that Chris is available to come back on that date, if you wanted us to come back on the 4th, I heard.
This, this is what I would suggest, if you have the consultants planning on being here on the 11th, still have them come on the 11th. Just schedule this as an agenda item for the 4th, if it's just for us to talk some more, right? You may, you may say you don't have anything ready, I just don't want to only have a talk on the 11th before we go dark for four weeks.
Or with feedback from staff.
So it's just, just, just you, just, it's just, you, you say, talk to us some more, or this is what we know by August 4th, you know what I mean? And so that we can sort of help, you know, we can have another opportunity.
But you don't want all the answers just come back from our discussion.
Whatever you got, right?
Well, I will be in Peru on August 4th, but I'm sure Chris will be here.
Chris will be.
To cover. But yes, I, I understood everything that you said, I think what we really want to spend some time is in fleshing out that shorter deadline, I heard what you say, I like to do things in a shorter period of time. We have big projects coming up, and we've just finished a few big ones, so we do want to take a look at that staffing issue, and we, we did come here a couple of months ago when we talked about the general plan annual report and said, once we understand the scope and the scale of this project, we'll more fully understand how many people that we need to hire to not only move this project through, whatever size it's going to be, but also take a look at the projects that can be incorporated into this, like a wildlife corridor, there's a few other things that can be that are on Supervisor Parks's list, the rezoning issues that we need to address. So, and then there's the other things that we need to do that are ordinance-related and not general plan-related, and we need the people there to, to work on those items as well. So I'm not sure we'll have a comprehensive picture of that on the 4th because I'm, I'm still not sure exactly the comprehensive picture of this, but we do plan on coming back, I believe we said, early next year to really walk through every single project that we have and maybe set priorities on the things that are not going to be included in a general plan update simply because they're not related to a general plan update.
I guess I would, I wouldn't want to wait till early next year because if, if they are things we want to put into the general plan, I'd want to at least, you know, have a conversation sooner than, than early next year.
And I would like to just point out that a lot of the area plans, as I said, have been amended, 2011, 2010. I'm just wondering, do we, if we can put that off and get the, get the general plan update done, and we can still go back, because once you have your general plan update done, then you can make your area plans consistent with that, it may be a way to expedite and then, and be able to take things at smaller bites, that's a suggestion, and I know we are also talking about the Horizon Year, that might be something we have an agreement on too.
The Horizon Year will be pretty important, whether it's going to be 2040 or 2050, and a lot of that will depend on, you know, the, the transportation modeling, that we're still not sure of what's going to happen yet, we have to have something to base that on.
I, I guess in response to Supervisor Parks' request, I'd be uncomfortable pulling the area plans out at this point in time. We may pull some out, you may say, hey, we just don't need to work on Sherwood or whatever, but, you know, and if that's, that's the case, fine, but I think where we can, we ought, there's just a real synergy. If, if I'm going to be getting people together, you know, to talk about the general plan update, they're going to want to talk about their, how the general plan affects them and their community more than anything else, and so it just, it feels like there's a great synergy there to do that.
I would agree, but the number 10 is kind of scary, but it really isn't 10 because we don't have Amundson, and we'll address that in the general plan update. We're working on the LCP, but, you know, we'll need separate funding to work on that to the extent we need, also Piru is relatively new, and Saticoy will be before you in a couple of months, so, you know, we do have a few that we need to address, the North Ventura area plan, and so there'll be some, El Rio, that we probably should look at. So we'll maybe take some more time and highlight the issues and maybe put some prioritization on those.
And we'll need that information for our MAC too.
And did you, were you also saying it is helpful to have the Horizon Year determined? I mean.
I think it's helpful to have the board's input on, on what they're thinking, you know, 2040 is, is a, a good time, 2050, I would have to see if we have enough information, you know, enough information or what exactly that we would need to set a 2050 horizon. So that, that's something that we can come back with as well.
Yeah, would you present the alternatives?
Information to get to 2050, and if you don't have that, that could hold us up until that information comes, so we may not get that done.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to be doing some immediately coordination with VCTC on their traffic modeling, you know, there's, there's some baseline information that we're going to have to understand to extrapolate that out to, you know, 2040 and beyond.
Is VCTC prepared to do this because knowing general plan is coming or not?
Yeah, we've been in coordination with them, yes.
So you're working with Darren Kettle on that?
Yes, yes, we are. So I, I think I understood, unless, you know, Chris has some questions or the consultant, I think I understood the, the direction that you're going, that we'll be back on the 4th, and then we'll be back again on the 11th with the, you know, the answers to your questions.
Good. I guess my big key of this is, this is going to move forward, everybody wants to move forward. It's how you're going to handle the rest of the work you do.
It's how we're going to handle the rest of the workload, and I know Rosemary's probably over there very nervous right now. But we are finishing the, the Saticoy area plan, right? So that will relieve us some, we did just finish the wireless ordinance, right, and we are working mightily to get here 2016 with the LCP, so everything we do finish, right, we have that staff resources to, to look at the other things that are on our task list. But what happens is we have the unexpected things, of people can come in and apply at any time for a general plan amendment, so we had the motocross guy, you know, just recently in here, and, and that's something that comes in, whether we know it or not, and then we have to address things like, you know, the, the coastal trails and things that come to us. So our staff isn't just working also on everything that the board has, there's a whole nother.
Well, that's, I mean, you have your normal work you do, and I'm just wondering how you're going to, just trying to figure what you've got to do, because that's part of my thing about this funding, is how we staff you, because this is a three to five-year project, well, we're going to have to probably have people that hired just to do this kind of work.
Oh, we would definitely have to hire.
And one of the things that you mentioned having was also a dedicated project manager just for this project too, and I think that will really help focus it.
Right, and then if we have a, a more compressed deadline, we'd probably have to lean more on, on immediate knowledge of, of consultants that we would, you know, bring in, and then, you know, train our staff kind of behind them to have a, a more compressed timeline, but I, I still think that's doable, and so that, that's what we'll take a very serious look at before we're back here before you.
So you'll let us know by August 4th then?
August 4th or August 11th for sure.
I, I know there was one other question that, that you asked, wasn't in this list, but it was in your, in the, in the PowerPoints, that I, I do think it makes sense at the beginning to at least offer my thoughts, and I, if, if, if the board is supportive, I would include that in motion, that was, do we take, do we take individual property owners' requests for changes in zoning and all that stuff as part of this? And, and my view is, they should, if they want to make changes, they should go through the normal process in terms of making changes. The general plan shouldn't be the processing of people's individuals, I see the consultant shaking his head, the processing of, of individual plans. Then if they go through the process and we're still doing our general plan, we can always, you know, make, make the appropriate adjustments. So I would include that in the motion, at least for, for initial direction. By the way, all of this stuff we can revisit as we go forward, but you, you need something to sort of bracket the workload that you're asking and that you're putting out there for requests for proposals.
We need, exactly.
I'll say.
I'll say just one thing on that, property owner requests and a three-year time schedule are mutually inconsistent.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, they would be. They wouldn't want to be held up, because we would say, well, we can't process it, because we're doing the general plan update, same thing.
Take yours.
One other thing, I guess I would like just a little bit of clarity on, is are we saying as a whole here that our visioning is the guidelines for orderly development, so that's a document that we're not going to look at or we're not going to spend any time with? We would kind of create a visioning around that document, that urban development is in the cities and the county?
I think the vision's really clear.
Okay.
If you have, if there's a couple word change, wordsmithing, but I think the vision is really clear. I don't know about the rest of the board, it's been that way.
My response is yes, for efficiency purposes, and two, I think I heard the consultant say, what you do in those situations is you verify, and I think, well, there's already been a lot of verification out there, so I just, I just don't think we should get bogged down in a, you know, when, the idea of the guidelines for orderly development, when I go to these meetings, there's nobody that speaks against it anymore, right? Used to be, but not any longer, right? Yeah, so I'll include all that, include those two adjustments in the motion, which is no individual things, and that direction for you to use that as a starting process.
And verify.
Yeah.
Have some, have some opportunity for us to discuss there.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Can't say I've looked at every word, but.
I'll second.
Was there a second?
I'll second the motion.
There is a second, there's a motion and a second.
I don't have a.
All in favor verbally say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Move forward with that? All right, that's some action now. Chair of the planning commission, you have an action, sir.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll undertake a motion to receive and file the today's information and request staff at their earliest convenience to put on the agenda for comments by the commissioners back to the question. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Since there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Madam Chair.
You are welcome.
Planning commission is adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
And Chair of the board, we've taken our motion, so that completes our business for the afternoon and the day, and we, too, are adjourned.
Only 45, only 45 minutes longer than what they scheduled, right? Three hours, you're going three hours and 45 minutes. Not that bad.